Motion for the motion to adjutant Bushy Jenkins, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll kick it off with Mr. Towery and the Drew Middle School design update.
Right, first let me apologize, a little warm in here, we haven't switched over to the cooling system. We're in one of those in-between days, but we are overcooling that room, so hopefully that will transmit this.
No promises that we'll stay late, just saying.
Okay, well, I do appreciate the opportunity to be in front of the board again here tonight, presenting a little bit, an update on preliminary design for Drew Middle School. With me is Mr. Tom Lee, who we all previously met from some, so he'll go into this. Okay, so just real quick updates, a little bit of where we've come from so far to date in terms of the number of meetings that we've gone through. These are both internal and external meetings. Of course, there's a lot of other internal meetings on here that we've had that aren't necessarily on here. But regularly meeting, we've started more recently out into the community a little bit more with a meeting with Clip Farm residents last week. That went pretty well, we spent about an hour with those folks and the folks over at the neighboring Dogwood Airport, Air Park, listening and trying to collaborate a little bit on some of the design elements that we were considering out there. We will have some work community meetings coming up. Those are right now scheduled for May. I'll be sending out further notice on that once we get to that point, get a little closer to that point. But here we are today in April, preliminary design meeting presentation. And I'm going to be turning it over here to Tom in just a moment, but I just wanted to recap real quick a couple of things that I spoke to in the board's weekly memo last Friday regarding the overall site layout. You will see here some changes from the last time we met with the board in terms of how we've laid the building and the site out. Not major changes, the fields are still in the southern part of the site, the building and parking is still in the northern part of the site. Some of the key changes are that we've created an independent standalone bus loop, more or less at the bottom of the site, in the front of the building, and then the parking and car rider loop is up at the top of the building. So you can see how we've reshuffled the parking route, and that was due to a couple of things. But mainly it's to make sure that we're getting traffic in and out of the site more effectively, in terms of buses and cars and staff parking. And then we've also obviously incorporated from the school board's last direction, some of the elements to the main floor, including the introduction of the forum space with that flex space next to it that can effectively serve as that auditorium space. So that has increased the overall footprint of the building, which is something that was taken into account, the shuffling of the parking and so forth for the site. But overall here, largely the same as what the school board saw last time. In addition, we have been working to pull the building and the parking away from the property lines. The northern property line and the kind of eastern property lines, areas there that you see highlighted. We've been working to pull away from those a little bit, to try and give a little bit of additional separation to the neighboring parcels. We were just meeting this morning discussing some of our landscaping approach on this. And the design right now that we're going to be pursuing will be essentially overplanting based on the county standards for buffering those areas. We intend to overplant those areas along those property lines to provide some additional buffer. So I just wanted to draw those couple of things to your attention, and then Tom will be taking us through the rest of the presentation.
Can I say a quick question?
Yeah.
So the road comes up. In terms of the site itself, where is sort of, is the road the property line, or is there a problem?
Does that point, it does not point on the screen. Oh, there we go, look. So we're actually looking to purchase this property on both sides of the road. So it's currently, yes, the road essentially bisects the two pieces. We're also purchasing this small three-acre piece back here, so yes, so that road is effectively the property line.
Okay, when you say looking to purchase, are you meaning in addition to what we've already talked about purchasing? Or this is part of the whole thing we've already talked about purchasing, just so weird, weird?
This is all?
Yeah, this is all stuff we've already talked about purchasing, we're not looking to purchase anything beyond what we've already discussed.
Correct.
Why haven't we purchased it? Because it's still?
We had included.
Oh, gotcha. So when you're talking about trying to have more space and buffer, the road there is, like, do we?
Yeah, so there's a 50-foot required building setback here. And we're trying to push it to get at least 65 feet of setback, and 35 feet of that is buffer. And in the north, it's also a 35-foot buffer planted, and we're trying to get at least 50 feet. But really, the distance doesn't make as big of a visual impact as overplanting. The density of tree cover is going to provide more than just the noise on all this stuff.
I'm just trying to get a feel for the site.
And remember, this is the site that's somewhat hugging the road because of the steep grades and the wetlands as you move further west. But to that point, we've made a lot of progress since the last time we've met, and we've kind of maintained this iterative approach to getting more feedback and meeting with more educators and planning the interior design of the school. And one of the things I wanted to address today was originally the 2009 program had about 160,000 square foot building. And we're currently, our plan shown today is at 165, so 165,000. And I wanted to just give a little brief synopsis of where that square footage delta came from. So there's some things we talked about last time, like the orchestra room was added to the music department to make a three-music space department. There's about 2,000 square feet added in the music department, which includes the orchestra room, a large instrument practice room, and then four small practice rooms, an instrument storage area for instruments, and then also a music office. That comes in around 2,000 square feet. The special ed department, we've added two sped level-two classrooms, and we've added occupational physical therapy room and a sped office. All combined, that's about 2,000 square feet. And then on the second floor, we have a digital art lab that shares space with the technology and arts programs both. So it's located, you know, right here, so that it gives Jason to both art and technology because they share some equipment. That's about 1,200 square feet. In the clinic, we added, I'll go back to the first floor, we added, there's very small, look at here, but we added two exam rooms because the 2009 program didn't have any spaces to examine students outside of kind of a populated space. And we also increased the clinic rest area by 120 square feet to get to 60 square feet per bunk area. Because just for, like NFDA for besties disease control says, you know, you don't want to have bunks entire than 60 square feet apart or else you can transmit things. And then we added a drama storage room for the drama classroom. And then in the teacher support spaces, we've recommended adding a teacher's lounge across from the cafeteria. There's an SIS office that's been added. And then since this is a three-story design, we've added a third AP office so that it can be one on each floor to get some visual security of that north-south corner of your classroom. The idea being that in the future, it might become the dean's office if that program is added. And then there's lastly some functional requirements that have added either because of code updates or because of specifics to the site, like we have a fire pump room for getting pressure to the sprinkler system. We have a life safety closet, which is a new code requirement. We have a freight elevator that I think we spoke about a little bit last time. And then we've also increased the dry food storage area in the kitchen because I think it was undersized for what the program would need to accommodate a kitchen of that size. And then lastly, we had a comment to increase and provide some outdoor gym storage. All total, that's about 7,000 square feet of additional net area. But there were also some spaces that were able to be removed from the program, and they were, one science lab was removed, so deleted with two per grade level that are all stacked vertically. We eliminated the wellness room because it wasn't programmed at the school. And then we had two math specialist offices in the administrative area, and we narrowed that down to one. And then we eliminated the assistant principal secretary's office as it's not in their current staffing plan. So all told, there's a 5,200 square foot delta in program, and that is all net program. So typically, you'd have to multiply that times another, you know, 1.3, 1.4 to get to accommodate all the wall thicknesses and cores. But we've managed to be able to deliver the building at 165,000 square feet inclusive of that grossing factor, just to do the efficiencies of the space. But that's really where all the changes were, and I have plans at the end as well. But the other thing I wanted to briefly discuss is, right here, there's a program requirement to add lockers to the space, one for every student. So with a student capacity of 1,100, that's 1,100 lockers. And we looked at this and first determined that it would require a minimum of about 4,000 square feet to accommodate adding those lockers to the plan. The hurdle with that was if those lockers are ever reused for some other space, it made the space too narrow and too long to be really usable. So what we were recommending is instead adding about 7,000 square feet of space in this arrangement. So you have two locker pods on each floor with like a collaboration area in between. And I'll go through the floors, and you'll see it's in the same place on every floor. And the main idea is that later, if you decided the locker count needed to go down because kids weren't using lockers as much, you could build some classrooms, some science labs, you could do a combination of both. That's what this slide is really intended to show. So in the two sets of locker pods on each floor, there was a collaboration area in between. If you decide to take all of them out, you could build three classrooms. You could, clearly, you could just include like one or two classrooms and leave one locker pod, it gives you the most flexibility. But it's also size that you could provide two labs with a prep or a resource space between them as well. The idea being just to give you as much flexibility in the future. And then we thought about, well, if we built this now versus later, how much are we talking in cost and where are we on the budget? So I wanted to briefly add this slide, which says if we're at 165,000 square feet now, and we can kind of from a rough order of magnitude estimate a $385 to $450 square foot cost, this includes all site work. We're at about 63.5 to 74.25 million dollars for the base building is what we would anticipate. If we expand that by the 7,000 square feet, we're at 172,000 square feet, which would put us at the 77,400,000 on the high side, and what does that say? Can't quite read that from here.
For what?
66.
Yeah, 66,250.
220.
Yeah, 220. So what this means is I think you could build this expansion now and still fit within the budgets you have on the project for the construction cost. And the reason we recommend that is because when you look at building it now versus building it later, there's a fairly significant delta in cost. The first being you take the advantage of, you know, value of scale, right? So if you're building this 172,000 square foot building, your general conditions are already paid for with the contractor being on site, and you're potentially getting even some value to the rest of the building by increasing the scale. But if it's a separate project, the cost per square foot would be significantly higher for the separate general conditions. It'd be a separate procurement process, separate permitting, and you would have to go through whatever the escalation cost is until the time that this is constructed. So we would see the base building cost might go up by a million and a half dollars or so, but once you add in the permitting, the compirmance, escalation, design fees to manage separately, you know, you might be close to double the cost to build it, even if it's a matter of a year or two later.
Can I ask a little about the locker space?
Yeah, sure.
So if you go back to that previous slide, so are, so is it almost like little locker hallways so the kids walk in? Because I've seen different things, right? Like I've seen just a whole hallway and the lockers are on the hallway. But this way, the, I just wonder a little bit about safety of kids getting into fights or doing stuff.
Are these looking like the ones that we saw when we went to Maryland? Is that what you're, so they're pods?
They are locker pods, but they're low, right? And the idea is that there are lines you walk it down.
Just wondered.
I was curious with what we saw.
Let me turn them this way, so when you're walking down the hall, you can see through the aisles of the lockers, and you have daylight and a lot of visual observation around.
I just want to make sure it wasn't like a tunnel where it's to get them to.
You can see everything in the crowd.
Let me just, yeah, let me just kind of bring some context to everything real quick. So when we initially did the budget for this, we were assuming based on the 2009 program, 160,000 square foot building based on that program at the time. As Tom explained, as we've gone through this over the last few months and worked with teachers and everybody, we realized the program's somewhere around closer to 165,000 square foot to what we're actually looking for today. And then if we're going to put lockers in the school, right, if we, we have two options. We can add 4,000 square foot of overall square footage and do them in the halls.
Yep.
Or we can add 7,000 square foot of space here, make locker bays, that in the future could be converted to classrooms or lab space should we ever decide to go away from lockers. So our recommendation at this point is that if we're going down the road of lockers, which is our recommendation that we should do that, it's probably more cost-effective long-term, a better investment to go ahead and put in a base. It's 3,000 additional square feet overall, but just to give everybody some context, because at some point, the question's going to come, why do we have more square footage? That square footage was based on the 2009 program, things have changed since then. And it's really just to get us in the right ballpark ultimately for budget. And as Tom explained, we, right now, with where everything's at in the market, with the locker bays, we are still within the overall budget that we have.
I'm just making sure I understand so that I can speak about it. The 2009 program that you referenced twice, that's the 2009 program of studies or?
It's the specification.
Because we're from 2009, and we're in 2025.
Yes.
So then information is updated, it's not us just changing, correct? Like we're, we learn more, we know more, we need it bigger.
Correct, yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, so based on what's going on in Drew and in our other middle schools, this is.
And then if we, God forbid, get to a point where we're so overcrowded, we have to choose classrooms over lockers, this is lockers on every floor?
Correct, so that would.
So that's three classrooms on every floor.
Three floors, nine classrooms.
Almost 10. I was going to say 10, I don't know where the extra one came from, thank you. There's nine classrooms extra that we potentially have.
225 students, and we can, we can make some adjustments in the cafeteria space and some other areas to make sure that the future building would be able to accommodate that without any.
So what's the capacity here, is it 1,100? So we did not increase that when we?
No.
Did we talk about increasing it?
Yeah, we did.
At one point, there was a discussion of up to 1,500, the board's direction was 1,100, but if we could consider some flexibility for future growth, to keep that in mind, so that's, that's what.
To my point, the variables for program is like a model, right? The program's model for that time, that period that we're in, so that would be based on the population size, the potential for growth, that kind of thing. That's the program that we're talking about. Because I feel like we're using program a lot of different ways, I just want to make sure.
The 2009 program is like Virginia Video E. Like where does the 2009?
It's our specific, which is largely Virginia Video.
Because that's when we last opened a middle school.
Right. Right, but just to make sure that we're talking specifically about like the reality that we're facing at that moment. That's what we mean when we say program, it's like a model based on.
Yes. Can I understand also, this isn't voted on, we're talking about this, this is the design. I do also remember that when we change anything and the price goes up, the board supervisors have problems with that. So I just want to make sure that before we move forward, we do whatever we're supposed to do to engage them in a meaningful way so they don't have epiphanies on the board, on the dais when they see this.
But you're saying it stays within our budget.
Days within budget, right?
Stays within budget.
It's under budget, actually, 77 million.
But it won't be as cheap, like, and that's kind of the frustrating part, is we give them a budget. Even if we stay within that budget, they see us adding stuff, they're like, well, you could have gotten it cheaper. Like, why are you spending every dollar that's allocated to you when you could have pared it down? And like, we have good reasons for it, right?
Yeah, part of our thinking, we've seen a real trend in the reduction of lockers in middle schools as, as textbooks have become digital with laptops and so on. So there's a lot of school districts that are taking lockers out, and we didn't want to build in 4,000 square feet in a way that it couldn't be repurposed in the future.
Yeah, so when you think about it, it's really a 3,000 square foot add for flex that we're considering at this point in the overall program. Because whether or not we do lockers, that's part of the program, and then you have 165,000, that puts you at 169,000 square feet. We're talking about 172,000 square feet.
Would the 4,000 be within the 165, or do the program specs not have lockers in there?
Right, that would still be in addition to the 165.
But they're not in this program specs to have lockers in middle schools? I mean, didn't we, Dixon Smith and Heim are the ones those were done for?
If you go back and take a closer look at that.
I'd be surprised if they don't have lockers. So we just, I agree with Ms. Sky, we need to be careful on how we are presenting this information and make sure, you know, it's not like we're really adding 7,000 square feet.
Right.
I mean, hypothetically, it should fit somewhere else, it may not be the best design, but you could put those lockers somewhere in the school.
I think if I continue, I mean, if I'm remembering it correctly, the reason why nobody goes to lockers is because there's not enough time in the day to go back and forth between classes to switch out.
They're assigned in middle school.
Right. In the morning, but then like throughout the day, there's no time to go back, so.
They go morning, they go lunch, and they go at the end of the day.
Right.
Is that in every school, Stacy?
Every period, like.
It's not?
Carrying one book.
That, it's not morning lunch and at the end of the day for every middle school. Some of them have different schedules throughout the day that they get their lockers, but then, like, you have Stafford Middle that their lockers are.
Very tiny.
Big, so that's.
And some that are above and below, yeah.
But generally speaking, yes, there's.
Well, that's really.
Seven out of eight of them have times throughout the day that they get a little, but go their lockers, but not necessarily after average class.
Yeah, I just want to bring everybody back to, the 160,000 square foot is an estimate, was an estimate at the time. It was a professional estimate that was done, but we took the 2009 program, we gave it to an architect at that time and said, tell us how, what we need for this, right? So they did that at that time based on their best interpretation, understanding of the program, different things laying out. That's a view up here, right? So when we build the budget based on that, ultimately, that's why we have things such as contingencies and other things in there because we understand that this is a 10,000-foot view, now we're at 3,000 feet, we're much closer. So square footage is up in this area, but we're able to save in other areas, right? So we're flexing, flexing down. So one of the areas is an example that we're looking to save in. At the time when we built this budget, we thought that we would have a pump station with extensive sanitary sewer offsite pumping, force me. We've since been able to find a gravity sewer outfall option, that will be cheaper, right? So there's a lot of dynamics as we build the budgets and ultimately as we get into design. I don't want anybody to get too hung up on the square footage. Really what we're trying to stay in is that budget, right? That's really, I think, the key for everybody.
So I think they've done their job, and what I need to understand now is what our goal is with lockers. Because we have kids go K through six, no lockers, then we have them go, or K through five, no lockers, six, seven, eight, lockers. And then high school, we're essentially not using lockers anymore except for sports. So I guess, like, why middle school, you know? Like, if it's nowhere else.
Actually, when we started with COVID and they were allowed to bring in their backpacks, it was a big complaint from the middle school teachers for these students not to have their backpacks in their rooms. They were, that was a problem.
And I get that, but then why do we not have the same complaints at the high school level? Because they all bring their backpacks or their bags, so are, like.
Why?
And middle school's not yet overcrowded the way our high schools have been. So I've been struggling to understand where that is.
I know at the high school level, there are plenty of teachers who do not like the backpacks. They don't like the backpacks at all, they would prefer like if they're on like one side of the room compared to the other, but a lot of the students don't like doing that. And I know a lot of other students, including me, I would utilize the lockers if I could, but the fact of the locker is this big and my backpack doesn't even fit in there, there's no point in me trying to get a locker and figure out how to do a combination lock when I'm not going to be able to put anything in the locker because it's this big and because like all of my classes are on the third floor, but I just got assigned a first-floor locker.
Well, that's one of the things this does too, is we, this, the design has sixth graders on the first floor, eight, seventh graders on the second.
No, I.
So there's this separation, so.
If we're going to go lockers, I love this because every time we're at a meeting talking about space, the question is, well, can't you just build add-on, can't you just add-on? Well, absolutely we can, we can yank out all these lockers we paid for however many years ago, and we can put in three more classrooms. It's essentially like, I'd rather this than trailers, you know? Which is where we'd have to go if we had space considerations in the future.
And I don't know if the, yeah, I don't know if the back, I mean, I know at Drew, the backpacks were a problem just because of the size of the classroom and the number of students, and so everybody having their backpacks on the floor made it very hard for the teacher to get around the room.
It was also.
And potentially a little bit of a safety issue if you have to vacate the room.
The other problem still too is their maturity, and they had devices. And so they were utilizing their devices, like I had teachers at a couple of the middle schools that said, kids would get a phone call and say, it's my mom, and, you know, felt the need to answer the phone. So part of it is the maturity of them, but I think that was another big reason why teachers wanted the lockers back was so the technology was out of the classroom. It wasn't as tempting for the immature ones.
I'm going to say this as a mom and not as a professional, right? But there's something about when you get to middle school, you get to decorate your locker. I don't want to take that from kids, my kid was so excited to go to five Hello and buy a whole bunch of crap to put in the locker that they never really appreciate anyway. So I say I'm pro locker because I know some kids like to do stuff like that, so.
So just a couple of things, I'll add to the conversation. I think I have seen, like, has been shared, a lot of schools that are being built, not are built, being built without lockers. And I think that there's a couple of reasons to that. Some that's been shared about how you have to go between, back and forth between classes, which kids would rather socialize, right? Instead of let me go to my locker, I'll rather carry all my things. There's also the piece, yes, most places we have a lot more digital textbooks, and so they just have Chromebook or a laptop that they have to carry around and not have any materials. I would say in terms of middle school specifically, it is, it is more of a developmental approach as you go from self-contained in elementary school. Now you have, what, five, six, eight different classes you're going to, and so the organizational piece, so that's kind of where the locker piece comes in a lot of times, is hey, now you get to go back and forth between classes, you're not going to carry everything for all five of your classes that day, and so it was that organizational piece is a part of it. So just, I mean, I think that's where some of the middle school piece and kind of those young adolescents trying to work through kind of take into this class, and then I go back and work them through that organizational piece, so. And talking with our middle school principals around the backpacks, you know, they've talked about that, and, you know, every school's a little bit different. And so as I've advised them, like, as the principal in that building, you've got to determine what's going to be best for your building and how do you use the backpacks and where they need to go, and how do you support teachers in terms of that, so.
And one of the things we saw when we were doing this design is we're often asked to come up with a future expansion plan. Like, what do we do so we don't paint ourselves into a corner? And when we designed that, we realized, you know, that could be your locker solution in the short term. And, you know, if you were to build it concurrently with construction, it would make a lot of sense.
The lockers that we designed in are 15-inch by 15-inch by 24 inches tall, so they're more getting at your point, trying to get closer to a backpack shape.
Can you also mention, I mean, last time we talked about the cold, dark shell, right? And so this is that same spot, is that right? So we talked about the cold, dark shell, this just kind of takes it to the next level in terms of utilizes that cold, dark shell for locker, correct, right?
And for when we talked about whether or not to build an 1,100 or 1,500, technically, we're doing a little bit of, because we are building for 1,100 use only. But we can go up to 1,300 at least if we were to remove the lockers at a future date.
And that could most likely be accomplished over a summer, I mean, because it'd just be drywall, start construction, build out.
Also, middle schools are tumultuous time, though. I'm sorry, middle schools are tumultuous time, I'm not looking to pack them in if we don't have to. I mean, there's also a common sense around not making a 1,500. And that was the conversation we had last spring.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
The other thing that I'll add is, you know, this topic was on the three-on-three, so we did brief the three-on-three joint meeting this past week. There was an overview of, we didn't show this because you haven't seen this yet, but we did do overview of where we are at this point. Jason King gave that overview to the room where they're. And I'll continue to share updates with Mr. Ashton as we move forward in terms of where we are.
So I think what I'm hearing is general consensus to continue moving forward with the locker bay option, and we'll be back, back to you all.
I do have, I do still have one question I wanted to ask.
Yeah.
When you were showing the school footprint with the bus loop and the car rider line, my question is, what do we envision school starting and school exiting as far as traffic is concerned? My question is, what do we envision school starting and school exiting as far as traffic is concerned? And in the spirit of like we spoke about at the town hall is um being a good neighbor?
Right.
Like, how is that going to work out, especially like when, you know, the car rider line moves? Does it stop and all the buses empty out? Or how, how is that's gonna look?
Good, good, great question. So if you look kind of the circular area there in the middle, I'm gonna grab the mouse. Um, we, we have a dedicated car rider loop, if you will, out here. That's that gray loop out there.
Okay.
It stacks ninety-one, yeah, ninety-one cars. Um, and anywhere probably about twenty to twenty-five that could pull up and unload at any given time, double stacking through here. So most of our middle school car rider lines, this should be more than sufficient for that. And then all of the staff parking and everything would be inclusive, would be in, in, in the center of that, right?
Visitor parking too?
Visitor parking, we've, yes, so there could be visitor parking up here, but we did add some parking down here as well that could serve as visitor parking or parking for soccer, baseball.
But that's only like thirty-two, right?
Down at the southern part is.
Like where the main visitor parking is, is gonna be down there.
I would envision the main visitor parking, it could be, we'll, once, we'll have to get a little bit closer to, to determine that, but this is intended to be the front.
Typically, given the administrative office.
I was just wondering.
Right.
Parents during a large event will likely park a combination of down here and back here. And depending whether or not buses are stored on the site, a lot of times we'll even park cars in the, in the bus area as well.
I'm just making sure we wouldn't have like a heart.
It does seem odd to have the bulk of the parking further away.
When.
I think, I, I'm thinking this is awkward.
Okay.
For like um the visitor parking to go into, because there, like Dr. Chase said, their tendency is to be able to walk from the parking lot into. But to have them walk from the parking lot through buses, and maybe some are there, some are not, but it's, it's kind of like an awkward thing. Just and safety, I think, is a little concern of mine as well. I, I mean, I think if the parking was up there, they still have to walk around the whole building to get to the office door.
Yeah, the original layout um that we had, had split parking fifty percent on the north, fifty percent on the south.
Right, right, right.
And that kind of got a little bit cleaner with the ability to have visitor parking closer to the main entrance.
Okay. Okay.
And then we had, um, the bus loop was over here closer to the road.
Right, right.
The challenge with that became is we moved, so we were, we were more compact and we had more on the third floor at that point. So the building was more compact. The challenge became is we moved elements such as the auxiliary gym and some of the other elements to the main floor.
Okay.
That widened the building east-west, if you will.
Right.
And so we needed to push the building further to the right. So that parking or the bus loop rather that was over here closer to the road.
Right.
Had to move.
Right.
So when we looked at it, instead of putting the bus loop in the back, operationally, we felt it made more sense to put the bus loop in the front.
Yeah.
Because buses want, we want, we do not want them to necessarily get caught in, let's say, a car rider back that potentially could have parked, right?
Yeah.
So we felt it would operationally be better to move those buses up to the front and keep the car riders in, in traffic in the back.
What I would anticipate too is if the buses were there in the morning or in the afternoon for arrival or dismissal, then the visitors would probably park in the back because all those doors would be open because it'd be a dismissal arrival time. But during, you know, during school day, when the buses aren't there, then most visitors visiting would have to come to the south parking lot and go in the main entrance because it's a secure vesticle.
Right.
The other, yeah.
But I guess it's similar to what, like when I go visit Colonial Forge, if I'm gonna go in the front entrance, there's only, what, ten, twelve?
Yeah, like that.
Spots right there in the loop. Otherwise, I'm parking either in the staff parking um to the west or student parking to the east, and then I have to come to the main entrance.
On the. Right.
I think adding a sidewalk from that parking around the outside of the bus loop and going straight to the front door might be.
Um, but.
Adding the sidewalk along here that goes directly up to the front door might be a, a cute idea.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But um, and then I'm not for sure I understand the bus, like where are they coming in and going out?
Bus, bus loop entrance is right here, so they would come in, most of them, most of, most of the um special, special ed buses would park curbside.
Oh, from the road? Oh, right.
And then the rest of them would be parked.
Right. I mean, after they discharge the students, they couldn't park there?
They could, most of the time.
They're gonna park in the door there.
No, they actually discharge the students.
Because most of the buses pull up to the doors, don't they?
Most, this is really. Right, so, well, in the morning when they're dropping off, they're dropping off, so they'll pull up at the curb likely in the morning, drop off, and then head on out.
No, not a guy. They do it, yeah.
Right.
In the afternoon though, when they're lined up.
Oh, when they're waiting.
Correct. If they get there a few minutes early, they're waiting dismissal and they can't.
The kids come out, the buses, though, the buses don't then start moving, right?
Yeah.
So the car riders and the.
Well, I was gonna say, that's my question, not with kids or.
So there's not a, interaction between the car riders and the buses, that's.
De, decom.
That's good, there's a separation, there, yeah, because you don't want anybody running out to the car when the buses are here.
Correct.
So are we, what is our next, what is our next thing from you, like what is our timeline now?
I believe we, we come back in June now as next, we got a couple of months before we'll be back to you all. So this is, we're looking now to really, we're starting, we're looking now to start the site planning in the early, right? So we're starting to kind of lock things in.
Okay, you had a thing in the bulletin that the, the settling of the property might take a little bit longer as we're waiting for.
Right, so there's, there's a couple of pieces um of legally when we go to close that we have to have in place that we're still working through that were in the contingencies.
Right.
Um, so we're working through that right now. I could see us potentially needing to push the settlement date uh back two to three months potentially as we work.
How much is that gonna cost? Isn't there like a penalty if we don't?
Shouldn't, we don't have any penalties built in at this point. It's blackjack.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm thinking about, okay.
Yeah, have to be mutually agreeable.
You were saying it's sort of.
I was, I was having the same opinion.
In May, the board supervisors approving the money.
That's the first domino piece to fall, and then the other domino pieces are the conditional um, conditional use permits and the twenty-two thirty-two.
I have another question, and this has to do with the, you know, the estimated cost of this locker space. I mean, from a practical standpoint, putting in, the lo, the lockers are, should already be in the budget. So we're talking about, you know, preparing the space, which is basically empty space. And that's really not gonna be the same cost as if we were putting in a classroom or a lab or, you know, the storage or administration. So if we were doing this as an add-on to a contract, it wouldn't be anywhere near that um, that average, you know, three fifty to four fifty is price per square foot. So I wanna, you know, I'd like to look at it from the standpoint of what is it actually gonna cost to do this versus seven thousand times the average square foot? Because we're, the site work is probably not gonna be significant extra money because it's, it's right in the middle there, I mean, you'd have to redesign everything. I'm not asking for any answer now, but when we're making this presentation, I, I don't think um that it, it really is gonna cost us the average square foot times seven thousand square feet to put in this locker space.
Sure, I remember.
And I want to be practical and realistic when we're presenting this, to your point, Ms. Guy, and also, you know, to Ms. Sigmund's point, is are we just trying to spend this money that we're saving somewhere else from, say, the, you know, the, the pump station versus, you know, the other one? It's not like, you know, this is our household budget and we can do anything we want. I mean, we were approved based on our application in effect for that specific design. So I don't have any problem with making a change, but I don't want to change it just because we're within budget. And, and to that standpoint, I would like to see if, if you can estimate the actual cost of converting, you know, that's empty space into locker space. I, I shocked if it was cost the average.
To that end, I guess, does that mean we, before this presentation, was it assumed that we would be doing standard hallway lockers? Which we, or was it assumed that we were doing no lockers at all before today?
Hallway.
Because I think I assumed that we would have standard hallway lockers.
So.
I do too.
And we all, like a parent, as board members, we've heard that there is a tremendous waste of space, particularly like we've experienced at the high school level when they stopped being used. So to that end, I can be like, oh, well, if we can move the lockers here and then ultimately reclaim that space, um hindsight being twenty twenty, kind of wish we did that in high schools twenty-something years ago when we were building them. But, and that's why I find this to be supportive. But if we weren't factoring in lockers at all prior to today, then that's.
Question as to why.
So let me, let me answer it this way, and I want to be sensitive because we're over, over our time here. The lockers were always in the budget.
Okay.
In terms of the, the total overall budget. It's how we're gonna, it's, it really comes up to how we want to implement them.
Sure.
Do we want to implement them as a four thousand square foot standard in the hallway type of approach?
Okay.
Or seven thousand square foot, which gives us some future flexibility? And that's why I'm saying there's really a three thousand square foot delta here.
That's exactly where I am, like when we know that they're in the budget already.
That's what I thought.
We're gonna pay for lockers regardless, and everybody envisions them the way we have always seen them. This change actually becomes an economy for future use.
Right.
Because we have all said, especially at high school, waiting for six to be built, we wish we had those square feet in a classroom.
Right.
Can we rip those lockers out and create bigger hallways like?
But hypothetically, if they're going along the wall, you've got the wall anyway.
But you've got to make the halls wider.
The halls be wider.
But they're, they're fifteen inches wide, right?
But the halls have to be wider to accommodate all the kids that are lined up.
But the, but you're. No, but how wide are the lockers?
How deep are they?
You just say fifteen times, fifteen by fifteen by twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
So I think if they were.
No, I just, really, I'm, I'm not an engineer, but I'm thinking construction and cost.
Wall mounted.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just the effective width of the hallway gets smaller by the nature of the kids standing in front of the lockers with the doors open.
You, you already would have the space.
So you usually account for that space by widening the hallways as well as in addition to adding the lockers.
But so that would be the additional. That would have been included in the original specs before you came up with this, right?
No, because they didn't have, it was in lockers.
No, I think the AL level wasn't quite there.
Yes.
Maybe we need to go back, or maybe you can just send me the link to the, the program specs so I can see, because I think, I think they were there.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because it was based on Dixon Smith and Shirley.
Twenty-nine.
The, the answer is, yes.
I like what you're doing here, but I'm just trying to, to make sure that we are, you know, sufficiently describing the, the cost. I don't think it's seven thousand times an average of four hundred dollars to add this in.
Right, I understand what you're saying. The answer is yes, lockers, to Tom's point, it's not, it's not as clear in the spec, but it was always in the budget. So being able to do the lockers is, is a convenience that we probably weren't really talking about fifteen years ago. It's something that's more modern. So when we were originally laying the building out, we were looking to potentially save that as a cost. We're now looking at it, and after talking with Stacy and Ms. Ivory, we're saying, this isn't gonna work, we need to probably put the lockers in, so put it back in, right? And how we put it in, we did the four thousand.
I, I support this, but I want to, I want to have, you have truth in advertising and transparency and everything else.
Sure. A hundred percent.
But you're absolutely right, when we pulled the numbers for this, we just did the pro-rata cost based on the overall gross square footage of the building. So it was, it pays, it's that, that four hundred dollars a square foot takes its share of site work, it takes its share of everything.
Sure, yeah.
It's just.
We could break that out.
The science, that, I mean, it's gonna be, it's probably gonna be half of that at the most, I would think.
Oh, yeah, compared to a science lab, sure.
Sure.
But, but the average, the, the average cost of a classroom, this is gonna be much less costly to build.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's great, thank you.
So we go to your point about what are we adding in, it's probably not going to cost as much as the average square foot times seven thousand.
Sure.
But this is also gonna save us money when we get to the point where Drew is over capacity again.
I like it, I'm, I'm supporting it.
No, I'm, she's trying to make, she's trying to make it the strong case.
No, I, I, I. I'm trying to defend this here.
Correct, yeah, I got you.
We're all.
Thank you, Dr. Chase.
We, we're here, we got you.
Details, details. All right, here, you can add this back to safer somebody else because that's a lot of paper.
Okay.
And it's very good recitation.
We recycle, we need to.
We can, they can use them for somebody.
If you don't recycle them, right in the policy.
So are we, are you completely missing?
We're good.
Thanks. So we can move on to our annual Head Start and Early Childhood Training.
Oh, you don't want to work there. You can scribble on them.
Somebody might want.
Someone's getting you some.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I wonder if this is still a higher price. Did anybody check with the Department of Education?
Stop, it's just, I'm not, I'm, yeah, I can't, I can't joke like that, it's still too wrong for me.
I have to.
Okay, our newest learners.
Yes, our most fabulous learners, we have in Stafford County. Um, so I'm Amanda Durazio, in case, um, and you don't know, I am the director uh of our early childhood program. And so just a quick little synopsis of what it kind of looks like for us. You can see along the bottom there, we're made up of three programs. We have Virginia Preschool Initiative, Head Start, and Early Head Start, as well as Early Childhood Special Education. Those three programs are served at two sites, Rising Star in the south and North Star in the north. And we have one shared vision, which is children and families building a successful future.
Can I just have a quick question?
Sure.
You have the number of students for everything but early childhood special ed, do we know how many students we have?
That's correct.
I know it changes.
So it changes, it changes all the time, so I'm actually getting right here to our program data, that will be in your.
Increasing. Right. Okay, that's great, perfect.
I'm not gonna go over necessarily everything because this was made a month ago. So our most current numbers as of this morning were um that we had six hundred and ninety little learners at our early childhood sites, okay? So those learners.
Well, there's, is there a waiting list?
Um, we have a waiting list right now at North Star for our Head Start and VPIs, um, students, uh, probably thirty for our Head Start and probably close to eighty or a hundred for our VPI program. Um, we do not have a waiting list for Early Childhood Special Education because that is a mandatory program that we must serve, okay?
Meaning everyone gets.
Everyone who comes through Child Finder has a transfer IEP, anyone that has been found to have a disability will be served in our program.
Which doesn't mean in that, in one of those buildings, it might be like speech therapy at a local elementary school, correct?
We have twenty students that have, um, speech-only IEPs that.
Like that was my kid who, before she went to Moncur, she went to Moncur for speech, I'm just trying to figure out where she fit in.
Correct. Some of them come to us still, some of them go to their, their, their elementary school.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we have over twenty languages, we have a very, very diverse population. Our early Head, our, our early Head Start and Head Start families uh come in all shapes and sizes, so this is just a little snapshot of the families that we serve. We serve um students who are in foster families, come from single parent homes, um, families that are unhoused, families that receive public assistance, military families. So, um, and then you can see down there on the very bottom, that was our waitlist last year, early Head Start, thirty-five students, Head Start, two hundred and one.
Hundred and one.
If they're on our waitlist, it does not mean that they qualify, okay? They may have gone through the initial application, but for whatever reason, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're waiting on a spot. Um, family engagement is just something I wanted to quickly uh highlight. This didn't transfer over as best as I hoped, but the numbers in yellow over there are the actual number of individuals who attended these events. So our family learning nights, our Thanksgiving meal, our kite day, and our family picnics. We just had kite day on Saturday and we had over three hundred individuals there, this is last year's numbers.
I gotta say, ninety-five parent volunteers.
In the classroom.
Given that the number, you know, just the size of the school.
Yes.
That's incredible, like when you think about those ratios, if you applied those to any other school we had.
Yes. It is one of our biggest goals to partner with those families. So, and here is just a little, little bit of a shout out to our uh community partners. All of the people listed here, all of the um resources that are listed here contribute to our program. They provide meals, they provide assistance, Operation Warm Coat, um, but these are all resources for our family. As you know, and you've partnered with us before, literacy at home is a big goal for us. You, the school board, donated um books to our families that attended the Thanksgiving dinner. We have over eight thousand books that were donated last year and were sent home with kids. So that's a great thing to highlight. Um, the next two slides are about wellness, um, Head Start and Virginia Preschool Initiative, as well as Early Childhood Special Education. Our goal is to make sure that our kids are happy and healthy and are served nutritious meals, so we partner with Stafford County Schools to make sure that that happens. And our, each site has a mental health coordinator, basically a school social worker who provides support to classrooms and students, also provides parent training, consults with staff, um, to make sure that our wellness is where it needs to be.
What could it be parent training?
Um, most recent. Um, most recently, we did one on conscious discipline. Conscious discipline is a, um, it's a program similar to a responsive classroom that they use in, um, elementary school. And we did a six-week training for parents. They got a copy of the book and our mental health coordinators brought them through. These are some ways that you can use positive reinforcement with our children. Um, our academics are always a glow. We truly set up our kids for success, um, in elementary school. Our students take the Virginia Preschool readiness, the VKRP, and the LLS system. They take both of those assessments and those are the same assessments that are given in elementary school. We do very well, as you can see here, our, our scores just go up and up and we're very proud of that. As, as we kind of briefly said earlier, early childhood special education is our only program that doesn't have a number on that first page and that is because it is constantly growing. If you look at this little chart on this side, we have nearly doubled in size since, in the past ten years. We are projected to start the year next year with three hundred and forty students in our early childhood special education program. So thank you for the modulars and advocating for that, but this is our one program that is mandatory. Our VPI and our Head Start programs are not mandatory, but they are necessary to meet the needs of our, our families here in Stafford County. But, um, our early.
If you have more space, you could take the students.
Absolutely, we could.
But those are fixed enrollment.
Correct, we currently have four hundred and fifty-seven slots allotted to us for VPI. So those are slots that we don't fill, we fill eighty-three. Here is our budget, I've just, um, I have to present this, obviously, for our Head Start training. So Head Start is on that first line, the funds that we received and expended. The Stafford County Schools line shows, that's a, a blended, uh, number there. It's for VPI funding, our local funding, state funding, and our non-federal share for Head Start. So basically, all this shows is we come, we came in under budget last year. So this is new this year, this is our early childhood program rating. So Virginia Quality has started at the state level and every preschools or early childhood that receives any sort of public funding is given a rating, Virginia Quality Rating, and we meet expectations. That score is comprised of the fact that we use a curriculum that is Virginia Department of Education approved, which is the created, created curriculum, sorry. And, um, it's through our class observations. So each teacher in our school gets three class observations, which are each two hours long. Two are from the administrator in the building and one is from someone from the state, an external observer. Those scores are averaged and that is how we get our quality rating. So we are, we've been already observed, we have been observed by the state this year and we are on track to meet expectations again this year. Yes, those two-hour observations are not super fun.
No, I was just thinking of poor kids.
Yeah, um, well, they're having fun.
They're kidding.
Promise.
They don't know.
Yeah, and it's just such a, we're sitting there, yeah.
These kids are like, hey, do this perfect, it's gonna be a one.
Yeah. That's when you're gonna pray, Mike.
This is, uh, our community assessment, these are some key points, um, to summarize. Uh, our North Star location has a longer waiting list than our Rising Star location. To meet the needs of the families in the North, we are moving a four-year-old classroom from Rising Star to North Star next year. We will have five four-year-old classrooms at Rising Star and five at North Star. Transportation is always a challenge for us, but we are already working with Mr. Wilcox to streamline and refine the process for next year. We're really excited about it, moving to digital instead of paper, which will be great. And then finally, our families do, um, continue to face, you know, uncertainty, unemployment, poverty. And so that just solidifies the need for our program. So some goals that we have next year are listed here and I did wanna just highlight because this is in our grant, um, refunding grant application is our behavior support position. Right now, we have one behavior support position and it's a shared position. We did write into our grant, um, and move, move some money around to hopefully allow us to be able to get another one of those positions so that we can have one at each site, okay?
So this is a federal grant from the U.S. Department of Education?
It is from Health and Human Services. It's a complete, yes, it's a, it's a different one.
I'm sorry, what were your questions?
No, no, we, she said that they're putting this position, um, into a grant and I was just wondering.
Oh, okay.
It's in this refunding application over that I have today.
The refunding application is done annually, so. Gotcha, okay. It's just that they've switched. I heard the question, oh, I'm sorry. DOE, it's now HHS. Right, but.
It always was.
Right, well, it was always HHS, right, it's always HHS. So can I ask, are you done, Trish, sorry?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm hoping that this gets funded.
Just to go back, population growth in the North, so you're, can you explain that to me again, you're moving one four-year-old classroom.
Right now, we have six four-year-old classrooms, um, that are Head Start funded at our Rising Star location. We've not been able to fill those classrooms, we still have five spots.
Okay.
Our, we have a waiting list that's thirty-deep for a four-year-old classroom in the North and so.
And we have the space for that and what about the transfer? Like where are those kids coming from, are they gonna be on the bus over a long time?
That'd be better.
It will be so much better.
So does some of that come?
It will be so much better.
I know that we've kind of, I hate to use the word redistricting in early childhood, but I feel like in the time I've been on the board, we kind of moved that boundary because of space. Cause it used to be like, you know where I live, I was districted for Rising Star, even though North Star is right there. And so since I've been on the board, I know that that boundary has moved a little bit further south.
Right.
That would now, my household would be districted for, for North Star.
North Star, yes.
And I feel like that contributes to, of course, the demand going up at North Star because we've expanded the attendance zone.
Right.
So I'm glad that we are able to kind of shift some of those families.
It's more of a, uh, like kind of a north and south kind of line, we use more House Road for a lot of it.
Yeah, great.
Okay. Oh, okay, so I was really done, I just wanted to say thank you all and, um, I just really appreciate all the support that you give us. We have six hundred and ninety students and these are most vulnerable kids, there are students with disabilities, are speakers of other languages, and are economically disadvantaged. So we truly are building the foundation for future success.
We are very appreciative of the work you all do, um, at North Star and Rising Star.
So I, I was curious, just in the bulletin, we were told that because of the cuts to HHS field offices or whatever, that, that you all may, may be much slower to get some of those services and funds. So we are currently funded from the federal government till when?
Um, this funding year, uh, ends on July thirty, our new funding starts on August one. So, um, once you have approved this, I have everything already ready to go. It's not due until May one, but I will submit it as soon as I have everything.
And when do you expect to hear back as to whether or not you are funded?
They typically do not give a notice of award, of award until the day prior.
The day prior to start.
The school starting?
So July thirty-first?
Yes.
To the end of the previous grant.
Yes. So it's kind of, like if, it's kind of, I guess, understood that it's a continuing application. Mm-hmm, yes.
Is anything gonna change in how these grants are evaluated based on the cuts that have been made? Do you anticipate that's gonna change?
I do not, we have a grant specialist and a program specialist. Our field office did not close, so, um, I still have somebody that I can reach out to at our regional office and they will be the ones that will be approving this grant.
Well, I hope, I hope that families who are, uh, having the great fortune to be involved in the program are letting their legislators know how much they appreciate the program.
And former families, my, my mom's in Head Start.
Yes, and former families.
And I, I know I said, I had kids in high school and I had a kid in Head Start and the support that families get in Head Start is, is actually perfection. It's not the support that families can get in the public schools because we just can't do it. That federally funded school was the best school I've ever set foot in because everything was set up in a way that was only for success. Like we teach our kids how to brush their teeth and, I mean, just everything, I was at that school, I loved being there, so.
It is truly about the whole child.
It's also about the whole family. I think it's not just that the children thrive, it's that the families also have goals that are taught parenting skills and are, and, and I think it's a huge, more of a wraparound service, I wish we could do that in elementary.
And I was lucky to get in, they called me the day before and said there was an extra spot, do you want your kid to do that?
Yes.
He didn't really qualify, they wouldn't let you in, and I was like, okay.
And just before I go, I do want to let you know that my, um, assistant principal, Miss Stacy Bachelor, is here as well as Miss Amanda Black and Miss Jennifer Clementson, they're our education coordinators, I'm just saying.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you guys very much, let me know if you have any questions.
It is six o'clock, we have three agenda items, but I would like to take a brief break because there is food out there, bathrooms. And we'll, the three agenda items that are left are, they sound like really deep topics, they are really deep topics. They are expected to be more of like a brief overview update or, um, for us and with follow-up to come at future meetings or in subcommittees, things like that.
Okay. So six eleven?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you for having me here this evening. I'm gonna start by just providing a brief description of what, um, back, what it looked like before we went back to base. Um, I'm gonna give you information regarding just the number of students impacted. We're gonna look at the review process, our stakeholder feedback, and then give some recommendations. So as we jump into this, in, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, um, we, this is a snapshot here of what it looked like before we went back to base. So overall, we had ninety-nine programs across the division. Um, you can see we had emotional behavior support programs, we had eighteen of those across the division. You can see the breakout between elementary, middle, and high. For our autism programs, we had fifty-six autism programs across the three levels. And then for our learning support, which this serves our students with more cognitive disabilities.
What was the total again?
Uh, ninety-nine total across all three programs across the division. And we had twenty-five learning support across those three levels. So I refer to the twenty-two, twenty-three years, kind of like our baseline year, we went back to base, this is as programs were. So this is actually right now, we're in our second year. So as we look at the first year of implementation, this speaks to the six hundred and thirty-six students with disabilities that were in those ninety-nine programs in twenty-two, twenty-three. Of the six hundred and thirty-six students in the program, two hundred and sixty-nine of them were not in their base schools. That's roughly forty-two percent.
And that's because they were given the option to choose?
No.
No, this was before that.
This is before that, this is, they were placed by IEP teams. No, great question. Three hundred and sixty-seven of them were being served in their base schools. So that means that the program was at their school and so they did not need to, um, move. Of the two hundred and sixty-nine students who were identified, um, that were not in their base, about a hundred and fifty of those students went back to their base. That's roughly fifty-six percent of the students who needed to go back, um, or who were not in their base school, did go back to their base school. And there were some reasons for that. Um, one was if you are a fourth grader in elementary school and the next year, it was gonna be your last year at that elementary school, we weren't gonna make you move to a new elementary school. And then in some instances, IEP teams convened and determined that the student need to stay where they were at that school based on their needs. So if we look to the pie chart there to the right, that represents the percent of students in Level Two programs who either stayed or went back. So the blue is seventy-six percent of the students overall who were in programs stayed at their base schools, while the twenty-four percent of students went back to their base schools beginning last school year, twenty-three, twenty-four.
So, but of so many students who stayed, were they at their base school?
Yes, they were, yes. What was that number?
Three.
Four hundred and eighty-six students, um, I'm sorry, three hundred and sixty-seven students were at their base school already. Okay, so here's the process we went to review. It included data review assessing the needs of our students first and foremost. Um, and data suggested, um, that students in need of emotional behavior supports had a higher rate of private day placement. Other data indicated additional behavior supports are needed for our students here in public school. We solicited feedback internally and externally and we're gonna talk about that feedback here on the next slide, so I'm gonna hold off on that. We also gathered additional information from schools and tonight we're, we are ready to make recommendations. The stakeholder feeder, um, I'm sorry, stakeholder feedback that we solicited internally, that was our principals and our staff. Our staff was able to highlight bright, bright spite, I'm sorry, bright spots. Where schools were, schools who were able to replicate the programming, we had students thriving. Conversely, some of our staff reported that having students with disabilities in cross-categorical classes made it more difficult to support students varying needs in one class. They noted that the needs of students with emotional behavior supports varied from those of students with more cognitive or communication disabilities. So I do wanna note here that the high schools were able to maintain separate EBS or emotional behavior support classrooms and autism classrooms because of the larger population of students, so there was not as huge an impact, um, to the high school level. So also compounding this issue was the fact that our staff specializing maybe in autism may not have been prepared to fully support students with emotional disabilities that might be coming back to their schools. So that was the feedback that we had from staff and principals. When we talked with our external feed, um, fetal, uh, feedback from our special ed advisory committee, they too were concerned with the lack of separate, separate programs for students and they would like to see that this division shift back to more of a needs-based model for our level, Level Two students. So here are the recommendations. Overall, the recommendation is to slowly roll back the back-to-base approach due to the lack of supporting data and achievement outcomes. We will start by providing additional programming supports at identified schools, specifically for emotional behavior support classrooms at elementary and two at middle school. I will say this is more of a recommendation for elementary and middle because again, the high schools were able to replicate the programming and keep it intact. The second recommendation focuses on how we realign staffing for our students who require more intense programming. We need to focus on student services and not just on the number of students being served. And finally, because the continuous improvement cycle does not stop, we are going to study the supports that we add in the fall and beyond to determine and act on next steps. This is not just a one-year flip back, this is going to be a slow roll, um, back to, um, supporting our students more. It won't look exactly like it looked, but we will, um, move more towards a programmatic approach for students with emotional behavior support needs, communication needs, and cognitive disabilities.
Um, do we have space constraints at some of our elementary schools while we're waiting for the opening of those two new schools?
So, uh, yes, we do, but the schools that I spoke to regarding opening the classrooms, we are able in some instances to convert the staffing and space that we already have and students already there to support them. So we will be able to, um, we'll be able to open the four at elementary and two at middle because we, we, we've worked through those logistics. And that is part of why it will be a slow roll also. Um, one of the schools I talked to won't have the space next year, but the following year when there's, when there's redistricting occurs, there will be space and they will have a teacher that potentially identify for it as well. So that's why it will need to be a, a slow roll.
So you said there, there were ninety-nine total programs in twenty-two, twenty-three, how many programs are there now?
So because we don't count by program anymore, I don't have that specific.
How many classrooms?
A hundred and thirty-one.
A hundred and thirty-one.
So we went from ninety, when you said programs before, ninety-nine program, excuse me, that would have been ninety-nine classrooms or?
So you can't exactly gauge it that way. So if we looked at Level Two, the comparison for that would be one hundred and seven in twenty-two, twenty-three, to this year, one hundred and thirty-one. That's the comparison.
Okay. I wanted to just kind of bring forward, and we've talked about this at the, at the, on the Special Education Committee. So these are things I brought up to the committee. But when we heard about this initiative to do back-to-base a couple of years ago, there were two things, two, you know, I hesitate to use the word issue or problem because it really wasn't, you know, I don't see special education as an issue or problem, but two kind of obstacles that we were facing. One, it was, we were told that we could be violating a student's privacy if we take a child with a specific diagnosis and walk that child into a classroom that says that diagnosis on the door. And we needed to get away from that. And when we have classrooms labeled that are more Level One or Level Two, that that doesn't necessarily breach that student's privacy. Second was more of a staffing concern, that some of the special education classroom or programs, when they are separated by diagnosis or need, were easier to fill versus the ones that were harder to fill. The ones that harder, were harder to fill ended up being filled with long-term subs or unlicensed teachers, which was a disservice to those populations, which kind of became a barrier to them meeting their benchmarks and goals. In the committee meeting, I'll let you answer, but you were very great at explaining why those shouldn't be concerns for us moving forward. So I just wanted to give you the opportunity to repeat what you said.
So it is, it is typical for students with more significant disabilities to be in more of a program setting, if you will, specific to their need. So we will say that the disability does not drive their placement and where they're placed. But even as you talk with our families of students that have been impacted by this, they, they miss having that space where they know for our students that have communication or needs as far as autism, that they were in a space where those teachers were specifically trained to be able to support them. And it was beneficial for their student. And the other thing was, as you walk around our schools, we should just be seeing the names of teachers outdoors. We shouldn't see the category of whatever the classroom name is. And in most of our schools, I wanna say that we, we do see that. We just see the name. And as we see specific disability categories up there, we do talk with our folks about that. So as far as it being, I think if someone had said it was a HIPAA violation or, so we don't diagnose students. We categorize them with disabilities based on a criteria that we use. And we, again, that doesn't drive the idea they are provided services. You could be a student with autism and be served in the general population, or be served in a program, or be served half in and half out. If every student's need varies.
So can you speak to, Ms. Sigmund mentioned the issue of staffing different types of classrooms and students. Did we see any loss of staff when we made the change to back-to-base?
So I don't think we can say that we did. I've seen some of the retention rates for special education, and I don't know that we can draw impact from, from back-to-base for loss of that, of our, of our staff that might left anyway.
I, well, and I can share just a little bit. One of the, I've, I've heard about this since probably day one, you know, coming into schools and hearing from teachers and staff about it. I, you know, I can't speak to the retention piece. What I can share is some of the difficulties that teachers have shared in terms of really trying to meet the needs of kids because they're passionate about it.
Yep.
When we have students with emotional disabilities, students with autism, students with intellectual disabilities in the same classroom, it becomes incredibly challenging. And I, I don't know, I have not met, you know, many teachers that can do that really well. It's very specialized. And so I think they have been frustrated and found it very difficult to do that. And so the burnout has been real.
I think our general ed teachers expressed the same concern.
Mm-hmm.
Of having to have the whole spectrum of ability.
Well, it's, it's interesting. You're, you're saying you're making recommendations and the school board had no part in that decision.
And I think just to clarify.
Other than being advised, this is what we're going to do.
Right.
Because I know several of us.
Found out on school.
Including me, raised questions about.
School visit.
Oh, yeah.
But we were told that was out of our.
This is school visit too.
So I can.
Well, we were also told that it was illegal what we were doing.
Yes.
And so that's why I was like, oh my gosh, like.
How, how did we get away from that? You know what, my answer was, is that where the case ran? Did it sue?
It was so, so bought it. I mean, it was marketed so.
And we were not sued.
It was, it was marketed pretty aggressively.
Which is why I kept raising at the committee and again now, like what we were told on why we had to do this. And why we're not like going back to where we were before when we had, you know, we didn't just wake up one morning and decide to move students back to base. It was because we were told.
But we didn't do it though.
We were at risk.
It's not come to us for a vote.
I mean, we as a school division, right, like not as us as a board. It wasn't, you know, just for fun that we decided to move students. We were advised that these were the risks we were trying to mitigate. And I want people to realize that they aren't as big a risk as they might have been and that we are.
Well, and I feel that when the, you know, we're growing this many programs, classrooms, that giving the, the level of service that these kids need is somewhat been a little bit of a hamstring issue for the current way that it's being done. The other curiosity, I wasn't, I think there was a discipline number that you also shared.
Yes. One of the data points that we looked at was discipline of students with disabilities. And we saw an increase for students that had emotional behavior supports. We saw an increase in their manifestation, the manifestation of the disability in their, in their discipline, in our discipline record. So that's something that we also wanna.
Some of that maybe the teacher didn't have the training to know how to handle that and potentially de-escalate that.
Right.
Some of it maybe. Maybe that they were escalated by just.
Didn't we increase significantly our education outside of Stafford schools? The number of students that had to go to the.
The private schools.
Private schools.
About.
About the same time.
Twenty over the last two years, we've, we've significantly seen an uptick in the number of, well, twenty students with emotional behavior supports, but more so, yeah, we've had a, a big uptick in the number of students being outplaced over the last two years.
After we.
It's been substantial, yes.
And so, to Ms. Healy's point, just to clarify, we, you know, so Dr. Bush is making this recommendation to me. We wanted to continue to bring, help you understand the why behind it while we're moving this, this direction. We have seen this as an issue. All the data points that this, we do need to move in this direction. And so just wanted to continue to, you to understand the why and why we're moving this direction. We're not asking for a voter action on your part, but just want you to know, here's what we're seeing, here's the why behind it and what we're doing. We would, this would, we haven't shared the names of the schools yet because we're still working with the schools on it because you gotta have space. We have to have a, the right teacher. We have to have the number of students. There's a number of things that go into that. And so, you know, once we move forward this, we will start to have conversations with individual families because it's through the IEP process that we work on this and start to make some of those, some of those shifts. So.
I do have a question though about how, when, when it's all finalized, and actually you're not gonna answer me now. And I understand that this is not a school board thing, but I need to know this answer for the students that were hearing impaired that were clustered together. That's what I know. From before we did this, I'm saying clustered together because I'm sure it wasn't all one class, but then it's a community. And then we dispersed some of them out. I know they have maybe like adults who are with them, but that's not their friend. Their friends are, you know, they're hearing impaired and they're in schools with hearing students. And that is detrimental, in my opinion. So I just hope that there's a way that they can be clustered back to the way where we restore their community. Because that was great harm that was done. And I just wanted to quickly put them back if we can.
I can speak to that. We currently have about six students and we did, we do look at that clustering. So there was not a huge impact for this, for those students.
So their educators are saying that they would love for those kids to be back where they wanna be because they're not happy. They have someone they can talk to, but it's not the same when it's not a kid. So.
There's only one that's maybe not clustered with the others right now. So.
Okay, well, that's, well, I don't wanna.
And if there's.
People talking.
And if there's someone specific.
We need to, we need to, I just, I just want that community to be restored. That's all I'm asking for. I don't need any details.
Yeah.
It's not my business. Just make them happy, please, if you can. That's all I'm asking.
And if there's somebody talking to you specifically, please send them to me so that I can.
They're watching.
Chat with them as well. So please reach out. But yeah, no, that was part of the review that Dr. Smith had asked for as well.
Okay.
And then anybody who through the IEP process was, they decided upon a private placement, do we revisit those students and give, go, I guess go through the process again or give them the option to re-enter the IEP process to return to a school-based setting?
So that's a natural process that occurs anyway with the annual IEP review placement. It's part of that conversation. And naturally, as our students in private day schools are ready to transition back to public school, that conversation does occur. So with, with those opening, there is potential there for that.
Is that because you have a natural desire to have them transition back? Is that, is that why that's like a natural?
Yes. Yes. And we work with the private day school as far as the progress that they're making on their goals and whether or not they're ready to start transitioning back.
Okay.
But yes, the goal is for our students.
So we wouldn't even be, you would have that conversation regardless if we were changing.
Yes. Absolutely. That is the goal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very.
Elementary school redistricting, we will have the presentation of a new to us scenario line. And then there will also be an overview as respect, with respect to Title I, community eligibility provision and class size reduction. For those Title I CP and CSR designations, it is very much an overview and we are going to revisit that again later in the spring, early summer. And we've been invited to schedule one-on-one meetings to discuss specific schools or specific concerns we have with any or all of those.
Mr. White, man of the hour.
Okay, so I'm gonna get to this pretty quickly. We have a new scenario, which is Scenario Line. On the left, you have the current boundaries. Then you can see the boundaries of Scenario Line. Some of the key things we want to highlight about Scenario Line, how it differs, is if you look at Elementary School nineteen, it's slated to open at ninety-one percent capacity, wherein Scenario Green, that number was a little higher, it was ninety-five percent. So that was one of the big accomplishments. In terms of demographics, they pretty much remain the same. With regards to Elementary School eighteen, it stays the same. And so that's really one of the big differentiators. So moving ahead, I just want to show you which planning units will reassign. And so looking at the map, you can see that we had to split some planning units in the Route One area. We've identified the feeder, Planning Unit three twenty-three point two, three seventeen point one, three twenty point six. They were assigned from ES nineteen back to Wyman Creek. Planning Unit two ninety-two point two was split, and it was also assigned to Wyman Creek. And then last but not least, we have Planning Unit two twenty point zero. That was reassigned back to Margaret Frank.
When it's set back, that means they're not being moved.
They're not being moved. So in Scenario Green.
So technically.
Yeah, I think he said that the Wyman Creek students aren't being moved. They're staying. They're staying.
They're currently upright in Crete.
So but one of the universal complaints that we had all discussed was opening ES nineteen at ninety-five percent. It seemed.
No, I don't have a problem with it. I just, the language, if you say they're, they're being, they're being reassigned to somewhere they're really not being reassigned.
They're not being reassigned at all.
They're being left where they were.
They were.
Leave them alone.
Yep.
And, and, but the problem was to get continuous boundaries within the school intended zones.
Planning units are not uniform shapes.
So I appreciate that Mr. White went through the effort to split some of these out so that we could do that.
When I talked to Dr. Smith last week and he told me this was coming, my question was, why wasn't the entire board aware that we could go in and, and make these tweaks and then it could come here tonight? Because I know I've been talking with Ms. Randall about a very small group in, in her district that she would like to keep as a school. I'm sure she'll bring it up. But if we had all been aware that we could, no, I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but I'm just saying that we could have done this all at once and it would have been simpler and maybe even, you know, less stress on the, on the community. So if, if Ms. Randall could talk about hers, I think that's something we should talk about now before we, you know, have, have the discussion.
Yeah. In fairness, I didn't know that we could do it this way. It's just that in talking to Mr. White and talking to Dr. Smith, I said we still had concerns about how high because.
I don't have a problem with it being done. My, my concern is that we all didn't know that we had that opportunity and we could have all acted together. And, you know, the more we act together, the better it is for everyone.
And in the spirit of that, I'll go after Susan. Ms. Randall, excuse me.
Okay. So one of the things that we have on our comments tonight and as far back as March, has been a group of thirteen students, eighteen students, I'm not even sure. And honestly, for them, I have no issue with them coming to Ferry Farm. Obviously, they do. But the only thing is, is that that group, if I took out Pratt Park, would be an island coming to Ferry Farm. And so I just asked to, to have it looked at and was told that there is a two percent difference, no ESOL difference, no, there's like a one percent bed difference. There's no free and reduced difference. And transportation's way in was, it would be easier to transport those kids to Conway. So it's a group, I would just like for it to be considered. Yeah, this little group right here.
So my, my concern with it is I have at least two APUs that are being moved to Grafton that we'd also like to stay at Conway. So, and I looked at it and I'm like, look, we have to, you know, we are supposed to be trying to fill Grafton and Ferry Farm. So I basically said, no, we won't.
How many students are in there?
I don't remember, but there were two APUs that, that had contacted us. So I'm, I'm happy for us to go back to the drawing board and I'll pull those as well when you can look at them in concert with this. I also would suggest that in terms of the way this looks, it looks to me like it would be better for, in terms of con- continuousness, they could go to Falmouth, right? And Falmouth would shares that whole border. And it also solves the problem of they're going to Drew and Stafford because students at Falmouth go to Drew.
That is also something that they have said is that they're concerned about. They're, if they go to Ferry Farm, they'll be the only ones, the thirteen will be the only ones. And of course, they're not in all one grade, but the only ones going to Drew. And then, you know, I don't know where they'll be going to high school, but.
We already, but we already know that our feeder system isn't exactly.
No, no.
Especially with the expansion.
But that's, but that's part of, but that's part of their justification for wanting to go to Conway instead of Ferry Farm. And I'm saying, you know.
But we don't know, and I guess we would need to know what transportation thought of that.
I'm, I'm gonna bet that they drive past Falmouth to get to Conway. But transportation can, can let us know. Yep.
Ms. Go ahead.
I think you all saw the emails that we received last week, and that's the only question that I have. I already spoke with the superintendent about it. I just wanted.
In regards to Moncur.
Yeah, in regards to Moncur. And all I'm asking for was that, so I'm not, I don't really.
I didn't receive.
We, we did, we just didn't, we didn't read them. It was to all of us.
Is this from the staff?
This is because the ELL population.
Yes. I just wanted that to be known.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah.
And I don't know if you're ready to talk about it now or not. And if you're not, then that's fine.
Yeah, talk about it, but.
Yeah, one of the digital comments is that they're thanking us for keeping the ELL population up there together. I don't know if that's overt, but that's not.
They've always been high. It was thirty-seven percent, now it's forty. It will go up to forty with the redistricting, but.
But your population.
But the population.
The total population comes down. So it's generally the same number of students, the same number of students.
It's just more concentrated. But it's just that there's fewer students now in this school.
Okay.
So, um, but the problem is where Moncur is located is it's pretty much squeezed between K. Waller Barrett and I-95. So there's just, there's a high population, there's a high number of apartment complexes, there's a lot of, but the population actually hasn't changed, it's just that we brought the number of students down. So it's, cause it was approaching a thousand, I think it's much lower than that.
Well, and it's designed for what, one thousand and seventy?
Yeah, so, yeah, so Moncur will have, um, eight seventy-three. Eight seventy-three. So it was, and, and, and at one point, it was approaching a thousand, so that's a huge difference.
That's a huge difference.
So can you, can you confirm for me like what your concern is, like what your question is?
My concern was whatever was in her email, I just wanted, I wanted the superintendent and Lionel to look at it and just to give it.
Sometimes.
To give it, to give it an oppo-, just to listen to what she was saying and to look at it with some sensitivity. And that's it, right? It's not in my district, these are all my constituents, so I shouldn't be the loudest voice in the room, this is Liza's. But in the email, she emailed us all, but she singled me out, and so I'm asking.
And then she got it, it's in your district.
Okay, and, and I have a relationship with her because my kids grew up at Moncur.
Right.
And so, um, if it's Moncur and they ask us to do something, my answer is absolutely, I'll do whatever you're asking me to do, it's in Moncur. So I just wanted, um, you guys just to look at it, which maybe you don't know about it yet, cause I don't think you're on her email. But that's all, just to give it a look, maybe there's something that we missed, that's all, respectfully, and if not, then it is what it is.
Just so I'm clear, are you talking about, I know we had one on PU-107 that was asking about Moncur's states. I mean, look at it.
I don't think they were asking specifically, they were just.
They see that we weren't concerned about it.
They had forty percent.
And, and she's made some specific recommendations, and I don't know if those are recommendations we've talked about before, and, you know, this might be a you question or him.
Okay.
It's, because she made specific recommendations, I'm not sure that those have been talked about by other people. I know we haven't discussed it as a group of seven, but maybe those conversations have happened. And then I'm just not privy to them, cause like you said, it's not necessarily my district. So I just wanted to receive clarity that the suggestions she's made are suggestions we've talked about and we've either ruled in or out, and why is such a thing? And why we determined to stay where we are or make the change.
And respectfully, I want to be able to get an answer to her back that either is coming from the superintendent or Lionel, like this won't work because of, and not necessarily from a staff member who's, I have no problem with our staff members helping, but it, I, and, and where she is right now, she needs to know that it was looked at from someone who does this. And let them say no as opposed to like a canned response from me.
It's not just a comment, it's just, not a comment, but here's what we know.
You know, yeah, you know, so me or like someone helping me make it pretty, saying no, right? So that's all, and so I'm publicly saying it, you guys are gonna communicate, and I'm off the hook for not doing what I'm supposed to do, cause I love her and she will call me out, and I, and I'll be here for it, but.
All right.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I know that when I sat down with, when we sat down with Lionel, we looked at Moncur, and I know on the second that I did, and there's just not a lot of ways to move those planning units around.
I know.
And, and I, I think that without creating an island, currently, Moncur has a terrible attendance zone because it has pockets of students all over the place.
And we look flip-floppy, cause I forget the community, I, they were taken from there and put to Wyman Water, now they're coming back, or maybe I'm doing it opposite and we continue to look flip-floppy.
No, I actually did have a group of students that I had to move into Wyman Water because Moncur had over a thousand students, it was busting at the seams.
Oh, that small, small.
It's, it was, yeah, Woodlands or.
Woodstream.
Woodstream. And I moved them to Wyman Water, and now I'm moving them back to Moncur. And I think they're unhappy about moving back to Moncur, but they were very unhappy about moving to Wyman Water, and now they love Wyman Water.
Just something that I hear that a lot.
It's just that we had.
It's cause our schools are great, all of them.
It was just, there was over a thousand students we had to move them, and that was the only place I could move them. And it actually reduced their transportation.
I was gonna say.
And I, I get it, right? And I know that our staff members who advocate, I know they get it too, but sometimes we have to remember the human cost of, of running a school system, which means that when people are reaching out and when their emotions are intense, it's for me, I lean in, and I want us to lean in, meaning these two gentlemen, and help, and help with this, that's it, that's all.
So I do just want to say on that backend, because that comment did come up at the end, that like perception is an interesting, um, reality to have, right? Because the comment that came in on digital comments was thanking us for keeping the ELL kids in Moncur because the resources have been, are in place there, and they have built a community together. So that's a perception, right? Like they were grateful that we didn't go ahead and separate those kids out. So I don't know, maybe I'm reading more into the comment than I should be, but that struck me because of what she said.
It's a great point, and that's, I'm glad you're actually saying that, because people need to hear that, you know?
Yeah, I'm just, well, right, cause I, I just feel like it was a great point to make, because you don't think of it. But also on the record too, I think we're, we get into a little bit of trouble of taking individual planning units all the time and having to say, okay, well, let me go back and see this, let me go back and see that, because what we do for one, and I'm not trying to be insensitive to, by any stretch of the imagination, but we do have to be realistic. Like there are some that can absolutely make sense based on, you're like, oh, I didn't see that before. But there are others that if we start doing that, it will never stop.
Right.
So, and we have the public hearing, and then we have the opportunity.
That's why we are in line, that's why we got to line.
Yeah, so, so to me, I mean, I'm fine with whatever, because again, my folks are either going to a brand new school or, um, they're staying where they're at, right? And I feel like there's been enough adjustment from everyone within that area that's affected, that the scenarios have all come out. Unless I'm really wrong and I read all the comments the wrong way, like I took everything positively because I'm trying to be more glass half-full, you know what I mean? I don't know, but I just, I think we need to start looking at just tamping down.
Right, and my only point was, well, maybe not only point, but my point was, if we're gonna come up with another color, then let us all know, we're, but not you, Mr. White, you did an amazing job, but let us all know, okay, we have a chance. And, you know, this is your timeframe, if you wanna make a change in this color, you've gotta do it by a certain time. And we didn't, so now we're presenting one to the public that, you know, some of our members may have, you know, or, or, you wanted to make a change, but you didn't make it here, so now it's gonna be more in the spotlight because it's not in line. But it could have been in line if we had known last week, if you, if you, you know, meet with Mr. White by such and such a time and make a proposal, it'll get in there, because there was no consensus on these changes. These are just suggestions. So there could have been another tweak in there as well, that's my point.
So did your tweaks with respect to Brent and Rock Hill, were they in green?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I didn't think.
They were, that was, and, and very, it's actually very, very similar to the situation here.
Right.
It's, it's eleven, well, well, this time it's thirty, but it's two percent.
Right.
You know, two percent here, two percent there.
I just wanna make sure I didn't know.
It's actually a shorter transportation ride to leave them where they are. And, and that's, that's the exact same scenario as the Ingleside. And I noticed in going through the digital comments, there's quite a few digital comments from, you know, this small group of people, and I'm sure they're gonna be talking to us tonight. So I wanted to, you know, to, to have it out there for, for people to be thinking about as we're doing this. Because if we had had the, the notice and opportunity last week, I can't imagine that wouldn't have been in line. And it's a lot easier to say, take it out, than to say, okay, you know, that, that makes sense. It's when, when it doesn't make a weight difference, you know, one side and the other on a seasonal.
The green scenario, I thought included everybody's changes. So I called Miss Guy and Miss Sigman, Dr. Chase was there, because I knew your changes were already in green. And I knew that I'd talked to Ms. Holstead, she said that she was, you know, her students.
Did you talk to Ms. Randall?
I did not, because.
Well, seeing she's the one that got left out.
Because it was a nor-, it was, it was about ES-19, and I didn't think any of her students were involved, but I thought her changes were already.
It's not your job to communicate that, but somebody is, somebody's up there, you know, driving the ship, and it's not you, Dr. Warner, you know, not any of us, but we just need to know, and that's all. And then, I'm not trying to be critical, but I'm, I'm trying to make an observation that this could have been a lot simpler. And if, if Ms. Randall had known, or I had known, or, you know, we could have made that change, it would have been in line, and we would have been discussing it, rather than saying, oh, let's make another change, and I don't know what color is next, but.
And Ms. Healy, I'll take that and own that, you know, I think, um, you know, when, when, I think Dr. Chase and Dr. Warner came in and gave the feedback, we had that together, I tried to share with you in our one-on-one calls, but I can, if that's the will of the board, that any time there's a change, we kind of put it out for folks, I'm happy to do that and, and kind of drive that process if you'd like, if that's, um.
But my one-on-one was Thursday night at four, four to four thirty.
It was, you're right, and I don't know when, I had to look and see when they met.
Notice was, it's gonna come out tomorrow, I'm like, that's not much time to make another.
Yeah.
So I kind of feel like, and maybe.
I'm not, I'm not being critical, this is a very difficult situation.
My misunderstanding, like, when I made, when I came forward with green, which I recognized was a significant change compared to these kind of like smaller changes, I asked that it go in the Friday memo specifically as a draft because, you know, I looked at it from my Garrison Bill lens, and I wasn't looking at everybody else's, but I was like, I don't wanna screw anybody else up inadvertently. And so when I see something coming in the Friday memo, because that was my frame of reference with green, that's kind of how I took my frame of reference with lime. And maybe that should be the practice kind of moving forward, is that it either goes in the Friday memo or in a separate email, like if it's a Thursday, it goes in the Friday memo, but if it's Monday, maybe we have an individual email saying, hey, we're thinking about projected blue or purple.
Another change, yeah. Purple.
Um, and if.
And I honestly thought all the changes had been incorporated in green, and that was hard to reset.
And we'll get feedback before we public notice it, because quite frankly, there could be an accidental click of the wrong planning unit, and I might not catch one in your district and vice versa, just to make sure that.
I'm happy from Rock Hill's standpoint, so far, I haven't heard any public comments adverse, so I'm just saying, you know, we need to be collaborative, and that's all of us, not four or five or six, all seven of us. That's what we ought to aim for when we're doing something like that, so that's all.
And I'm happy to do whatever, like if we go with, with Ms. Sigman's option, like however we wanna go about it, I just wanna make sure I have clear understanding of what the consensus is from the board.
Honestly, I think a email would, I didn't have any changes, but for me, an email would help. That was like, last day to make any changes, that would help me more than a Friday memo that I sometimes don't read until Monday or Tuesday. So I would like an email that says, you know, last day to make changes, like that makes it clear to everyone. And if you didn't check your email, you didn't check your email. And so when is the last day to make changes?
I don't know the word there yet, are we keeping all the scenarios at this point in terms of?
I think you would have to make, I thought it was gonna be after the public hearing, we'll see where things land.
After.
Okay, we're gonna, okay.
And then if there's, you know, interest at that time, we will make a motion.
Can we, can we have a discussion about making one more tweak?
Wait, if we're doing that, we're gonna look at my tweaks too.
We're talking, bring them on, you, you're free to do that too.
Yep, yep.
Did, did you not?
Do we have an agenda on the?
Did you not try to, when you were in here?
I have, I, I went and looked, and I'm like, well, that, you know, I, I, we should, whatever. But now if we're gonna push more into Conway, I've got more, I can push into Conway too.
So I'll just take a look.
Could one of you make a motion to amend the agenda out there that we added a, you know, a topic to discuss? Cause we, right now, we just have a public hearing, but we don't have a discussion.
Scenarios.
Okay.
Of discussion.
But excuse me, are we coming down to the wire where after tonight, there's no more changes? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I, I don't know that we can say after tonight, because we're just gonna hear feedback, so we might hear feedback today that requires us to go to the drawing board, as it were, and have additional considerations.
So for Title I CP.
Because there needs to be, because they're not looking at the stuff that we just talked about, it's after tonight, so.
This discussion out there?
Yeah, is this gonna be discussion out there?
I didn't think.
No, no, okay. So what are we, and then?
It's just a public hearing.
Oh, so we're gonna amend the agenda out there to have discussion of scenarios so that we can discuss, you know, your concerns.
After, after the public hearing, so we can hear what the public says and take into consideration the digital.
After the public hearing. And it could take into, at that time, we can also talk about potentially reducing the number we have currently, um, so that we're starting.
But does discussion take place after the public comment?
Yes, after the.
It'll have to be action discussion, cause it will have to be in the action section.
Okay, okay, all right, now, okay. C2S consolidation.
I thought we were doing elementary school redistricting, Title I CP.
Do we wanna discuss that out there, is that better out there?
I wouldn't advise it, I mean, it's, it's really deep, there's a lot to go into, I think if, um, I guess my suggestion would be we can come back to that another time.
I'd rather come back to this after we've had.
Is there anything that's not in here, because we can leave this?
Uh, I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, it gives a lot of details in that, and we're happy to follow up.
Do we wanna put it in the Friday memo and then have, discuss during our one-on-ones, so that?
Or take it home with us and discuss.
Yeah.
Read them out.
Read them out, yeah. Okay.
Okay, well, let us know if you have questions you'd like to discuss. Mr. Bowling and his team are happy to, to meet and discuss if you have any questions on that. It's a lot to go into, and we do plan to come back in later and give you an update in terms of recommendations before we have to approve the, the grant application in June. So we do, we would like to come back in May with some recommendations on that.
Once the redistricting stops, that's.
And, and we have to clear that certification for the Department of Education, right, for Title I funding?
My question is, I really don't want.
Do you wanna turn it to a CGS, or just like, is it an action?
Do we wanna, do we wanna show like a slide on CGS?
Yeah, CGS is super quick.
So do you wanna, how did you, you're so short, do you wanna ask it, go over to the next work session, because we put this away.
Yes.
There's no urgency on this tonight, so we can just make it the first item on the next work session agenda?
The CGS.
Like, I, you know, five minutes is not enough to really, to have any discussion.
Yeah, but can we hear from her, so we have something to think about as well?
You gotta, you can, you gotta handle.
That's assuming I, I don't know.
It's assuming she wants to read.
So, resident.
I'm reading. We're fine, we're fine.
Okay, so for a special time, um, we know that there's been conversation, um, over the past couple of years about whether we should consider consolidating some of our CGS sites due to the impact on space in our high schools, staffing, uh, and, as well as staffing implications. And so we feel that it's best for us to propose a timeline for looking at all of the potential consolidating, uh, consolidation scenarios, share those with you all, as well as the pros and cons, so that we can come to a decision as to whether it's something we want to move forward with in terms of considering it. If we find that none of those consolidating scenarios are beneficial to us and to students, then we would put the conversation to rest, but we know it's one that's been bubbling under the surface, and so we wanted to address it appropriately. So this is just a very brief proposed timeline that we worked on along with Dr. Mahendran here in terms of providing you all with information about where we are with CGS regionally, what the program looks like, staffing, space, things of that nature. Moving on to, um, to August, after that information session, we would like to present potential consolidation options, again, along with pros and cons of what that could look like and the implications for our students as well as our facilities. Uh, asking that a decision would be reached in September, so that if we were looking at moving forward, it will be something that we would consider in a subsequent school year. But wanting to, again, uh, address it thoroughly and provide you all with information to make a more decision.
So one of the things, and you, you made a mention of it, so I just wanna secure that, is that, um, the pros and cons in relation to our facilities.
Facilities, staffing, student, all of us.
Because I know one of them is just not really Dr. Carr, so I would wanna know.
Correct, nope.
If that consolidation was a consideration, I would hope that there would be a funding process to remedy that.
And that would be all a part of the information that we would present. We know that North specifically, that there are some facilities issues there. Um, but again, we would also look at the geographical locations of the sites, of course, transportation would be a factor, so we want the opportunity to lay that all out on the table for you all to consider.
Okay, and I would like to get some type of a quote memo about where we are now. I know when, when we had the three sites, it was because we wanted each of our high schools to have a signature program. And Brookpoint and Mountain U had IB, so the other three schools had CGS. Now that we have all the academies, there's not the same, um, I'd say.
Need.
Need to have three separate sites. Now, you know, I'd like to look at this in view of the academies as well in terms of the, the enrollment. And there's a lot of background information that I would like to get from Stafford schools independent of the, um, you know, the CGS.
Sure, and definitely, we have, we have enrollment information, we can, we can share that alongside.
For our information. Right, and, and also, I would say in terms of any changes since we're implementing the signatures, you know, academies, the more academies we have open, I would think the more choices students are gonna have. And, you know, I don't know, maybe we still want CGSs, and it has the opportunity to get college.
They have quite a waitlist this year.
Yeah, the, the waitlist was large, we were able to fill all of our seats, so that's not, that's not an issue.
But, but the cost in the staffing and, and the impact on the schools. So if we could get that sometime between now and whenever this, um, Dr. Mahendran comes up.
So there'll be a formal presentation for the next work session, is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. Correct.
So we all have their.
Yeah, so I was just gonna say, um, if you would also be sure to include the fact that we get per pupil money for each, each seat that we have filled with CGS. And I think it's the only program that we get per pupil money from the state in addition to the regular per pupil.
I also have to wonder if it's possible to do kind of an assessment of facilities, given that we're opening a new school, so things are gonna change. And, and so it's possible we could even expand the programs we already have and add new students, correct? students, correct?
Correct, and we've been in conversation with Jason Tower and officials about the current needs that exist, but again, we can continue that conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was like those, um, full, um, you know, some side of the ground or some stuff.
I wanted to extend our gratitude this evening to Stafford High School's Navy JROTC. Members of tonight's color guard include Elizabeth Ramirez, David Anderson, Kaiden Thompson, Gabriel Ramos. The instructors of Stafford High School JROTC program are Major John Gutierrez and Chief Damian Wilson, thank you all. Ms. Hall, could you please take the role?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Eason?
Here.
Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Halsted?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Irish?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have the call.
Great.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of a discussion item for the scenarios, that, um, the new scenario that's been added in this, the review of the scenarios that we currently have for the redistricting.
Okay, so that would be item 10.02.
And is that, you said the areas, the new scenarios, is this the scenarios generally? This is general discussion of scenarios, correct?
A discussion of the scenarios, including the new scenario that's been added.
Including but not limited to.
Correct.
Okay, just want to be clear, thank you.
Second. Okay. Please cast your votes. Ms. Guy, here number- I know, but it's still, sure we're not, there you go. That motion passes seven to zero. Is there a motion and a second for the consent?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Consent agenda also passes seven to zero. Dr. Smith, we are going to move to the announcements of administrative personnel appointments.
Thank you, Ms. Sigmund and board members, I am pleased to, to share with you the names of a few new administrators that we have that you just approved on your consent agenda. So two assistant principals and two principals that we will introduce this evening. So first, assistant principal, new assistant principal at Park Ridge Elementary School, Mr. Austin Eppenstein. Mr. Eppenstein will join the administrative team at Park Ridge Elementary School as the school's new assistant principal. He's been a part of Team Stafford for eight years, first as a fifth grade teacher at Anthony Burns Elementary School and currently at Grafton Village Elementary School as a math specialist. He served as an elementary school liaison to the Stafford Schools' work-based learning team for the inaugural Aviation Career Expo of Stafford, ACES. He's also presented on zones of regulation and empower intervention curriculums and presented alongside his Grafton Village colleagues on social emotional learning at last year's Virginia Association of Elementary School Principals Leadership Conference. Mr. Eppenstein earned his bachelor's degree of education from Arcata University and will complete his master in education in May at George Mason University, congratulations.
Thank you. So, good evening, first, I'd like to thank Dr. Smith, Madam Chair, members of the board, our executives, and Mrs. Sims for giving me the opportunity to become part of the administration team at Park Ridge Elementary. I also want to thank my wife and my family for supporting me throughout this journey and taking the next step in my career, and to the Park Ridge community, I'm very excited to build our connection, to learn together and to grow together, so thank you.
All right, next assistant principal I'd like to introduce is Ms. Jessica Ramey, who will be the new assistant principal at Rodney Thompson Middle School. Ms. Ramey currently serves as an assistant principal at Stafford Middle School. As a colleague and collaborator on the Renaissance Initiative brought to Stafford Middle School, Ms. Ramey had the, had had a transformative impact and an ability to inspire and motivate the entire school community. This past year, she spearheaded numerous impactful programs, including a Transition Day Parade to welcome sixth graders, a staff cafe, and a Spirit Shield Initiative to recognize faculty. Prior to coming to Stafford, she worked in both Prince William and Caroline Counties as a classroom mathematics teacher. She joined the Team Stafford as a math coach at Shirley High Middle School, where she served as five years before going to Stafford Middle. Ms. Ramey is a 2003 North Stafford alumni, received her undergraduate degree from Virginia Tech in '07, and her master's degree from the University of Mary Washington, congratulations, Ms. Ramey.
Thank you.
All right, our next introduction is Dr. Alicia Galloway, the principal, new principal at Wide Water Elementary School. Dr. Galloway will join the team at Wide Water Elementary School as the new principal there. She joins us from Spotsylvania County Schools, where she served as a reading specialist for six years and most recently as a, as assistant principal at the high school level for three years. Prior to joining Spotsylvania Schools, she taught third grade at Falmouth Elementary School. Dr. Galloway is a dedicated educator with 16 years of experience and a strong commitment to fostering academic excellence and student success. Through her work in developing new teachers, she was recognized as a Mentor Teacher of the Year in 2019. Dr. Galloway earned her bachelor's degree in sociology from Bowen College, where she was a Joshua Chamberlain Leadership Scholar. She earned her master's degree in education from Cambridge College and a doctorate in educational leadership and supervision from Wheldon University. Welcome back to Stafford, Dr. Galloway, and congratulations.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman Sigmund, Dr. Smith, and the school board members, thank you for welcoming me and allowing me to return to Stafford as the principal at Wide Water Elementary. I'm joined this evening by my children, who have been my motivation and really the heart of my professional journey. I'm also joined by some of the members from Wide Water, and so I'm so grateful to be here, thank you.
All right, one more principal to introduce this evening, Mr. Mark Hayden will join us as the new principal at Conway Elementary School. He joins us from Loudoun County Public Schools, where he served as an assistant principal for six years and most recently as a principal at the elementary level for five years. Under Mr. Hayden's leadership, he led a school that adopted and implemented the Spanish-English Dual Immersion Program. Mr. Hayden has a strong instructional background and enjoys working with students, parents, teachers, administrators, and community of business partners to support the success of the school community. Mr. Hayden earned his bachelor's degree in English from George Mason University, a master's degree in curriculum instruction, and a master's degree in educational leadership from George Mason. Welcome to Team Stafford, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you so much, Dr. Smith and school board members, it's a pleasure to be here in Stafford County Public Schools as the principal of Conway Elementary School. I hope I can do half a good a job as Mr. Raybolt, who's also here in the back. And I'm also joined here by my lovely wife, Kim Hayden. I hope I can make her proud.
Chair Sigmund, that concludes our administrative appointments.
Okay, our presentation this evening, the first one is our annual report and recommendations from the school board's Military Family Advisory Committee.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Smith and Stafford community. I'm Dr. Mathis, Chair of the Military Families Advisory Committee. This evening, we will share with you some of the accomplishments Stafford Schools has achieved with reaching out to military families. We'll provide you with an overview of the work we completed and recommendations regarding our 2024 purpose. We'll share information regarding the need for comprehensive communications with our families, a secondary issue we discovered during the first year in operations. Finally, we'll provide the community with our 2025 mission and where our progress stands today. The Military Families Advisory Committee began last year, and we are proud to say that the Stafford Schools is doing many things well. As you know, all of our schools are Purple Star certified, evidence of the division's cohesive support of military families, those active duty and in related services. We've seen our own student representative, Barrett Kindig, share his experience of, as a military family member, with students at Margaret Brent Elementary School. During his visit, Barrett shared his background as a military student addressing frequent moves. Barrett's visit was coordinated by our members, Isabel and Carrie, who began the Military Kids Club at Margaret Brent. The visit helped our elementary students relate to a peer who experienced shared challenges, more on how important this is a bit later in the presentation. We also established a social media page just a few months into our creation, and the page already has north of 130-plus members. The communication on the page has been helpful in providing incoming families and with resources, connection, and a sense of belonging. We hope to expand and do more with this resource in the coming year. Our mission in 2024 was to address the completion of the Impact Aid forms. This campaign provides free federal funding to school divisions based on their federal and military-connected families. We need to give a hearty thank you to Ms. Kimberly Washington, who heads the program of Stafford Schools. She was instrumental in helping us identify where the division stood, what the collection rate was, some of the challenges facing the division, and most importantly, how much funding is provided by completing this campaign annually. Not only is she a wealth of information, she was readily available and happy to work with our subcommittee regarding this task. Thank you, Ms. Washington, for your support and devotion to military families. Here are some of the challenges we faced, we identified and discussed. One of the issues was the cost of sending paper forms home, we were talking about $1,000 per 30,000 sheets. These forms may be misplaced or not given to parents, especially at the secondary levels. At all levels, students may turn in forms late as they are not checking backpacks at school and turning into, in the forms. Additionally, parents must fill out one form for every child at home. This can be tedious when there are multiple students in the household. I was reflecting on this point earlier tonight, I was braiding my daughter's hair for soccer, and I remember reaching down into that backpack, not knowing if it was a carrot stick or a Cheeto, and you find that crumbled piece of paper at the bottom clinging onto itself for dear life, needing an iron practically to see what it said. Anyway, it, it was as if Guardians of the Galaxy ride took place between recess and coming home with that piece of paper. So many of our federally connected families, especially in DC area, are wary of providing their information for fear that the data will, uh, will be shared with, for external purposes. One of the challenges we faced was trying to inform the community that the data collection is kept internally and not provided externally. While we identified this as a barrier, we were not able to craft a campaign around education and have opted to make this a priority goal for 2025. We discussed several recommendations and believe the best solution for gathering information is to integrate the survey into ParentView at the end of the first nine weeks. By implementing this in ParentView, not only can parent, parent, a parent complete the form once, it can be tied to all students in that parent's profile. Providing the form electronically reduces the cost for producing and distributing the form, and it reduces the burden on students to pass it from, pass the form from parents and then back to the teacher in that mess of a backpack. This also supports the school division's ParentView communication plan. As we transition to ParentView, the division should continue to offer paper and virtual forms as we are going all electronic, and that takes time to catch on. Further, by going electronic, to an electronic collection form, we're able to generate a QR code that can be placed in the community newsletter, on posters, in the school entrances, on our websites, and in other key community areas such as libraries and churches. Our advisory committee is leveraging existing technologies and business processes to develop solutions for some of these problems. As we began our work in 2024, we identified an important opportunity to improve our communication with military-connected families. By carefully examining our information sharing methods, we've developed a strategic approach to bridge existing communication gaps. The Military Family Resources section of the division website is a crucial resource, offering dedicated information and support for military families. This targeted platform speaks directly to the needs of our military-connected students and families, and we are working to promote this information with our local military bases, and the ask that they, and we ask that they incorporate it into their welcome aboard briefs for all families. On the social media front, we created a military families page and our following is growing. We recommend that we establish the account as an official communications channel, partnering with Sandra and Communications and Archive Social to ensure comprehensive monitoring and compliance. We're committed to meeting families where they are through multiple channels, responsive design, and a genuine understanding of their unique communication needs. By diversifying outreach and creating more intentional welcoming communication strategies, we're closing the information gap and building stronger connections with our military-connected families. Having evaluated our Impact Aid process and enhanced our communication efforts, we have now transitioned into Mission 2025, the Purple Star Mentorship Program. Our work this year will reflect a targeted approach to standardize how students transition into our school division. Our strategy involves creating a comprehensive support network through two key initiatives. First, we're developing a centralized resource hub, building a detailed directory that connects families with critical resources like tutor.com, comprehensive information about school activities, and targeted support services that address their unique needs. Second, we are working to create a, the framework for a program for principals to establish school and military ambassadors in each building. These student ambassadors are dedicated individuals that will serve as specialized point persons providing tailored peer support for military-connected families. This isn't just about meeting the Purple Star Schools' application requirements, it's about fundamentally changing how we support students. By creating standardized mentorship programs, we're not just improving a process, we're building a more inclusive, support, supportive education, educational environment that recognizes the individual needs of each student. We're already making progress in providing a resource list for family, military families. Our goal is to ensure the resources we recommend are strategically designed to create a comprehensive network for military-connected students and families. At the heart of this initiative is Penny Rowley, our military family liaison. She brings deep expertise and personal commitment to connecting families with the right resources and support systems. Military and family life counseling offers confidential- services, and create digital hub for military-connected students and their families. We should be sharing and directing families to these pages as soon as we know about their arrival in Stafford County. We would like to work with the local military bases to better learn about families who are relocating to Stafford and how to best support these students. Links for Kids, a United States Marine Corps program, brings specialized support. This program creates connection opportunities for children and military families, helping them build resilience and find community during transitions. Our committee is working with this program, using the expertise and program framework to develop that standardized welcome tailored specifically for Stafford Schools. The Interstate Impact is a crucial framework that ensures educational continuity for military children. It guarantees that students can transfer between schools smoothly, protecting their academic progress, and reducing the stress of frequently relocations. It is important for families to know that their child's IEP, gifted, or other academic needs will be met after enrollment here in Stafford. It also means that transitioning students are able to enroll and apply for secondary programs and specialized schools like CGS or ATI upon arrival. Ms. Osborne, other members of the MFLAC, thank you for supporting this committee. School Board members, Dr. Smith, Stafford community, thank you for your attention and time. And don't forget, tomorrow is Purple Up at the elementary schools, so support those military students. Thank you for your time.
Sure. We would love to recognize any of the committee members who are here. Do you have other committee members here? And Ms. Osborne?
Please stand up so you can be recognized.
I see you, Carrie, so stand up. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for the committee?
You know, when I was talking with Dr. Smith, I was really, really impressed to hear that Stafford was the first in the state of Virginia to have all of our schools participating in the Purple Star. Thank you. I always get the second word wrong, so Purple Star. So I really think now we're, I think, seventh in the state to have all of our schools participating, or there are seven others. But I've also always heard from, I used to work on Quantico, and I always heard how hard it was for families that were military-connected to live in Stafford because they did not have a base that was connecting them as in other places. And so I'm just really glad that we're taking this time to make better connections for our military families that don't necessarily have easy access to, I know Quantico's here, but not all of them are affiliated with Quantico, so I'm glad that we're having an opportunity to do something to be a little bit more connected with opportunities and our families. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
So, the Impact Aid survey is really important, and that is always a pain point to get people to want to do that. I think it is a fantastic idea to put that sucker on ParentView, and you kind of can't, you can't get past it, but if we're going to do that, and I don't know who makes that decision, probably the superintendent, my little two cents is we definitely have to explain that piece. Like, maybe there should be like, why are we forcing you to do this? And then you click on it, and it's, you know, just letting us, you know, reminding them that this is private. This is not going anywhere. We just need to verify this information so we can get the money that we need. But I think it's great. I absolutely love this committee. I am very sorry that I'm double-booked every Monday or the first Monday, so I do listen to you guys. And I, when the speaker was here, he kept saying "military-connected," but this is the Military Advisory. I just want to remind people that this committee is serving everyone who's military-connected. My husband is a vet, but when I moved to Stafford, he was military-connected. He's still deployed. He was still in Fallujah. He was still, I was still praying that he'd come home safe, but we weren't active duty. But this advisory committee would help people like that as well, right? You don't just have to be active duty to see benefits from this committee. So I just want to remind people that this is an inclusive committee, and it's for all of us who are serving. So, thank you.
Ms., Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so, two things about the Impact Aid form. We did have it digital for, I think, two years, and we found that we did not get as many responses. So, it was a problem. And then I don't know if we can, this is a question for staff, I don't know if we can actually put it in ParentView at the beginning of the year because of when they require it to be turned in. So it may be that that's too early in the process for them to accept it, so. But I think it's, anything we can do to, like, maybe we need to do both or something like that.
Dr. Smith?
Yeah, happy to respond. Thanks for those suggestions, and really appreciate our Military Family Advisory. I think they have great suggestions, and we all have the same goal, to get as much participation as possible. We want everybody to fill out that form, and so I think they've got some great suggestions, and we'll work with them to make sure we can optimize the response rates for those.
I also think if we did a YouTube video and dance, and like, I could write the rap or something, I mean, come on, people would, I guarantee you, people would share, and then they might consider filling it out. I'm just saying.
I just have one quick comment. Dr. Warner?
I just want to thank the Military Families Advisory Committee. This sort of came about, when I was talking to residents in my community, a lot of them had been transferred, but they didn't have the same resources that they have when they transferred to a military base. There's always a contact person, there's always a family that says, this is where you go to do this, and this is where the doc, and there's, and we didn't have that here. And I just thought, especially since we have such a high population of students whose families are deployed and connected to the military, that it was important. So I'm glad to see it's working. Thank you.
Am I, to understand that the two years it was digital, was that during COVID or was that before or after? I can't remember.
During and after.
Because I will say, as a parent with kids in school before, during, and after, the manpower we're putting in to making sure parents like me find it at the bottom of the backpack has greatly, you know, increased. It used to be like, don't forget that green form, and now it's, you're going to get five minutes of free play or free time, free choice, if you, your whole class gets it back in. They incentivize it for the kids. They call the parents, they remind the parents a lot if you need it, and you have children in multiple, in multiple schools. So, I do agree that I, is it one of the things now, there are some forms where it goes to either the youngest or to the oldest student, and you only have to fill it out once? Is this, can this be one of them? Or does it have to be? Great. So, can you get me mine now? But I am very grateful we have this committee, and thank you for being our liaisons, both staff and board, because, it's Sandra. Thank you, all of you, for the work that you do for us. We do have a second advisory committee presentation today, so we will have the annual report and recommendations for the School Board's Visual and Performing Arts Advisory Committee.
Good evening. My name is Christian Hernandez. I'm the Vice Chairman for the Visual and Performing Arts Advisory Committee. It's an honor for me to be here representing the community. I would like to say good evening to all of you, the board members and the superintendent, and also the community colleagues here. We have a very diverse group of people that have volunteered to serve this community in this advisory council, and we have a few of them here. I wonder if they could please stand up to say hi. We have been having quite a few meetings. We have been having a few meetings regarding the purpose of today's presentation, all right? What is the vision statement for the Visual and Performing Arts? It is basically to ensure that high-quality, equitable, and consistent arts education programs are provided and maintained for the students of the Stafford County Public Schools. So, as a county resident, and a father of a middle-schooler, it is very important for me to take ownership in the future of the education programs that are being offered to the kids. And my son happens to be a gifted musician, and that is the main incentive that drove me, a business guy, to be part of this committee. What can I do to positively contribute to the community and to this specific program? So, you have in your hands a big responsibility with the children of this county, and I will appreciate, and I appreciate the fact that we're having this conversation tonight, okay? So, the purpose of the Visual and Performing Arts Advisory Committee is to advise the School Board about community perspectives regarding Stafford Schools' visual and performing arts programs, including music, theater, arts, and visual arts, and curriculum supporting the fine arts in Stafford County's public school. As you all know, we live in a, we live in an environment that is always evolving, and right now, we have to capture what are the interests of this young generation that is being in our school system. And this program, the Visual Performing Arts, is a big deal. How many of you know of a kid that doesn't want to be a YouTuber? So, okay, so we have to be realistic. We have to move forward towards the future and take into account the perspective of the children and the technology and the changes that that brings in the geographical area, okay? So this program and the purpose of the committee is to be realistic. What is the up-tempo for the students, and what can we do for it? We have four strategic planned goals established. The first one is ensuring that meaningful post-secondary outcomes for every student prepare for life after graduation. We have a focus on high schoolers. Where are high schoolers that are gifted in Visual Performing Arts heading in the future after they graduate? We want to make sure that whatever program we put together, whatever recommendations, are value-added to the community and for the return investment of the county. We want to make sure that the county is investing in the students, and there is a return investment as a result of it. The second goal is to support high expectations for academic performance and expand opportunities for every student. How does this relate? When I was, when I was working on this, it's like, I am not a musician or an artist, but I do practice martial arts, so I'm kind of an artist. So, and I can tell you as a testimony, being a minority, you know, English is my second language, moving from Puerto Rico here by myself, it was the skill set that I learned when I was practicing martial art what kept me focused, what kept me determined to face any challenges that are ahead in the future. And there is no different, and I have learned this with my seventh grader, there's no difference between what I learned as a martial artist versus what he is applying in music and arts as it relates to his future, how he's being developed, not only in academic programs but also in his skill set. So we want to make sure that the program that the advisory committee is presenting to you is worth considering also in terms of making sure that our kids are focused-driven. They have a goal, they have a purpose, and something that they are willing to pursue, okay? The third goal is ensuring that every student, staff, and family member receive a safe, engaging, and welcoming environment in our schools. It is very important for the advisory committee that the school is, has equity. Everybody is the same, everybody will have the same opportunities based on a set of criteria, but we have to be fair and just. Lastly, support and invest in all staff. We want to make sure that it's fully integrated, that it's not only about the students, but it's also about the team that makes those students thrive. And we cannot take the kids to the next level without having, or without taking into account the support that the faculty members may need, or the resources that the school system may need, okay? So what, we have done a couple of activities for this, for year 2024, 2025. We have researched local, regional, and national secondary arts programs. We have identified potential pathways for High School 6. There was a big focus on High School 6 due to the fact that the board wants to focus on Visual and Performing Arts for that high school. We have discussed the strengths and challenges of audition-based admissions for High School 6, and I know that you may have a few questions about it. I would be more than glad to take that later on. We also have identified businesses and community partners to support students with mentorship, internship, and other career opportunities. We're looking at the long term, like, how can a high schooler who graduates from our system can thrive in this field? It's very competitive, but it's not impossible, and we can do it. Some of the tasks that the committee put together were identifying potential pathways for a specialty center in the Visual and Performing Arts while making sure that the current program of study is not sacrificed. So we want to make sure that there's a balance between the arts and also the academic performance. It goes hand-in-hand, it runs on parallel. We also identified partnerships that will support the specialty centers' pathways, and we described challenges and strengths for audition-based admissions. Essential arts education, each high school will continue to have the following sequences: band, chorus, orchestra, guitar, music theory, visual arts, digital arts, theater arts, drama, and technical theater. So, the program itself is very diverse, and it covers every aspect of the Visual and Performing Arts area. And we want to make sure that the structure that we're recommending you, it is driven on what the future entails to those kids taking part of any of those elements. What are the potential pathways for a specialty center in the Visual and Performing Arts? That's a question that we would like to talk about. So we took into account the recommendations provided by the students, and we have to listen to their feedback and take that into account as part of the recommendation that we're providing to you this evening. So the students recommended or show interest in digital arts, photography, music technology and production, performance specialization like band, orchestra, chorus, and piano, acting and custom design. So those were the prioritization level that the student survey reflected to us. The committee members took upon that feedback, and we discussed how can we funnel this down into more objective-driven areas. So we have decided to recommend media and visual arts, stage performance, musical performance, and music technology and production. Those are the four elements that we would like to present to you regarding potential pathways to consider as part of the program. Subcommittees were assigned to identify local partnerships for the pathway that could provide scholarships, grants, internships, mentoring, certification, career opportunities, equipment donations, and servicing kind. So we took our duty to do like a market research, to make sure that we account for the feedback from any interested provider, in this case, in this community, Stafford and Fredericksburg, and give ourselves an opportunity to listen to what the industry partners have to say about supporting the Stafford County Public School system. And I cannot tell you how happy it made me feel that there is a strong support from local businesses for this program. I'm a senior contracting officer for the Marine Corps. I'm a buyer over there, so I apply whatever I do there on my daily, daily, daily life, and I say, hey, let me get feedback from industry, and we did. And as part of the team, we put together a package for you. We want to present to you the recommendations that we got as part of that research. Media and visual arts is focused on photography, digital arts, fashion design, interior design, architecture, sculpture, and art foundation. So, for media and visual art partnerships, we found six businesses in the local area that are interested. And I cannot tell you how happy it made me feel that there is a strong support from local businesses for this program. I'm a, I'm a senior contracting officer for the Marine Corps, I'm a buyer over there. So I apply whatever I know, I do there on my daily, daily, daily life. And I say, hey, let me get feedback from industry, and we did. And as part of the team, we put together a package for you. We want to present to you the recommendations that we got as part of that, uh, research. Media and visual arts is focused on photography, digital arts, fashion design, interior, interior design, architecture, sculpture, and art foundation. So for media and visual art partnerships, we found six businesses in the local area that are interested in supporting the school board. And this information is very, very good to consider for any future planning. We, we want to make sure that we account for that. So we have Liberty Town, Town Arts Workshop in Fredericksburg, Kind Art Quarters Art in Fredericksburg, Pawn Shop Studio and Gallery in Fredericksburg, Artful Dimensions Gallery in Fredericksburg, Art First Gallery in Fredericksburg, Bat Rock Pottery Fredericksburg, Corky Clay Art Studio in Stafford, and Figure Eight Ink Studio in Fredericksburg. So for media and visual art partnerships, we have a robust community support from an industrial base to partner with the county and to consider then for any future opportunities. As for stage performance, it's broken down into dance, vocal acting, auto-presentation, and music, musical theater. Uh, we found, uh, a very good group of companies that are locally, that can support us. We have the Stafford Dance Company, Amy Clay USA, Barton and Williams School of Dance, the Dance Spot, the Kennedy Center. They even said that they are willing to support your school district with this type of stage performance partnership. University of Mary Washington Department of Theater and Dance, and the Riverside Center for the Performing Arts. So you can see, uh, we have some, some big guns over here in terms of, uh, experts in the field that can offer not only the support to the school, but also opportunities for those students to thrive in the visual and performing arts field. As for musical performance, we, uh, we discuss band, orchestra, chorus, composition, and ensemble. Uh, big, big responses from two local businesses, Bang Music and the Music Studio. And they even provided us like a, like a, like a proposal, like a, like a, like a white paper. And a lot of good feedback for you to consider, I would be more than glad to share that, uh, on a side, side note. But here's a summary. For Bang's Music, who they are, they are a local provider of music equipment and lessons. And they are experienced in providing the county with educational support, instrument and equipment supplies, and sound system installation. One of the areas that we're looking for is the technology aspect of visual and performing arts. Bang's Music is a locally-owned company that can support us to get there, to develop a program, to train kids to do that. And I can tell you, audio visuals is a big deal, you know, buy those services for the Marine Corps. If you go to the museum, you're going to see that. It is very competitive and it is very, uh, uh, it's a, it's a very interesting career field. And visual and performing arts at the school level can offer that to the students. As for teaching, they offer, uh, classes and they're experienced in providing voice string, woodwind, and percussion lessons, including piano. And many of their students are part of the county's music program. So they not only do this, they have a footprint already in the community and in our school system. They also offer mentoring, uh, helping students to prepare for first, first shared positions, application, and auditions for major universities. We want to make sure that our kids are allowed an opportunity to go to, you know, music programs at different, uh, college-level institutions. Bang's Music is willing to provide that type of training as well. As for, as for career development, they can help bridge the student to the working world and provide theater, music creation and performance, audio recording and digital production advisory consulting services. Musical performance partnership also, uh, the Music Studio provided a very robust, uh, response to our inquiries. They offer individual group, individual and group instructions like piano, violin, violin, viola, cello, bass, guitar, band instrument, percussion, and voice. They offer workshops, mini-camp, and master classes. They offer competitive and non-competitive opportunities, composition and music theory instruction. They offer internships, paid and non-paid, and for credit, and audition and portfolio preparation, and also international exchange and master classes. As you can see, the response, this is just an initial inquiry that we did for local businesses. They are providing and demonstrating a lot of interest in helping you taking this program to the next level. And when I interviewed the business owner, they said, it's all about the community, it's all about the children. We want to make sure that we, we're here for them because we deal with the kids that are part of the county school system, and they want to be part of it. Uh, the Music Studio also offers college and career readiness program for musicians. They offer guest speakers from universities, industry professionals, and composers. That's good if you want, if you want to create interest in your student base, bring somebody that is successful in the field and have them provide a mentoring session to the kids. College application coaching, audition tape recording, and scholarship guidance, they're very big on that. And they're even willing to do mock auditions with university faculty feedback. It's all about where kids are trying to head in the future. And something very interesting about the Music Studio is that they said, we're willing to offer a train-the-trainer faculty support initiative. And how does that work is they want to make sure that your faculty in visual and performing arts is up to speed on everything that relates to that. And they said, we can do workshop and seminars, continuous education and learning credit, which is a big deal, and industry trends and best practices. How, how can we keep the program current and value-added, they're willing to offer that. Uh, for music, technology, and production, we spoke about podcasts, music technology, and content creation. That's a big deal because everybody wants to be a YouTuber. I need to open my Ricky Ricardo channel, right? So content creation is a big deal, so we want to make sure that the kids, uh, are granted a chance to have their ideas organized and their thoughts being put together in something that they can benefit from the skill sets in the visual and performing arts. So this is an area that we were trying to, to hammer down as of what was in, what, what the, the top in, interest for kids. Uh, the, the Music Studio, they said that they can offer music technology, commercial music, and studio production training, content creation, like training in social media, networking, and self-promotion, headshot days, portfolio building, and branding workshops. And students produce digital content, including performance and interviews, like a podcast. We also received feedback from Bill, Bill Carroll's Foundation, that's another service provided in this area. And, and they are offering coaching in content creation, like filming, editing, graphics, lining, design, post-production. That's pretty cool. They, they can handle how, how the light system works. Camera crew expediences, so what happened behind the scenes, the, the crew that is there, they can offer, uh, support in that area for music videos, promotions, documentaries, and instructional films. Training for sound engineer, key grips, and foley artist, instruction for podcast creation. So foley artist, I don't know if you know about this, but for me, it was like, what, what's going on? So this is the people that go behind the scene, like, making the noises, like people eating whatever. So there's an art behind that, so they offer that, so it's pretty cool. Uh, what you see here is a chart that we put together as of what are the national averages for salaries in a career field related to visual and performing arts? So those are some of the examples of the top, uh, career field that we identified that we can use this as, as a basis to develop the program to make sure that whatever we are training our kids is worth for them considering in terms of investing and making a living out of it. So those are some of the national average salaries, and the sources are on the corner. Uh, just worth of thought, like, we want to make sure that it is meaningful for the program. So next is what are the challenges and strengths of the audition-based, uh, admissions? Challenges, it limits on resources and time, makes students appear less qualified or interested in the arts than those who can take art classes to prepare. So basically, somebody that is take, that is taking classes in the privately may do better than some kids that are not, cannot afford that opportunity, okay? The audition process shows how disproportionate access to resources can affect admission. Not everybody is blessed to be able to take classes or to develop, uh, a gift more than others. That doesn't mean that the other kids cannot be part of it. Costly classes and private lessons to prepare students, lack of access to expediences attending museums, galleries, and professional live performances, less advantage students may have to work after school. Okay, so some of, those are some of the main challenges that we identified. Now, as for the strengths in the audition-based admission, so it's all about how do you see this program going in the future? And how do we benchmark the program against other successful programs in the state? And I want, I want to keep that in mind because it's all about where are we heading, what is the vision? So the strengths are, it will ensure that most dedicated students are admitted to the specialty center. This is mainly for High School Six because it's going to be a specialized high school in visual and performing arts. So we make sure that under an audition-based, uh, system, we, we give those dedicated students, uh, an opportunity to demonstrate their skills. It could sustain students' participation and the specialty center's longevity. You're investing in a brand-new school, there's going to be a state-of-the-art and an example for the, for the state. How are we going to do it? If the program is successful, it's because how it's being structured and the, the, the results are going to be spoken by the performance of the students, right? So it's all about the students. Preparation can be offered to middle-school students to support equity. And some of the small, the businesses that, that we interviewed, they said that they're willing to even engage at the middle-school level to prep those kids for the audition-based system if that happens. And it can help position the specialty centers as the destination for serious art students in the region. Alright, so where is this coming from? We want to keep Stafford at par or above par with regional public schools who have audition-based programs. Who are those? Duke Ellington School of the Arts in Washington DC, Colgan Senior High School Centers for Fine Arts and Performing Arts in Prince William County, Center for the Arts in Henrico County, Visual and Performing Arts Academy at Salim High School in Virginia Beach, and Kings Fork High School Governor's School for the Arts in Suffolk County. So those entities have programs that are audition-based. So if high school says it's going to be a specialty, uh, school, we have to consider benchmarking what other schools are doing as of what can work for our system, okay? In summary, the Visual and Performing Arts Advisory Committee recommends the following pathways that can, can be supported by local partnership: media and visual arts, stage performance, musical performance, music technology and production. And we recommend that admission should be based on a mix or a hybrid of auditions and secondary offering applications. We want you to take that into account. And we're looking forward to strategize and support outreach effort to promote the specialty center and to formalize partnership with local entities that want to support and be part of the change that we want to make for this county. That's all, do I have any questions for me?
I just wanted to thank you. Um, the Visual and Performing Arts Committee has been the committee I'm supposed to be working with, but our schedule lately has prevented me from attending, uh, your meetings. But I do, I'm on the email list, and I've been getting the minutes and seeing the conversations and the amount of legwork and groundwork this committee has volunteers, reminder for the public. All volunteers have been doing to help us make these connections for, um, one, High School Six, but two, as you mentioned, our middle schools and community as a whole has been outstanding. Um, and just for me to see the volume of, uh, community connections, companies, organizations that are willing to work with us just tells me how great that these people have been advocating on our behalf and explaining what our vision is here in the county uh, for our students at the secondary level. So I'm just so, so grateful for what you do. And like you, I have musical kids that are, and I am not a musical or artistic person, so I, you know, I totally get where you're coming from, and I'm, I'm grateful that you took this, took this on, on behalf of all of our kids, uh, despite it being not, you know, necessarily an area that you feel you excel, um, personally or understand as well as your kid does. If anybody else had any questions?
No, I was just going to make the same comment. I think people don't realize the key word here is that you guys are volunteering to do this for us, you know, as a board to get together and discuss opportunities for the kid, kids. And the amount of work that went into this, this is your own time. And for me, there, you know, there's a gratitude there because it is so important. I mean, I'm a little bit more attached to High School Six, I guess, than most, but it being in Hartwood. But I feel like, you know, you can't, you can't duplicate the work that you guys have done and the connections that you made. And so, I'm, I'm in, I'm sure I speak for everyone, but that, an eternal sense of gratitude. This was more information than I think we could have ever hoped to be presented, and I do hope that we will get that. Uh, I mean, I know I'll carry it forward, and I do happen to have a special place in my heart for Bill Carroll, so I'm going to get you that invite, I swear. But anyway, so thank you so much for that.
Ms. Healy?
This is so much information, and it's, the timing is perfect because we have another year-plus before we open the school. But a year from now, less than a year from now, people will be, you know, students and their, their families will be applying for the specialty center. So this is, this is eye-opening. Um, I'm not a performing arts person, I have no qualities in that regard. I, I can enjoy it, but that's, that's about it. But the, um, I'd like to go to the, you know, the performances. But the, the fact that you have widened the scope here and, and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's the behind the scenes as well as, you know, in, in, in the front. But the, the, um, the audition part of it, I think, is something for us to really think about because that's going to be entirely different from applying for any of our other specialty centers. So this is, this is a great starting place, you know, for us to, you know, branch out from. And, and it's, the work your committee has done is just amazing. And if you know anyone in the Rock Hill District that wants to be on the committee, let me know. Because I, I had someone that had to, um, you know, uh, leave the committee for, because of, you know, personal reasons. But seriously, if there's anyone from Rock Hill that's, that's interested, we've got some vacancies there, so thank you.
This is a great opportunity, and I'm, thank you for the feedback. And I'm looking forward to representing the community and my colleagues from the committee in providing you the best that we can to take this to the next level, so.
Thank you. I'm, I'm really surprised the number of businesses locally that are interested in supporting the school. And I'm really glad that you're, you're stressing the fact that it's not always front-of-the-house and audition, that there's a lot of opportunities in production and, and other things that, that are equally rewarding for many people. I have a friend whose son is a production manager, and I have another friend whose son is an actor, so.
Ms. Guy?
Yeah, I love this committee. I used to be the liaison for it until we, we switched. I forgot to hit the button, apologies. Um, one of the things that, you know, it's probably not the top fifteen, but I just want the parents and, and for the community just to appreciate how important the arts are. My son's first job out of college was at NASA, he worked on the Artemis, but he majored in music. Until he, he switched, but like, he got, you know, his, his, he did, he did switch, but he still, but he minored. Then he minored in music and he majored in physics, but, um, his, his scholarship was in music, right? Full ride from music, that's how important it is, and that's what NASA was looking for. First thing they did when they hired him was they gave him a number for an apartment. And then they said, now which, do you want to be in band or orchestra? Because if you're coming to NASA, you gotta play music.
Yeah.
Because that's how important it is.
Yes.
So, um, I just want us to expand our thoughts when we talk to our children about, you know, oh, mom, I'm really into music, okay? And we try to push them somewhere else. Sometimes fostering that creativity could actually get them to the, the somewhere else that we were, you know, considering for them that they didn't know they wanted. And the only other thing I do agree with you about, um, the admissions process, you know, at first, when I was just reading it, I was like, ooh, you know, making people, um, audition can be hard because personally, in my personal opinion, I'm not speaking for the board, but I don't feel like we have enough meat in our, um, performing arts programs in the middle schools for the students to... A kid like mine who had private tutor, you know, lessons for years in music is going to make it than a kid like me when I was in school who was very into music, but my parents didn't have that kind of money. But when you said in your speech, though, you said a hybrid, and I love that. If we did an application and then they also audition, but the audition would be for informational purposes so that we would understand this, you know, what this child could do as opposed to like just seeing it on, in writing? Do you know what I'm saying? I like something like that, but I, the auditions part just makes me uncomfortable. But, you know, we can definitely have time to talk about it and to work through it. But I think- But I think this is fantastic. I cannot wait for High School Six.
And the audition, the audition conversation was very interesting. So something to consider is the fact that we have such a matter of experts in the community that are willing to guide us as of how to make it robust enough, but also very fair and transparent. It's all about fairness and transparency and to make sure that we have the criteria that doesn't become like a teacher's pet type of deal, or the son off or the daughter off. So we do have, and we look forward to support you in putting together a plan for consideration as of how to make it happen, yeah?
And I just wanted to kind of remind the board that we already know, we already have a process in the county where we do recognize gifted art. You know, we have gifted, students are identified for gifted in, you know, English or language arts, gifted in math, but we also have gifted art, and we have a gifted art instructor. So we do have a mechanism by which we are encouraging enthusiastic artists to become better, but also to work with artists that their skill has developed beyond what you would expect for someone of their age in a way, and I, I'm confident that we can figure out how to manifest that into strands or pathways or whatever we're going to call them in High School Six so that we can, you know, kind of instill the love and talent our students have in arts moving forward. So again, I'm overwhelmed by the amount of work you've done, and I'm very, very excited to move forward.
Great team. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
I would like, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda and have the superintendent's 100-day, what is it, entry plan be done in what number? In, what is that number? Number 11.01.
Second. Dr. Smith, you've indicated that you're okay with this and might actually prefer it.
I am. I, as much as I would love everyone to hear my entry plan report, I hope they'll watch it online afterwards, but I do know we have a lot of folks here waiting tonight for special awards and for the public hearing and public comments, so happy to move later in the agenda.
Okay. Is there any additional questions or comments on this agenda change? Okay, if you would, please cast your votes. That motion passes seven to zero. So we will skip 5.03. We'll move into our awards and recognitions.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Smith. This evening, we'll recognize the dedication of some of our, some of our dedicated staff who epitomize all of our mission, vision, and values. Well, Stafford Middle School's nurse, Ms. Lee Moore, please join us at the podium. Tonight, we're proud to take a moment to recognize the vital role that school nurses play in the lives of our students and school communities. For more than 120 years, school nurses have been at the heart of student wellness, supporting not just physical health, but mental and emotional well-being too. Today's students face more complex health challenges than ever before, and nurses like Ms. Moore are on the front lines, providing expert care, promoting wellness, and ensuring that students are healthy, safe, and ready to learn. Nurse Moore, like so many across our division, serves as a trusted liaison, connecting families, schools, and healthcare providers. She brings compassion, professionalism, and a deep understanding of the connection between health and academic success. Whether supporting students through emergencies, navigating health plans, or being a calming presence during a tough day, her impact is both far-reaching and deeply personal. The Stafford County School Board is grateful for your dedication and the care of all of our school nurses provide every day. It's an honor to officially recognize May 7, 2025, as School Nurse Day across our division. Thank you for all you do and those of all of our school nurses. Will Colonel Colgate, the commander of Marine Corps Base Quantico, please join us at the podium? Tonight, it is our privilege to recognize and honor a very special group within our school community, our military-connected students and their families. Stafford County is proud to be home to many children whose parents serve in the military, especially those stationed at Marine Corps Base Quantico and throughout the national capital region. Nearly 3,000 students, 10% of our student body, identify as military-connected. These students demonstrate resilience, strength, and a level of adaptability well beyond their years, often navigating school transitions, deployment, and the unique challenges that come with military life. April is recognized by the Virginia Department of Education as the month of the military child, a time to pay tribute to the courage and sacrifice of both our service members and their children. Military children contribute so much to our schools and communities, even as they face prolonged separations from loved ones. They bring with them a deep sense of service, responsibility, and empathy that enriches our classrooms every day. With support from school liaison officers, military leaders, educations, and organizations, Stafford Schools remains committed to providing the services and understanding these students need to thrive. On behalf of the Stafford County School Board, we are honored to officially proclaim April 2025 as the month of the military child in Stafford, Stafford Schools. Colonel Colgate, thank you, and thank you for the privilege of representing your children. Will Ferry Farms' Taylor Murray and Margaret Brent's Rachel Watts, please join us at the podium? This evening, we're honored to recognize all of our educators who embody what it means to create inclusive, supportive environments for all learners. As we observe Autism Acceptance Month this April, we pause to recognize the importance of understanding, inclusion, and acceptance for individuals on the autism spectrum. Autism is a developmental disorder that affects how people experience the world, impacting learning, communication, behavior, and social interaction. It occurs across all racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic groups, and today affects as many as 1 in 36 individuals. While there is no known cure, early intervention and continued support can make a powerful difference in the lives of those affected by autism. On behalf of the School Board of Stafford County, we proudly proclaim April 2025 as Autism Acceptance Month in our schools. Thank you to all of our special education staff for the heart and professionalism you bring to this important work. Will school librarians Jessica Remley, Dee Ryan, and Ashley Welch, please join us at the podium? We're excited to recognize champions of literacy, learning, and student success as we celebrate School Library Month this April. School libraries are more than just shelves of books. They are hubs of discovery, creativity, and lifelong learning. Our school librarians play a critical role in helping students and staff become effective users of information. They teach research skills, foster a love for reading, and curate resources that support both academic achievement and personal growth. All of our school librarians help our students grow not just as readers, but as thinkers, creators, and informed citizens. On behalf of the Stafford County School Board, we are proud to proclaim April 2025 as School Library Month and to thank all our librarians for the vital role they play in every student's educational journey. Will the school division's workforce readiness coordinators, Farida Crowley and Scott Flath, please join us at the podium? Tonight, we recognize two individuals who are helping to shape the future of our students as we celebrate Workforce Readiness Month in Stafford County Public Schools. Preparing students for life beyond high school means more than just academic success. It means equipping them with the skills, experience, and confidence they need to thrive in college, career, military, beyond. The demand for highly skilled jobs is growing across Virginia, and our students are rising to meet that challenge thanks to the guidance and opportunities created by our workforce readiness team. Farida and Scott have been instrumental in building strong partnerships with local businesses, industries, and community colleges. They help bridge the gap between classroom learning and real-world experience, ensuring our students are ready to succeed, whether they're pursuing higher education, entering the workforce, or enlisting in the military. On behalf of the Stafford County School Board, we are proud to proclaim April 2025 as Workforce Readiness Month and April 16 as Workforce Readiness Day in honor of the critical work being done to prepare our students for their future. Thank you, Scott and Farida, for your vision, your leadership, and your dedication to the success of every student. Will Dennis Lacona and Jasmine Hoverson of the Mount Church, please join us at the podium? We're pleased to recognize two remarkable community partners as we celebrate Community Appreciation Month in Stafford County Public Schools. Strong schools are built on strong partnerships, and throughout the year, our success is made possible by the generosity, dedication, and support of the people and organizations around us. From local businesses and agencies to faith institutions and volunteers, our community plays a vital role in lifting up our students, staff, and families. The Mount Church has consistently stepped up as a true partner in this work, offering time, resources, space, and encouragement that make a real difference in the lives of our students. Whether it's through mentorship, supportive school events, or simply showing up when we need it most, Denise, Dennis, and Jasmine represent the spirit of service and collaboration that strengthens Stafford Schools. On behalf of the Stafford County School Board, it is our honor to formally proclaim April 2025 as Community Appreciation Month and to thank you, Dennis and Jasmine, for your commitment to our schools and the community we serve. Your impact is felt far beyond the classroom, and we are truly grateful. We conclude our awards and recognitions this evening by recognizing the award-winning Stafford High School Theater Group and their fearless leaders, Mr. Michael Dodario and Ms. Natalie Mullenoffe. The group's 2024-2025 Festival One Act Play continued to garner several awards this year, showcasing the talents of our students and their mentors. Recently, the team earned notable awards at the Virginia Theater Association High School Theater Festival, VHSL Theater Festivals, and the Southeastern Theater Conference. Students, as you hear your name read, please come forward and remain in the front. Josephine Martinez earned VTA Best Actor, VHSL 6B3 Outstanding Actor, VHSL 6B Outstanding Actor, VHSL Class VI State Outstanding Actor, and SETC All-Star Cast. Sophie Statler earned VTA All-Star Cast, VHSL 6B3 Outstanding Actor, VHSL 6B Outstanding Actor, and VHSL Class VI State Outstanding Actor and SETC All-Star Cast. Emily Harrod earned VTA All-State Cast and SETC All-Star Cast. And now, will all members of the group please join us at the podium as you hear your name read? Congratulations to the understudies, Sophia Arvello, Sadie Barbieri, and Laura Huber. The talented stage crew consisted of Evan Barley, Kyle Bierling, Angel Correas, Connor Crisp, Nathan Urie, Essence Kukendall, Aiden Langley, Lyra Lewis, Maddox Newman, Melissa Nguyen, Nadia Scarlett, Jackson Scheneman, and Charlie Turner. And let us not forget their devoted advisors, Mr. Michael Dodario and Ms. Natalie Murphley. Collectively, the passion and talent of this group also garnered first-place champion, a Technical Emerit Award, and Best Set Design at VTA; second-place runner-up at the VHSL 6B3 Sectional Theater Festival; first-place champion at the VHSL 6B Regional Theater Festival; and first-place champion at VHSL Class VI State Theater Festival. This season marks the Stafford High School Theater Group's fifth VTA State Championship and seventh VHSL State Championship. Congratulations, Mr. Dodario and the theater team, on your cumulative successes. You truly reflect the very best of Stafford Schools.
Ms. Irish, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, members of the board, administrators, and community members. This month has been relatively quiet for us in terms of new initiatives, but Lily and I have remained focused on student engagement and communication and furthering the things we've already started. Our student feedback form is ready to go, and we're currently working on a way to share it so that it's easy to access and actually used by students. We're excited to start collecting input and using it to guide our work moving forward. Our tutoring and civic engagement efforts have also continued to improve steadily. We've been hearing from students that they're interested in more creative opportunities to wrap up the school year. We will be attending the Arts Festival this weekend, not only to support our school's creative community, but to connect with students in a more casual setting and hear what's on their minds. We're excited to launch a new student-led Instagram series called Tiny Talks, "Sundays at the Arts Festival." Those little mini-mic interviews will give students a chance to share their thoughts in a fun, accessible way, and we're already planning more follow-up videos. As always, we're grateful for the opportunity to represent the student body and look forward to staying connected in these final months. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is the Public Hearing on Elementary School Redistricting. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker, and speakers shall identify themselves by name. Citizen comments which are profane, abusive, or threaten imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order. Ms. Hall, could you read our first few speakers?
Yes, ma'am. The first speakers will be Rebecca Thompson, Bert Jacoby, and Jason Pope.
Good evening, Dr. Smith and school board members. My name is Dr. Bert Jacoby. My wife and I have four children between the ages of five and 11, and we live on Ingleside Drive in Falmouth, which is in Planning Unit 157. All five proposed rezoning scenarios move my small neighborhood from Conway Elementary School to Ferry Farm. With 18 elementary students this year, Stafford estimates that to drop to 10 to 15 students between 2026 and 2030. If our neighborhood is rezoned, the impact on Conway and Ferry Farm will be less than that. As four students are children of Conway employees, three would be approved as transfers and exempt, and one is a child of a Rocky Run employee. So the effort to move students would only be moving half of that, several of whom are siblings of other students. In the orange scenario, Planning Unit 157 borders Planning Unit 140, which will be zoned to Conway. The orange scenario also has the least number of students enrolled at Conway and is favored by Ferry Farm families. Adding our neighborhood, Planning Unit 157, would have an insignificant impact on the population and demographics of Conway for the coming years, but but have an extremely significant impact on the lives of our children. In the orange scenario, a Conway bus will already come close to the intersections of Route 117 and Butler Road to pick up students in Planning Unit 140. Extending the bus ride to our neighborhood will only add one to two miles of travel for those students, whereas sending a bus to Ferry Farm would add four to five miles to the current ride of Ferry Farm students currently living in Chatham Heights. Moving Planning Unit 157 to Ferry Farm further alienates us from our current school feeder pattern of Conway to Drew to High School 6. Every Ferry Farm student goes to Dixon-Smith, whereas we are zoned to go to Drew. Sending two to three students a year from an elementary school to a middle school is unfair during an already difficult transition to middle school. None of their elementary school classmates would join them when they get to High School 6. I ask on the behalf of the admittedly few families in my neighborhood to please move Planning Unit 157 back to Conway Elementary School in a modified orange scenario to keep our families together. In my lifetime living on Ingleside Drive, I've seen this neighborhood switch from Falmouth to Rocky Run to Ferry Farm to Conway, and additional attempts in previous years to move it. Our student population rarely changes, yet we are consistently identified as options for rezoning. I ask that you please leave us where we are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Jason Pope. I live right down the road from Dr. Jacoby, actually, and so I won't endure you to listen to the same spiel over again. I just urge the Board to consider realigning the feeder school pattern so that they facilitate student well-being and success. As Dr. Jacoby had mentioned, our students are proposed to go to Ferry Farm Elementary School, and then possibly to Drew, although we were informed by staff at one of the town halls that maybe they would go to Gale, which, you know, going from Ferry Farm to Gale doesn't really make a whole lot of sense unless you consider the fact that our neighborhood is right in the middle of the county. But from a feeder pattern standpoint, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to us, so we just urge you to consider those feeder patterns running K through 12. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Ms. Thompson here, Rebecca Thompson? All right, then, Ms. Majority Chair, the next speakers will be John Rideout, Kathy Rivas, and Bart Randall.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all tonight. My name is John Rideout, and I am currently a resident in the far southeastern area of the county in the George Washington District. I have a first grader that will be impacted by the redistricting here, and I'm here to speak to say no to options red and options yellow. Again, no to red, no to yellow. For my family, the closest school to us in the George Washington District is Ferry Farm. Scenarios that would force the further southeast areas of the county over to Grefton Village would have some of the largest impacts for students who are already traveling the furthest through rural roads. I would either have the option of driving around Ferry Farm to access that school, or to connect, crossing Route 3 to Hollywood Farm Road to Kason Road, then over to White Oak. Then I'll hop on New Church Road to Brook Road, and then onto Deacon Road. That would be my most direct path on some very rural roads. And God bless the school bus drivers that have to do that every single day. And that comes from somebody who's a regional transportation planner for the area. It's a tough job. The changes to the districts won't just hurt. Getting our kids to and from school has impacts before and after school. Things like STEM night, run club, trunk-or-treat, spirit night at Tilly's would actually become more difficult as well. Even my ability to volunteer at the YMCA for basketball or coach Stafford Soccer would be impacted because those extra 10 minutes of transport actually do matter during peak rush hour. I can only support options orange, green, and lime that keep my family in the Ferry Farm School District. I would like to have other schools that would be closer, but that's just where I live, so I take what I can get at the best of times. Finally, I want to express my thanks for the Stafford preparing the material. I work in supporting local government, including Stafford County, and I'm aware of the time and expertise coming up with those multiple scenarios takes. And I want to know that balancing a lot of needs and demands are important, and I thank you all for your time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for all your hard work. For me personally, I live in Repahannick Lanning, and none of these options are in my desire option. I am a Conway parent. I'm a PTA member there. The teachers there, they're wonderful. The community there is wonderful, but my child in any of these scenarios does not go to Conway. I really urge that Repahannick Lanning stays with Conway, but I see that there's no way of going to that route. So my only way is to appeal to you guys to have rising fourth and fifth graders stay at their current schools. They have done more than 85% of their schooling in their current schooling, so they should be allowed to stay in their current district. I am going, my division is going in between, one of the scenarios, I believe, line, scenario mine. My area, which is Repahannick Lanning, is also composed by other members in that community, townhouses, other townhouses, other small, single homes. But that section is being divided into Rock Hill Run and Ferry Farm. That area should at least stay together and not be divided into two districts. Also letting you guys note that going to Rock Hill District is going towards that little jam where 395 sits. That is a traffic jam in the mornings, in the afternoon. My child does not take a bus. I usually drive her, or her grandmother takes her. So that area in itself makes it already a headache. But I not only want to advocate for my child, but also I've heard in the past meetings of other families that have been asked to move twice within less than six years. That's really unfair, mainly because you guys proposed that you were not going to change them within the next six years. And asking those families to get changed again within 10 years puts a burden to that family and also the students. You also have to take in consideration the emotional effect that the students will go through asking them once again to relocate just because, and I understand you guys have a tough job to do, but it's just hard, not only for parents but students as well. It will impact them socially and economic, sorry, and academic as well. Having that feeling of leaving their child friend to go to this new school and then asking them again to leave those child friends for the second time, less than three years. It's not only unfair, but it also impacts their academics, making them... And then the only thing I would want to ask is just have us stay with our current district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the School Board, Dr. Smith. I'm Bart Randall. I'm in the Garrisonville District, and I'm here to talk about your redistricting. I don't have a lot of my own personal impact into this, but I have talked to many of my friends from church whose children are very much affected or could be affected by this. And I just wanted to reiterate from them to you that they like Hampton Oaks Elementary School, and they would like to stay right there. I do notice that in the green, that you have several that don't touch Hampton Oaks, and I think that's the best for them. They were talking, some of the initial ones were talking about splitting it down Mine Road and all of those things, and so they showed some concern to me when they found that out. And so I wanted to make sure that I came here and gave you their perspective, that they are very interested in staying together. I also am glad to hear that, or glad to see that, we are fixing the Park Ridge redistricting that was done. I'm not sure of the right word to use from 2020 when it happened, when we took those who were literally next door to Park Ridge, who walked to Park Ridge, and we moved them four miles away, five miles away. And so now, we have a chance to fix that. It looks like it was fixed. Note, some are not interested in going back to Park Ridge. They like having to go four miles because they really like the school, and sometimes the grass is greener. But for the most part, they like the fact that they can now walk back to their school. I do want to make sure that I mention that this is not an easy process. When I went to the redistricting town hall, it is amazing how Lionel White does it. I'm not sure. I don't know if he's here or not, but he's a magician with his numbers. Oh, there he is. There he is. I'll lay him back. He knows. I tell him all the time. So he's well aware of my accolades for him. But I do want to appreciate the work that he did for this. And I do want to make note just one more thing, that although we do have two elementary schools, let's not forget that in 2030, I'm back to 11 of my schools, 11 of my 19 schools back over 90%, and that we can't forget the fact that we are still growing and that we still need some help, that we have the schools we need to get us good today, but that as we move forward into the county, that we will need to continue to help our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will close our public hearing on elementary school redistricting and move into our citizen comments. I'm going to read it again. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker. Each speaker shall identify themselves by name. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order. Ms. Hall?
Excuse me. The first four speakers are going to be Lindsay Lee, Rebecca Thompson, Madila Pereira, and Edward Backich.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Lee, and I'm a junior at Colonial Forge High School. I'm here tonight on behalf of my fellow classmates and Colonial Forge students to bring your attention to the SEPS Personal Computer Policy. Adopted earlier this school year, the off-and-away personal device policy constitutes that personal and electronic communication devices, including computing devices, personal laptops, cellular phones, et cetera, are prohibited during the school day. This policy has been helpful, especially the cell phone distractions. But however, I believe that limiting the usage of personal computers is a huge limitation to the educational environment. The school-issued Chromebooks, which many of us have had since middle school quarantine, are inefficient. There's discernible performance gap between them and, say, my MacBook, for example. I witness many broken Chromebooks in class. They also don't facilitate multitasking, have slow processing speed, and incredible latency. When I type in my Google Docs, it takes seconds and even minutes before my sentences are caught up to speed. I'm a junior in the Commonwealth Governor's School Program this year. My classmates and I are tasked with video editing projects requiring presentation softwares, countless essays, timed writes, and even today I had three timed quizzes. The key here is time. When I get one minute per question on tests, every second counts. For students who are part-time athletes, musicians, volunteers, employees, time is scarce. Most of us are taking five to eight AP classes this year alone, and the coursework is not only intensive but digital. With our overwhelming amount of homework, it is important that we maximize our time during the school day, and our personal computers allow us to complete homework in a fraction of the time. Even during free class time or lunch, many of us day trade, run businesses and nonprofits, code. Some of us have a three-page to-do list on Notion, or are probably cramming in an essay that's due next class. Because we cannot do these tasks on a Chromebook efficiently, many of our parents buy us technology with their hard-earned money. And I believe that education is a student's utmost priority, and it is to me. And I believe that this is our right as students. To deny us this right is to deny us the right to learn. And at our school, I know that admin is enforcing that if we use our personal computers, that we will get written up. Does it make sense to get a referral for using our MacBook for school-related things or studying? They don't explain to us why we can't use our computers. They simply say that we can't. The SEPS website shares that this policy is to minimize distractions, improve engagement, and foster a better learning environment. However, limiting personal computers does the opposite, in my opinion. Our teachers sympathize with us, and many students and parents are in agreement. Learning matters to us. So I wanted to make this issue known, and I wanted to ask of you to please support SEPS students by allowing us to use personal computers in school, or perhaps increase funding so that we're able to replace our outdated Chromebooks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Thompson or Pereira? All right. Edward Backich?
My name is Chaplain Lieutenant Colonel Edward R. Bassidge, US Army Retired. I'm a 33-year veteran. I've served all over the world in multiple capacities, including four combat tours in the Middle East. I've served as an MP, infantryman, infantry drill sergeant, airborne assignments, including the 82nd Airborne and Alaska Airborne. I took an oath to the Constitution, and I took it seriously. I've also taught on a college level, a high school level, JROTC, and as a substitute teacher right here in the Fredericksburg School System. In my time as a teacher, I saw many things, not the least of which was an unvarnished Marxist Antichrist, sordid, sexualized political agenda being ramrodded down children's throats under the guise of inclusivity, diversity, and education. And here we are again, with you so-called educators spouting slogans like diversity is our strength. Your so-called diversity is nothing more than balkanization. Balkanization is defined as a process intended to divide a region or body into smaller mutually hostile groups. You chant mantras like diversity is our strength because you're biblically, historically, and constitutionally illiterate. You are the blind leading the blind. A house divided against itself cannot stand. Internal balkanization leads directly to the collapse of any house, even an already chaotic one like that which you facilitate. If you travel the world and see with your own eyes exactly what Third World barbarian regimes do to their own people, you might not cavalierly embrace forced balkanization, and maybe you might ponder that founding premise that made America free, e pluribus unum, out of many one, instead of turning it upside down and backwards. Unity is our strength. Unity is our strength. Our founders knew it, our grandparents knew it, and you know it. And now you want tens of millions of taxpayer dollars to greedily undermine it, to divide our children, to further facilitate an unvetted illegal alien invasion, further destroying the sanctity of the so-called learning environment, literally making it dangerous to attend public schools, further turning the learning environment into a prison-like atmosphere with divided gangs, many of whom don't speak English or care to, will not assimilate, and demand our children's subjugation to their demonic gods. I want to know if Christians are allotted equal prayer time with the Muslims. And I want to know, how much of my money do you think you own for these destructive purposes, and why?
Thank you.
Sorry. The next four speakers will be Shamgar Connors, Selena Erziki, Christine Rivera, and Stephanie Johnson.
Hey, buddy. Shamgar Connors, Hartwood District, but my pronouns are Africa Bambata, and I'm a renegade of funk. Now recently, y'all remember, my First Amendment rights were infringed upon and me illegally interrupted for trying to talk about the budget with concerns about DEI and diversity. I spoke to Alyssa Hauss, and she told me that Stafford, even though we supposedly have a conservative majority...
We speak to the entire Board. We don't call out specific Board members.
My representative said that even though we have a conservative majority in the School Board, we still need to cater to liberals on the School Board and work with them, and let them get their way. Even though when liberals get in power, they never work with conservatives. Very cool! Very cool. And now, so anyway, I decided that I would become a liberal expert in diversity. I emulated my role models, Nancy Pelosi and Chuck Schumer when they wore the kente cloth, and knelt for George Floyd in Capitol Hill. Sure, the toxicology report came out and George Floyd, you know, passed away from conventional overdose, but that doesn't matter. Diversity, okay? I also watched the playthrough of Assassin's Creed: Shadows, where the Savior of feudal Japan is a black samurai. Ubisoft says it's historically accurate. I also watched the playthrough of Dragon Age: The Veil Guard, where you force the play as a non-binary character. So, I'm all about diversity. I'm so adamant about forced diversity that I've already petitioned Hollywood to remake Die Hard with Bruce Willis into a new movie called DEI Hard. Netflix adaptation coming soon. Now, it's time to admit the truth about DEI and diversity in Stafford schools. If skin color offers no advantage or disadvantages, then increased diversity can't possibly make a group stronger or better. Celebrating differences is precisely what racial supremacists do. Cooperation and unity isn't built on celebrating differences, it's built on shared values and interests. Now, there's some forms of diversity we don't accept or like, like Vanilla Ice and Eminem in the rap game, or Christopher Columbus bringing much-needed diversity to Native Americans that were enslaving and genociding other practicing human sacrifice cannibalism. Okay, all this diversity goes against our agenda, makes me so mad. That's why I loved it last year when our school board member said, "Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day." Now, it's time to admit why we love the DEI and illegal aliens so much. Did the math. It's because each student gets $13,111 in funding. There's 4,841 English language learners in Stafford. That's $64 million, and that's why the school board says we have to follow the state regulations and hire 36 teachers for them, even though we ignore all the other state regulations, it's so we can get all the funding. Now, 36 new teachers is probably about $1, $2 million. That leaves us with $63 million to play with. So, to solve our biggest issue, I did you all a favor. I suggest we tell every other county to ship all their illegal aliens right to us. We can become a sanctuary school and rake in the cash. Sure, other schools, the schools might get overcrowded, but who cares? I mean, there already aren't anyways. So, we just care about the money. And by the way, that Turbo Cheeto Hitler, Turbo Mango Mussolini, Candy Corn Crumbin, Plumpkin Spice Satan just gave notice to all you guys at school saying you have 10 days to sign a form saying you don't have DEI or you lose all your funding. Just lie and sign it. Who cares? He's never going to know, all right? And then, we've spent $10,000 in attorneys to do it anyway. Uphold DEI costs. We need to make a diversity yes and will. We're kind forever.
After Ms. Eriziki will be Ms. Rivera.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address you all this evening. My name is Selena Eriziki and I'm a proud teacher of Stafford Middle School. When I approach people or they talk to me about what I do for a living, and I tell them that I'm a middle school teacher, they clutch their pearls and gasp and say, "Bless your heart," in response. I believe it takes a special kind of teacher to teach middle school students. At Stafford Middle School, and Stafford Middle School has wonderful group of teachers. I'm here tonight to ask the board to revisit our student dress code policy. I am all for students having the ability to express themselves. That is an important part of being an individual. I also acknowledge that there are limits to self-expression within the classroom environment. A middle school classroom can have many distractions and disruptions. With the advent of technology like social media, which presents quick, flashy, overstimulated, fast-paced bits of information, it's very difficult to minimize basic classroom distractions. Neighboring counties hold the same beliefs of freedom of expression, but also add limits when it comes to students wearing, revealing, and exposing themselves undergarments, tube tops, midriffs, and I would include sagging pants and muscle shirts. This type of attire can be a distraction to students and teachers alike. Freedom of expression is one thing, but being a distraction to the learning environment is another. It seems that other neighboring school districts see these as possible distractions to the learning environment and have addressed them. I'm here tonight asking the board to revisit our school dress policy, in hopes that you can bridge the gap between a student's individual freedom of expression and the need for a classroom environment where distractions are minimized and where the main focus is on learning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Smith and board members. My name's Christine Rivera. I'm also a proud middle school teacher. I do not work with Ms. Eriziki. I did at one point, and I love her, but I'm coming up to you with the same concerns. I am here tonight because I believe we have a real opportunity to make our school even better for our students' future. Our Pathways to Success curriculum does a fantastic job teaching them what they need to know to get ahead, and I think our dress code should be a natural part of that. Pathways to Success talks a lot about how you act and talk to people, and how that affects what they think of you, especially when you are trying to get a job. It teaches them about being professional, good manners, and even body language. Well, what we wear is a huge part of that unspoken language, and our dress code could be a powerful way to back up what they are learning in class. For instance, think about Dress for Success Day we have in Pathways. It shows kids that what they wear can actually change how people see them, and there's research that backed this up in the Global Scientific Journal. It talks about how your clothes don't change how others look at you, but how they make you feel. If you wear something that makes you feel ready and professional, you're more likely to be confident and focused, which helps you learn better and get ready for what's next. But right now, our everyday dress code doesn't really point kids in that direction. It mostly just says what they can't wear. I think we're missing a chance to actually teach them about making good choices with their clothes, choices that will help them later on, whether they're going to college or straight into a job. To really connect what we do every day with what we teach in Pathways to Success, I think we need a dress code that clearly links what you wear to being professional, showing how different clothes are seen in different places. A dress code that actively shows how your parents send messages, just like body language, something Pathways already teaches. A dress code that makes what we expect in school match what we teach about being ready in the future. A dress code that really gets kids ready for college and jobs, where knowing how to dress for different situations is a big deal. Instead of just saying no to certain clothes, let's guide our students on how to choose clothes that show respect, responsibility, and what they understand what it means to be ready for the professional world. Just like we aim to do in Pathways to Success, by making these two things work together, our dress code won't just be a list of rules, but a real tool that helps our students feel confident and look prepared for whatever comes their way. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Is Ms. Johnson here, Stephanie Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Following Ms. Johnson will have Lakeitha Walker, Deanna Fisher, Bart Randall, and Molly Denham.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Smith. My name is Stephanie Johnson, and I am the Interim Executive Director of the Stafford Education Foundation. First, I want to thank Dr. Smith and Ms. Sigmund for joining our April Board Meeting. We appreciate your presence and your interest in learning more about our upcoming initiatives in support of Stafford schools. I would be remiss if I did not recognize Ms. Susan Randall, her extraordinary service as school board ex officio member on our board. Susan, your insight, energy, and generous commitment of both time and resources has been instrumental to our work. As we all know, time is one of the most valuable contributions a school board member can make, and thank you for leading by example. We appreciate it. While I've previously shared the mission of Stafford Education Foundation, and I encourage everyone to explore our website if you haven't already, tonight, I'd like to bring that mission to life through a success story. I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Robbins and Ms. Thompson, two dedicated ESL teachers at Moncur Elementary, who embody one of the core pillars of our mission, providing educators with the resources that they need. During the 2024 Innovative Teaching Grant Cycle, this dynamic duo proposed a cooking club for their second-grade ESL students. These young learners all speak a language other than English at home and struggle with writing proficiency. The idea was simple, but powerful. Use cooking as a gateway to build writing skills. The results, truly remarkable. The students not only improved their writing proficiency, but also grew in confidence, engagement, and collaboration. I've brought a copy of the grant evaluation for you to review, so that you'll see just how impactful this hands-on, joyful approach to learning has been. Congratulations to Ms. Robbins and Ms. Thompson for creating an experience that combined fun, food, and academics to make a lasting difference in these students' lives. I hope that tonight is the first of many opportunities to share the inspiring work that's happening through SEF in our schools. We look forward to deepening our partnerships with administrators, educators, parents, students, and the broader community, as we work together to elevate Stafford Education Foundation, and by extension, elevate Stafford schools. Thanks for the opportunity. And ITG cycle begins May 23rd, for all you teachers listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Walker, Lakeitha Walker? Deanna Fisher?
My name's Deanna Fisher. I live in the Garrisonville District. I'm very concerned that the school board is continuing with the DEI committee, still has CRT in the curriculum by way of English assignments, is not prohibiting biological males from entering female bathrooms, and is risking millions of dollars in federal funding by doing so. The Federal Department of Education has given schools direction to follow Title IX and to get rid of DEI by February 28th. It is unbelievable to me that the Stafford County Public Schools is not only willing to risk tens of millions of dollars to defy presidential executive orders and Title IX laws, but has the gall to ask Stafford residents to pay more in property taxes in order to keep pushing DEI, CRT, and transgender ideology on Stafford children. I've been asking questions about these concerns and others, but not getting answers. I've been told several times now by the school board that I was given answers but just don't like the answers. That's not true. I've even been told by a school board member that I should not be bringing concerns to the school board if they don't directly affect my child. Why not? I'm allowed to bring any concerns I want to, since I'm a Stafford resident, and I still want answers, so I'll ask them again. Why do you want to keep the DEI committee? Are you going to certify that you have ended any DEI practices, which is now required in order to receive federal funding, even though you still have the DEI Advisory Committee? Why aren't the 36.5 additional ESL teachers considered an unfunded mandate when we need those funds for regular teachers and building repairs? After Stafford Middle School took back Chromebooks, why haven't you provided the students in advanced math and algebra and geometry high school classes with Chromebooks to do the math programs like Alex and others that are needed for those students to have the ability to succeed in those classes and be competitive with other students in high school and the other middle schools? The students in advanced math at Stafford Middle School are at a big disadvantage, which could be easily solved by recognizing that those students have a special need for Chromebooks. I and other citizens of Stafford deserve a direct response from our school board representatives to answer our questions and address our concerns. I look forward to your response. Thank you.
Members of the school board, Dr. Smith, Bart Randall, again from the Garrisonville District. It is apropos that the topic that I've chosen to speak on tonight was covered twice tonight in the visual and performing arts presentation by your advisory committee, and in recognizing Stafford High School Theater Group. What a tremendous accomplishment they had. And so, I'm here to talk about North Stafford High School and their fine arts swing. It has been mentioned that North Stafford High School doesn't need that fine arts swing, and that we're just going to take it off the CIP and forget about it, and we'll worry about it when we rebuild North Stafford High School. Well, that could be five, 10, 15, 20 years from now. And so, when we minimize the impact of what fine arts can do to a child, to a high school student, and we don't take the opportunity to provide them up to standards, fine arts swing, I think we do them a disservice. So, I absolutely think that it should be done at North Stafford High School. I absolutely think that we should do all we can to improve those fine arts for those students. You know, I never did fine arts in high school. My brothers all did. It wasn't until I got into college and I was like, you know, this is something I like to do. And so, we did a Shakespeare play in the fall, and we did a musical in the spring, and it was the best 12 months of school I ever did, because it means something. You know, performing arts, music, fine arts changes people. And the fact that North Stafford High School goes through that process without the necessary equipment to do what they need to do, I think is something that can be fixed and changed. And so, I am here to advocate for that. I'm here to make sure that it stays where it needs to be, and that we do what we can to provide them what they need to succeed. Thank you.
Good evening. Molly Denham from the Hartwood District. As the Board of Supervisors gear up for the annual tax rate discussion, the school board has done its part and budgeted to the supervisors for consideration. And though the budget was disappointing and that it does not have enough room for much-needed improvements, it is a sound budget that allows the schools to maintain the course until the Board of Supervisors can figure out a way to do their part and fully fund the county in the future. At this time, I would like to press on a couple of issues for consideration. First, I would like to see the school board capitalize on the discussions had last week with reference to revenue sharing as a plan of action going forward. There were supervisors who were maybe not outright supportive of the idea, but they were willing to listen and believed the idea had merit. I believe this board needs to keep that momentum and conversation going and not let it stagnate and fall through the cracks. However, I would also like this board to ensure any revenue share discussions remain centered around funding received by the county from the county. This means it does not include federal and state funding the county receives on behalf of the schools. The Board of Supervisors notoriously love to celebrate the large percentage of funds they provide each year to the schools. However, if you remove funding the county receives from the federal and state level that are already earmarked for the schools, and you do the back-of-the-napkin math, which I've done and shared with Dr. Smith, last year, the schools only received 23% of the money earned by the county from the county. This figure has steadily declined over the past few years, from 31% in FY '22, then 26% in FY '23 and '24, and like I said, at its current sad standing of 23% last year. To help with this endeavor and to ensure the county residents are fully aware of where their money is going, I would also propose my second recommendation. I believe this board should look into the possibility of working to change legislation to allow for federal and state dollars specifically designated for school expenditures to come directly to the schools and cut out the Board of Supervisors as the middleman. I believe federal and state funding sent to the county for schools is not, excuse me, county revenue. The Board of Supervisors is just a finance go-between and truly has no management responsibility of this money, other than to pass it to the schools. If the county can no longer count this funding as county revenue, which I believe it isn't, then we, as county constituents, can get a better picture of how the county spends our local money to support the schools. I believe this- I believe this legislative idea would be something other school districts would support and should be a collaborative effort with our neighbors. Direct funding to schools would be a huge benefit to any school district. This would require a lot of planning and discussion, and it is a long haul. But I believe in the long run, it would be one of the most beneficial changes we can make for our schools as we move into the future of funding for our ever-growing needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Citizen comments are closed. We'll move on to our discussion items. Item 10.01, discussion of the school board joint town hall with the Board of Supervisors. No, it's just discussion.
Madam Chair, I asked that this be put on so that we could talk about that town hall meeting? Because I think it's important, you know, that we as a board have some level of participation. I think it's a great idea to work with the Board of Supervisors and have that meeting, but I think it needs to be something that all of the board members have some input in, at least it's to the scope of the discussion and, you know, what's, you know, what exactly the intention is. I know I received a Google invitation about it. That's the first I heard about it. I had no idea. And I said, "What's this?" You know, usually we have some dialogue, you know, before something like that is... Well, actually, we've never done anything like that, but before something is scheduled and announced. So we still have some time before the meeting, so I think it's good for us to have this public discussion of what the, you know, the intention of the meeting is, what the goal of the meeting is, and, you know, what's the plan for the discussions there.
Sure. So I definitely appreciate this being put on our agenda because it was very confusing. So I just wanted to add some history and context. Shortly before spring break, Supervisor Allen and Supervisor Diggs approached Ms. Guy and myself about whether we'd even be open to the idea of a joint town hall. We told them we'd be open to discussing the idea depending on what, you know, it looked like. Since calendars and locations are usually the biggest barriers to events like this, we compared our calendars, chose a potential date in April with the idea of doing a second town hall in the fall, preferably in like November, if it worked out well. We determined that we wanted to ask if Stafford High School was available on the day and on the date that we had thought about, and then chose a northern location for the second location, you know, if it wasn't, if it went well. Supervisor Diggs, who we know hosts town halls currently, offered to come up with an idea of like, kind of like an outline of what it might look like. I asked Dr. Smith if Stafford High School was available, and we were told that all high schools were booked on that day except for one. And we asked that the space be put on hold pending further discussion so that the space didn't become unavailable, and then we'd be back to kind of square one. It was at that time that the calendar invite went out because it was supposed to be a hold for the location rather than a hold on our particular calendars. And it's like, obviously, that's what, where the confusion arose. And then the correction of that appeared to be an un-invitation, which was certainly never the intention. Our intention across the board was 100% to have as many board members there that were available and had interest. And again, it wasn't even a confirmed event at that time. It was just trying to put something on the calendar to talk about. During spring break, public school spring break, Supervisor Diggs suggested that we keep our initial discussion topics broad and he suggested the topics of infrastructure, transportation, budget and funding, and economic development. I think our only goal was to speak to those as they related to our five-year plan and to our strategic goals. If I were, for example, to speak on something I learned through my experience of as Garrisonville rep, I would make that clear. And we also felt that they're, well, Supervisor Diggs' recommendation, based on his experience, was to not be so formal in our presentation, not have a PowerPoint, to have as little structure as possible, and how literally just to have slides that said, "Infrastructure, Transportation", as a guide to essentially divide the time allotted for the event into an opening, a closing, and for equal parts, just to keep the conversation moving so we didn't get caught up on any one topic for the entire time. Staff, we did not want to monopolize the time of staff. Dr. Smith indicated he would be interested in attending, and I believe Ms. Osborne indicated she would like to have someone from her team there to handle any media that might show up. But beyond that, we weren't expecting the participation of any staff. There was 71% of them work for us. We would love for them to come and weigh in on their own. So essentially, that's where we left it, and then we came back from spring break. So that is where we all are. We were going to bring it to a full discussion. Once, again, I got the topics that Supervisor Diggs thought would be broad enough to encompass a lot of conversation without being also too broad and that were shared interests for schools and government and everybody in between. If I missed anything.
Yeah, you did miss something. I mean, it's not a big deal, but it just gives more of a history. So what first happened was back at the end of January or mid-January, we started texting, like a text group of the four of us saying, "Hey, we need to start having meetings with us four." And I think Maureen had pointed out that this used to be done by the chairs and the vice chairs back in the day of the county, both boards. And so that's what we kept trying to plan. Actually, we couldn't even get them to respond because they were so busy, like with a date. We kept on just missing each other. And then finally, they were like, "Oh, wait." And then I finally, I was like, "If y'all will at least come to a meeting with us, I'll bring food." Right? This would just be us four. And I was like, "I'll cook lasagna or whatever." Then they, cheesecake, anything. I mean, I was just, anything so that we can, we all agreed we wanted to meet, but we just couldn't find the time. And then they said, "It'll have to be, you know, sometime in April, whatever." Then they came back and was like, "Hey, let's make this a town hall." Maureen and I were like, yes to anything, though. We would have said yes to a Zoom, because we even talked about it. "Well, maybe we'll just have to only meet at a Zoom." Or maybe it'll just be the three of us because our schedules were so hard to sync up. So that's where it came from. It was just us trying to meet, to share information. And then when the town hall conversation happened, it was really a chance to show the community that we are absolutely trying to get along and to run the county in a way that we can thrive. And even though budget season is not fun, it is hard, and sometimes it seems like we may be at each other's throats, or maybe not, but it doesn't matter. We are still one Stafford, and we need to get along, and we're all in the same ship, right? So either we can row it together or we can start sinking. And so that's where it came from.
Ms. Randall?
So I have no problem with, you know, collaborating and being more in the community and all of those things. I guess from a board member perspective, I think, as I've spoken with Mr. Diggs, my counterpart, it just seemed to me that there was collaboration and information shared to their board members before things were shared with our board members. And by setting a date and not even discussing with us, "Hey, guys, what do you think about?", I think was the part that, like, I mean, Ms. Healy and I tried as well with them, and you're right, it's hard, and it depends on leadership and all of those things. And I'm glad that you guys tried that, too. But for me, I feel like as a board that has come a long way in collaborating and working together, that this, our board was not pulled or included before a date was set. And that's where I kind of feel like that would be something that I would prefer. The topics, I'm glad you're sharing those with us, but I think the order of operation was the part that was concerning to me. As somewhat, I'm a collaborator, so I just felt like that was not done in this instance. I get the timeline. I see it. I know spring break, you guys both left. And, you know, I did not want to do business with you all on your breaks because everybody needs their breaks. But to me, that was the part that was bothersome, that they were collaborated and talked with, and we were not, until after we got an invite. And that's when that happened.
Were you going to say something? Go ahead.
I appreciate sort of getting a little bit of a history. I guess my concern is, it doesn't sound like we're very clear about what our goals were. So were the goals to really work on developing the relationship with your counterparts? Or are the goals to do some kind of public presentation? And so I'd like, you know, I think, I think we as a board should be having sort of a better understanding of what the goal of this process is. And I have to agree with Ms. Randall that I was kind of like, "What is this?" I didn't think a huge amount about it. I knew I couldn't make it on the day that it was scheduled, and I was just kind of like, "What is this?" So, yeah, I think we as a board should be deciding what is this, what is the method that we want to have a more formal relationship with members of the other board? I mean, we absolutely have relationships with our counterparts, but the rest of it, yeah.
I agree with much of what's said, but I do want to remind the board that sometimes things do get lost in translation, and communication isn't always effective. It used to be that the chairs and the vice chairs of the two boards actually did meet. I think these things sort of evolved organically, and sometimes there is a breakdown in communication. I do agree with Dr. Chase that having a goal in what the plan is and sharing that openly is preferable. But I also understand how this chain of events happened. And when I first got the email, I assumed this is the Board of Supervisors and our board trying to establish better communication, because it has been a goal of ours. We've talked about it at retreat. We've talked about it amongst ourselves. And I think that it was just a breakdown in communication, which I believe is being rectified.
So I feel like I thought this was something that Supervisor Allen brought up in one of our meetings, that she mentioned, that she thought it would be a good idea for both boards, chairs and vice chairs, to get together and have a discussion with it. I'm not disconnected from the piece, but I think we are in such desperate need to get in front of the public with the boards, with the both boards. And I think that some of that is, as like, if the chairs are willing to work together and the vice chairs are willing to work together, then I'm not necessarily married to having to be a part of the whole process, right? Because they already know, I mean, I trust them to tell the public, like, "Can't speak for Hartwood District," but, but I also didn't think the topics would be that focused. I mean, certainly I would have had concerns if someone came to me and said, "Hey, they were talking about High School Six, and you weren't even there." But I trust that neither the supervisors nor these two ladies would do that. So I feel very strongly that we have a build, I mean, a bridge to build. That's quite clear. And I thought this was a good foot forward to do that. So I'm hoping that we are going forward with it because, I mean, and for whoever wants to be there, I mean, I'm not, I can't remember the day off the top of my head, but I think it's important. I think that there's too much division for reasons that I'm not, I don't have a sense to fathom at the moment. So I thought this was a good way to kind of maybe bring some of that down to the public. And I don't know, I think because Diggs does so many town halls, I just assumed that he was like proficient in town halls and had it all worked out. So I appreciate the discussion, but I guess that's how I took it. Because I remember the first time I did a town hall, right? Granted, it was in Hartwood District or whatever, or no. Actually, the first town hall I ever did, you ladies all joined me over here at the building over here. And then the next one I did, it was just for my district. So I just felt like it was a good opportunity to the public to have access, direct access to board members without sort of any barriers or layers or ulterior motive.
Are there any other discussion, questions, comments?
I just want to say I appreciate you giving us that background because that's very helpful. And the more contact we have or discussion, I think the clearer we can see. Maybe our lenses are getting cleared. And I would like to just make sure the board knows, and it's been discussed, there have been chair/vice chair meetings, you know, over the years. And I encouraged Ms. Sigmund last year when she was first elected chair, and again, reiterated this year, how helpful it is to have that chair/vice chair meeting. Depending on calendars, you know, we tried to do it monthly in the past. It was an opportunity, Dr. Chase, I know you, you know, may remember, we had very good discussions. It was an informal setting, and we had our superintendent attend, so the superintendent could send notes out, and we reported back to the board, you know, after every one of those meetings so that the board knows what was discussed. It wasn't any, you know, closed-door secrets or anything. But, you know, I encourage that, and I think it's encouraging that they initiated it. But I didn't know that. When I got this Google invitation, I'm like, "What is this?", you know? Nobody, nobody told me. So thank you for sharing that information. And if you could, you know, give us that date again, I will try to be there because, you know, I think it's good. I don't know. What date is it? The 29th? Okay, Tuesday.
It's the fifth Tuesday because, for the most part, the 14 of us don't schedule anything on Tuesdays ever, but it's one of those rare Tuesdays that it's neither the second nor the fourth.
Yeah. And I would suggest if there is a follow-up, that it be after the election, just so there's no appearance of anything. You know, that November would be a good time. And actually, after the election, there's a certain sense of relief, and I think we really have open and frank discussions, you know, once that's over. So thank you for, you know, putting your time into it and, you know, having that bridge. And I would suggest, you know, in addition to this town hall, that you try to have, you know, some kind of, you know, periodic meetings with the chair and vice chair of the Board of Supervisors because it's helpful.
We are grateful in that their lines of communication are very open. We're able to call or text, you know, to seek feedback or to ask a question or to, you know, connect in any of those ways, and they are great at responding. But we've struggled with actually sitting at a time that's, and committing to sitting down just the four of us. And I think the commitment or making the commitment to sit down in front of constituents is kind of what carried some weight. And I'm just really grateful for the direction that all this is going. It's been a great, a great year to have the lines of communication and having this positive relationship developed between us and them.
Well, I just want to say, I think for the community, you know, it's one thing if I have a town hall or if we have a town hall, and the community asks us questions and we respond. And that question might be about something that concerns the Board of Supervisors. It is different when you answer a question about somebody when they're in the room. And that's what I'm excited for the community to have the opportunity, is to ask them questions and for us to be there and for them to ask us questions and for them to be there. Because, you know, we know what happens when we're not in the room and when they're not in the room. So when Diggs said, "Let's do it as a town hall instead of a private meeting," I said yes. But if Diggs were to say, "Let's do it in the, you know, I don't even know, basement of my house," I would have said yes because, you know, from your old leadership, it was, "Build a relationship, build a relationship." And that's what we were doing. And then as soon as they said anything, we said yes. And as soon as it was the date, I think I responded like, "I'm going to say yes to any date." Like, "Y'all pick the date. I'm going to make myself available any way I can." So that's it. And like I said, I'm just happy that the community can have this. I hope it continues. I hope that the community sees that different leadership will give you different outcomes.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Okay. Item 10.02, discussion of potential elementary school redistricting scenarios. We currently have red, orange, yellow, green, and lime. We also had some discussion in the work session about possible amendments or changes to any slash all of these. any slash all of these scenarios. And then, of course, we've had our town hall with comments from our constituents, so we wanted to kind of open the lines of communication here to talk about where we're, what we're thinking.
Madam Chair, I think I'd like to move that we remove scenario red and scenario yellow. I think that red underutilizes ES-18 when it opens, it only gets 70 percent. And I think the difference between yellow and orange is very slight, but I think, I think that the other, the three remaining options are the most viable.
I would agree.
Second.
Oh.
Sorry.
Sorry. I didn't know, I didn't know if we were motioning or just agreeing.
Well, we have to motion and second, so that we can have a discussion.
There, I've got you, sorry. I.
Sorry.
It's hot in here, too, but anyway. No, I'm good.
Yes, is there a discussion?
Yeah.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my only concern is those two suggestions, both remove Rappahannock Landing from, separate Rappahannock Landing from Belmont and Ingleside. And we heard from somebody who came to speak, who had some concerns about that. So, I'm concerned about throwing that out without our actually giving it some thought.
Madam Chair, didn't the speaker say that Rappahannock Landing under every scenario was going somewhere?
But they aren't separated from Belmont and Ingleside in every single scenario.
That was going to be my question, as someone who's not.
Are they different APUs?
Yes, yes. But they currently all go to Conway. And in the scenario, we have one group going to Rocky Run, and the other group going to Ferry Farm. And so, I'm just saying that we should, I don't want to completely throw that scenario out until we've actually taken a look at that.
So, just as a matter of note, I thought that we were going to vote to, because of that very thing, we were going to vote to get rid of, sort of the first couple of scenarios, and then, because there were some suggestions for other options, maybe potentially create another one. So, if we were starting from that.
Or add, just add two. You can just add two.
What do you mean, add two?
Add two.
Since lime is the latest, I suggest that if we want to make any tweaks, that we make them to lime, because that's the one that some of us have had some input in, and other of us have not, and this gives the ones who hadn't had an opportunity a chance to put some input in. Doesn't mean it's, you know, a given, but it's at least has that, that chance.
I'm not trying to be difficult, but if we add to lime, and I didn't have any tweaks with lime or anything, but if we did add to lime, well, what if my tweak is the opposite of the liming of it? Then how am I adding to the lime? You know what I'm saying?
Coming is part of the.
Are you saying you don't?
Complex.
No.
You mean if the tweak affects your, you, that you would make something else?
I'm saying if we start adding, did I, is, am I not making sense? It could be me. I'm just asking.
Are you talking about, like, if your change impacted?
Is the opposite of someone else's change, then we're going to need a deep lime or a chartreuse? I'm just saying, like.
Well, that's why we're having a discussion to see if it would impact. If it impacts, then I think that's a whole new color.
So, in order to address, can I make a substitute motion? In order to address the Ingleside and Rappahannock Landing, we can keep scenario orange and get rid of scenario yellow.
You already had red and yellow.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your motion was to.
Get rid of orange, yellow.
Get rid of red and yellow.
Yes. So, keep yellow and get rid of orange. Would that be, that way? So, we get rid of red, and we get rid of.
Okay, because I just know my note said modified orange, and that was like the first of the two people who had it, the modified.
Yeah, but orange and yellow are very similar, so I think that the ones that are in.
Orange and yellow are not. Not at all.
When it comes to mine, orange is the first I would consider. Yellow is, red and yellow are not for me, because that is completely changing the population at Ferry Farm. And again, over and over, in comments dated back to March to present, to several speakers here tonight, Ingleside being moved out of Conway, and they were tried to move a couple of years ago, and Dr. Taylor drove it with them and said, okay, we can, you can stay. And like I said, having transportation look at it, I believe that small tweak, it's a 2 percent difference, should be added to lime. It doesn't, like I said, 2 percent difference, and Ferry Farm at 2030 is at 88, and this would put Ferry Farm at 86. It would put Conway at 86. And like I said, they're, we've been hearing from them in the digital comments, in the comments here, as well as in the comments that had been sent to Lionel.
And I would just say that we note that that's just a very small tweak, but I have heard from a number of other APUs, and they could also make the argument that they're a very small tweak. And so, do we do all the small tweaks? Or when, when do we say we've sort of taken care of it? So, I think my reaction is just, we can have this conversation after I've had an opportunity to see what it looks like if I put all the other people who want to go into Conway, back into Conway.
So, can, can we all agree to eliminate red? I think red has.
Are you modifying your motion, then?
Yes, modifying the motion to eliminate the red scenario, so that leaves us with four scenarios that can still be. Then, Dr. Chase and Ms. Randall can meet with Lionel about the units for Conway.
Well, I think we need to have this discussion tonight. We'll consider all of these points, but my rationale for having this discussion was that some of us met with Lionel, now, Mr. White, and that was.
Who met with him and came up with lime?
I had a meeting with him to look at those two APUs, and I invited Ms. Randall to come with me, but she had another appointment. So, when I went to the meeting, Dr. Warner was coming out and said, yeah, I'll come look, too. So, the only changes had to do with, with that, which resulted in lime.
Okay, so, so you had a meeting, Dr. Warner had a meeting, did any, was anyone else meeting with him? All right, so y'all met with Mr. White, and then came up with some changes, which resulted in lime, which is fine. I have no objection to that. I think it's good. But if Ms. Randall wants to make a change, if she had had the notice that, you know, she could have met with Mr. White last week and proposed a change, that could have been in lime, regardless of what any of the other ones of us want, because she had the right, the same right that, you know, everyone would have had to meet with him and put it, put it in there. You know, it wouldn't have to be recommended or approved by a majority. So, I, I don't think it's reasonable to, to say we're not going to consider a request by a board member to make a change to lime, which could have been made last week, had we known. Now, this is no intent to criticize anybody, because it's an extremely difficult, you know, process for redistricting, the notices, the meetings, everything, but it's, it's just, it's a matter of fairness, you know, in terms of making this. And I would support Ms. Randall's request that this be made. Now, you said 2 percent, but based on what the, the public comments are said, sounds like half of those students in that subdivision are employees' kids. So, if there's 10 or 11 students in the entire subdivision, and five of them are employees' kids that are going to be going to another school anyway, then that's probably closer to 1 percent, at least in this case. So, I don't have a problem with 1 percent, and if you want to propose a change, I would certainly consider that as well.
Yeah, I'm just trying.
But it's Dr. Warner, let me, let me finish. This is, I have the same problem, and please interrupt me if I interrupt you. If you want to propose that, you know, I'd be willing to listen to that as well.
I absolutely think that, that there should be additional proposals to the, kind of the group scenario that we've created. I just want to try to eliminate one to simplify the process. And it seems like red is one that can be simple, that can be eliminated. And that, that was kind of my purpose in trying to just narrow down some of the choices that we have. I don't think that any of us have any disagreement with sitting down and looking at the numbers, but Ms. Randall has additional students that she wants to put back in Conway, and Dr. Chase has additional students, so it's more than we can do, really, tonight to get those numbers.
But yet, you and Dr. Chase sat down with Mr. White last week, and you made changes, and you moved a number of students, you know, from one school to another. Not that it counts, because it doesn't count until four of us say, yes, it's approved, but you had that opportunity to make that change, to put it up there for something for us to consider. And what Ms. Randall is saying, I'm sorry I'm beating your advocate here, but, you know, but, you know, what she's saying is that she wants to make a change as well. So, why not? Why can't she have that opportunity that you had last week? And had she known that she, this was coming out.
She was invited. Please remember that.
The night before.
But, but we didn't know, we didn't know a new scenario was going to come out, that that was going to happen, that a new scenario is going to be birthed and presented, and here it is, you know, a new color. Yeah, it's a shade difference, but it's a new color. It's something being discussed. And that's different from saying you can go sit down and have a discussion. That's my concern. You know, if you all just sat there, and tonight you were bringing it to us, and we were going to be discussing this tonight, that would be different. But we've got, you know, we've got a new color on the palette here. And it's, and you're trying to cut it down from five to four. So, I'm suggesting that we adjust, you know, the latest color, and I'm not fashionista, you know that, but I, I think it's only fair.
Ms. Guy?
I see your point, I believe, and I, and I absolutely see your point, too. And I think what you're saying, though, is until the last tweak is done, we shouldn't eliminate any of them. Is that, is that what you're saying? Until the last tweak is done? Because, okay, because I could understand that, and I could get on board with that, saying, you know what, because Ms. Randall wants us to look at something, I know that you're going to look at something, you know, that one of our staff member emailed. So, but I also see your point, like, hey, none of us are really agreeing with red, let's get rid of it. But if none of us are agreeing with it, it makes no difference to just keep it there. None of us are agreeing with it, and keep moving on, and let's just move on. And I just want to move on.
That's kind of where I was. I think when we were in the process of doing high school redistricting, we got somewhere close to the middle of the alphabet, and then we sat up here, and we were, we kind of, for lack of a better explanation, laid our cards on the table, which of these are possibilities for us individually, and which of these would be an absolute no for us individually. And for those scenarios, which all of us, or most of us, a vast majority of us, were like, no longer considering, it allowed us to eliminate kind of a quarter of the alphabet down to a more manageable amount. That was with only six attendance zones to look at. We are looking at 19 attendance zones over five different shades. I do like this color thing rather than letters, but a lot more options, right? So, I wanted to, before we got too far into the rainbow, at least broached the topic of, are there some that, you know, we can reduce, narrow down? I know, speaking for myself, there's only two of these I would vote yes for already, so, the rest would just be superfluous for me, and I don't know if there are other people on the board who had felt the same way, which is why we added it to the agenda to have this conversation. And that being said, regardless of what we decide, for me, I'm looking at it as which of these is a good place to start for, you know, based on, I assume that based on feedback tonight, even without future meetings over the past week with Mr. White, that we might have concerns raised tonight that we would want to take a bigger look at, or that came in our email, or came in public comments, digital public comments tonight, that might make us want to revisit some of these scenarios. But to have each of us look at those changes, either with or without Mr. White, across five scenarios, can get cumbersome. If we could say, let's look at these and start from three or four scenarios, it just streamlines the process a little bit. It's a little fewer pieces of yarn and thumbtacks to put on the wall, as we're, we're looking at the direction we want to go for our community.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to include APU 157 in lime, to be, to remain at Conway.
Okay, so we still have red that's seconded? Red and, you changed your motion to be red.
That's just to just grab.
Okay, so we can call the question on that one, and then we can, since yours is complete, unrelated to red.
Unless the first motion would accept that as a friendly amendment.
So, do you want to do both at once?
Do both?
Eliminate red and, no, separate them?
To narrow down this.
Not friendly, got it.
And then, because Dr. Chase has additions, too. So, that's why I think it would be.
Not friendly, got it.
No, no.
It's either friendly or not friendly.
I don't want to be difficult, but I'm, I'm going to be a little bit difficult, because I don't know the South as well as you guys, and the APUs and the communities. Alyssa had to show me on the map, like, what people were talking about. We still haven't had the expert in the room, and then our superintendent weigh in on that communication that we got from, and so all I'm saying is, since I don't understand every single thing and have it, I don't want to eliminate something, because what if the change could actually work with red? And then we can't do it now, because we eliminated red. I would like to eliminate, once we've passed the point of no return, which means no more tweaking. So, I'm not voting to eliminate anything. I'm not going to vote for it, because I think we're doing ourselves a potential disservice. Now, you might, you might be right. None of us like red.
Okay, I'm going to withdraw your motion, because it's just not worth it. I thought we were at a position where we could eliminate a color.
Not if we're tweaking.
But.
If we're tweaking, we, you shouldn't be eliminating anything.
I think you're good. No, she's withdrawn her motion, we're not eliminating. The question is whether we're going to make a change to lime now.
Okay, so now, on to the next motion.
So, Ms., we have the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
No, ma'am. Okay, Ms. Healy with the second.
So, I'd like to comment. I will not be supporting this motion at this time. You know, it's my understanding that, that most of us take into consideration the school, where the school is located. I don't suggest that I add students to Ferry Farm without having a conversation with Ms. Randall. So, I will not be supporting this motion, but.
And I did have the conversation, so, with Dr. Chase.
And you're adding that to lime, that's your motion, right?
That's all, yep.
So, do we have, you said, can you go through the statistics again?
What APU was it?
So, I don't.
It's APU 157 and Pratt Park, which has no students. So, it would be APU 157, and I don't know what the Pratt Park number is. Remain at Conway.
I'm trying to.
And then, can I make a, can I request then another scenario later that doesn't have that, right? Because we're not voting on the scenario. We're just voting to make a change to this scenario. So, I will then come up with, you know, some other thing.
Right. If this were to pass, then the next time lime appears, it would have.
It has APU.
It would just be that. One more APU staying at Conway. And that was the subject of quite a few of the digital comments that I read that came in today as well, is the public comments.
Sorry, Ms. Randall, I believe it's 157.2, so I think you're asking for 157. Pratt Park is in 157.2.
Thank you.
So, it's two planning units, one of which is Pratt Park?
Right, no students.
Okay.
Dr. Smith, when do we vote on this officially?
I appreciate that question. I was going to remind you. So, just, just as a reminder, we did come back, we did start this conversation February 11th with the board, as we talked about high school, elementary school priorities. Came back to you in March with some suggestions. We've had several meetings, you've had a couple of community meetings on that, on those so far, several meetings. We have tonight's meeting, and then we are scheduled not to come back until May 13th. You have a, the next time that's up is May 13th, when you're supposed to have another redistributed discussion at the work session, and then you take action that evening. So, the next time we talk about this, we are scheduled to talk and take action that same evening. evening. And we don't have any other time. It's built into our current calendar as it was approved to have further discussion. We have a meeting on the 17th, but that's meant for our reconciliation in budget, and then tentatively on the 22nd for, for budget adoption.
So on this, on the 17th of...
13th.
Sorry. What date did you say is reconciliation?
I believe it's April 17th, Thursday, April 17th.
April 17th is our reconciliation and budget meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
By, just us, right? With us? So can we not add one thing, and that is to bring the, the new, whatever, like, to show us what that looks like? Can't we, can, can you present it to us then?
That would depend, I think, on the availability and time.
Availability of what?
Us, like...
It's an extra 30 minutes. It's what it takes to do the job.
But we're, that's devoted to the budget. If we're going to have to meet on it, I would prefer we have a separate meeting because the budget is going to be, I anticipate, fairly intense.
I'm absolutely okay with having a second meeting. I'm so happy you said that because I know that my board members complained about too many meetings and I didn't want to bring up another meeting. But if we have to have another meeting in order to bring what we're tweaking, because I don't, I'm not, I'm not assuming that we're going to tweak anything off of that email, but what if we do? I think it should be brought to us. And so if we need to have another meeting, we need to have another meeting.
I, I don't, I'm not going to weigh in on whether or not we have another meeting. I think we can decide as a board if we need a meeting, but my preference, and I think a meeting is probably the best avenue to do it, but my preference overall would be to have everyone suggest their, their tweaks, whether they're from public comment tonight, the email you're referencing, conversations you've had previously, and we have Mr. White bring his receipts on what the overall impacts would do. I think what I appreciated, I forget which color already, and we already have five, where he kind of did an overlay of when we went in for our first round of meetings. He did kind of like an overlay scenario of everything that everybody suggested that didn't conflict, and then if there were things that would conflict, that we would just essentially decide on those. So I, I would prefer that we have essentially an opportunity, whether it's here or even after here, but with a set deadline, that we send in our requests to our resident magician and have him create whatever color he chooses, however he chooses, and then also provide a list of, this is everything that didn't conflict, and then here are the things that we have to choose, either A or B, or pink or purple or whatever.
And we need to have a drop dead date. We need to have a date where no other tweaks, no matter what happens, no matter how many emails, there needs to be a date and it needs to be held firm, that we can't make any changes.
So I was able to speak with Mr. White during the break, and we talked, we discussed a potential suggestion that if you wanted to make, meet or make any suggestions or changes, that we do that this week, and we can provide opportunities this week for folks to do that, and then work to get you any revised scenarios early next week, so you can take a look at some of that. We know kind of time is of the essence in trying to put this together. It also takes a bit of time, as you know, to do all the demographics that are associated with this, so you're looking at all the data at once. So we would suggest that if you want to do that, that we, we make available Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week to suggest any changes and meet with folks if they would like.
So then if, and obviously tell me no if nobody, this would be what I would think might work, is if we have any other meetings that people wish to have, make any requests that people wish to do over the next week, then on the 17th, we can review some of that, all of that, and then at that point, either thumbs up, thumbs down to a scenario on whether it's viable, and potentially eliminate, like, a red, for example, and then at the 17th, is that enough time? Is that not enough time to pare down or ramp up what our list is? We could opt to keep 10 scenarios. I hope not, but based on what he brings forward, we could do that.
Well, I mean, from my perspective, it's just a, an arbitrary deadline, right? School doesn't open till fall of 2026. So if we don't get it done on a specific date, it's not going to be the end of the world.
I would just say to that, we are waiting on you to finalize redistricting to start the naming process. The naming process does involve students. Our construction is looking at colors, and there's certainly, there are things with that. So just, yeah, absolutely, we can make adjustments and staff will work with whatever date you'd like, and we'll try to make that work for you.
I, I just think that, that the tweaks at this point are minor, and it just makes more sense that if Ms. Randall and Dr. Chase could meet with Lionel, finalize those tweaks on the lime scenario, which incorporated everybody's changes, they incorporated the ones for Margaret Brent, that both Ms. Halsted and Ms. Healy had been interested in, then we can have a final scenario, we can have it by this week and we can find, we can make a decision. Because then we'll be able to look at the numbers and the demographic data at once. Does that, that sound reasonable? Because I know, now you want to reevaluate some of the choices that...
Right. There were choices that I made with certain understanding, so I would like to revisit those choices, so...
And I don't, I don't have any objection to that, and, and that's not the problem. The problem is that you had that opportunity, you and Dr. Warner, you made a significant number of changes with the, with, with the 19. Was there not a number of, of students that were moved in there in lime?
They were unmoved, but yes.
Right, but, but I mean, there was a significant impact.
And that's what this is.
And Ms. Randall wants to move 15, not move, she wants to leave 15 students, five of whom are going to be there anyway because they're related to staff, and, and all of a sudden, we've, we've got a big problem. When last week, you know, a number of them were moved. If, if she had known, if I had known, you know, I might have wanted to go in and talk. I'm okay with these scenarios. I'm okay because I like green and I like lime, but I want to see, you know, a vote on the, on, on Ms. Randall's motion. And, and I, I guess we need to wait till people come back to call for the question. But I, I, I just, I don't understand what, what the problem is. Because you had your bite at the apple, and, you know, this, there wasn't a bite over here. There's more apple to be bitten, which can still be, happen. Dr. Chase can go in again and meet and make tweaks. But, but this motion is to change lime to what it would have been changed to had there been notice to every board member that were coming out with a new scenario. This is your chance to make a change. And, and that, and if, if Dr. Chase hadn't had that notice, I would have the same, you know, concern about hers, but, you know, and it's, it's just not, it's not reasonable, it's not fair.
It was that she made a decision based on not knowing that unit was going to be moved. And now it changes that, so now she wants to reevaluate.
It doesn't change anything.
It, it just, she wants to reevaluate it.
Oh, but it doesn't change anything. That's what I'm saying, is it doesn't change anything.
Dr. Chase can come in and make whatever motion she wants, either tonight or, or the next meeting.
So again, as a northern person who doesn't understand the planning unit, so I apologize, and I'm not suggesting anything.
This would be an island that comes.
My question is, does, is what you are suggesting and what Dr. Chase might have suggested, do they conflict? Or are they... But they don't, it's not like you're saying move them to blue and she's saying move them...
And I don't even know how many are in Rappahannock Landing.
Rappahannock Landing is a large APU.
Because if it's your 15 and, and these others, that's, that's why you just, you should look at them together to see where it fits Conway, because I think they all affect Conway. That's the only thing.
Of course they would all affect Conway, I mean, depending on. But in my scenario, I'm talking right now, 2%. I know we don't know how many students, well, yeah, probably one. We don't know how many students are, are we affecting in Rappahannock Landing.
I don't even know what the question is at this point. Can't we just make another, make another color for your tweak and just...
I don't need another color. That's the thing is, I don't need another color.
But let's just make it another color. That way she can have time to digest and we can move on, because that's her school and we're tweaking her school. Let's just, let's like make another color and move on.
But they're all, all our schools.
You know what I'm talking about. You know what I'm talking about.
The school happens to be in the district, but there's students...
That's my point.
But, but Ms. Randall's student, her constituents are in that school.
I know, I understand that. So I'm saying, because of that, make another one and let's move on.
Unless somebody's going to make a, a different motion or withdraw a motion, what you would...
I'm doing it. Call a question, Madam Chair.
You may want to repeat the motion so that it's clear what it is, because we've had extended, and we haven't gotten to the entry plan. Oh, my goodness.
He's not leaving until...
You know what? He's going to be like, now here's my exit plan, y'all's crazy.
Don't even.
101 days.
You thought we were doing so well on this.
What's the question? We were doing well.
Do you, could you please restate? Because I know that we've added, the two planning unit numbers are the most important so that we have the record of them.
It's one.
I know, but Pratt Park isn't the number.
I know. 157.1 is what you said?
150. 157.0 and 157.2.
Right, okay. So my motion was to move, or actually remain, planning units 157.0 and 157.2 at Conway.
As part of lime?
As part of lime, yes.
So that is the motion, and Ms. Healy with the second. Please cast your votes. The motion passes four to three. Do we have further discussion on redistricting scenarios, plans, recommendations to bring forward or to be seen and...
Are we saying the 17th then is our drop dead, last discussion, all things? Is that what we're saying? At 5:00?
So I struggle with a drop dead because it could, stop it. Because I did not just assault my coworker. If we could, because I don't know what you might bring forward and how that might impact my district or the schools in my district, so I reserve the right to tweak anything that comes forward, especially if it's an oversight or, or a change.
We haven't had much discussion about the first three colors lately. I think we're pretty much focusing on these shades of green, and maybe we'll have another shade of green, you know, at some point. But I, you know, I, I agree with Ms. Guy earlier, let's just leave them all in, we're not taking anything out. We've heard the public tonight, we've, we've gotten the digital comments, they still have an opportunity to write to us. And I would suggest if any of us get any comments or emails from, you know, our constituents or anybody that writes in, that we send them to our clerk to share with everybody. I mean, you, you get online because I just think it's important that we all see everything. When sometimes, you know, somebody will write just to one of us and the rest of us, you know, won't have, I mean, it's completely up to you, it's an option, but I think it would help us in terms of seeing the big picture when we are going to come to this vote on May 17. Do we have, May 13th, do we have another public hearing that night, or is that, that's just the vote?
Just a work, just a work session, item is, and then the vote.
All right. So I'd, I'd say we just leave them all alone for now, but lime is adjusted.
So would you prefer...
Can we take a five-minute break before we...
As soon as we, yes, after this, we're going to need a break. But just to kind of poll the board, I'm not putting an official motion out, to discuss any conversations that have arisen tonight, that board members have with the superintendent and or Mr. White, would you prefer that we add this to an agenda item on the 17th or seek out a different date to discuss scenarios moving forward?
I think we need 15 minutes to discuss it on the 17th, because I think we've all pretty much made our decisions about the scenarios. We just need to see the maps and the numbers, and then we should be fine with the vote in May and the work session. But as soon as Mr. White can get us that, that change, then this week, I would imagine, then we should be able to make a decision.
And Maureen, with all due respect, I know you, I want a drop dead date. You're going to stay, you're going to get up here and you're going to try to tweak, and we ain't tweaking. I want, I need, we need to have a drop dead date, and it needs to go out via email to remind us, or a text or something, so that you can make your last minute changes. And then we can come and, you know, and maybe we can even poll the board before the 15th and, but she will be. Okay, sorry. But then you can like poll the board and see where we are, and, you know, then come to that meeting like the majority of us, you know, like, three people, we're getting rid of this, like, let's just move forward.
I think we need to set a date that occurs after the 17th.
Let's see what we, how we get on the 17th, and then if we need to add another date, we can do that.
I think the 17th is when we would set our drop dead date essentially, because we don't know what's going to come forward. And I think anything that anybody brings to Mr. White should come, come back to us as a draft color. Like, for a suggestion, this was Maureen's idea, it's not going to be me because I'm not tweaking, we're going to blame Alyssa. Alyssa brought forward this idea, we're going to call it draft purple, because you're wearing purple, and that's my favorite color. But it is not an official scenario because we haven't all had the opportunity to weigh in on it until we meet, but...
So you're saying the drop dead date would be April 17th?
No.
Sorry, what, what are you saying?
I'm saying on April 17th, we'll, we'll determine a drop dead date.
Okay, because also it helps for the public, so they'll know the amount of time they have.
And we could decide, we're good with what we have on the 17th and that we decide in that room, we're not making any more changes. But if somebody else brings up a change that creates a question, then we need to say, I'll answer your question and that's it.
Chair, I would, I would just ask if there's any suggested changes, that we get them this week? It does take time to put all those together, and so I do want to respect Mr. White and his time to, we, if we get them this week, we can have them ready for the 17th to share, but it does take us time to put all that together. If we get them on the 17th, we won't be ready to present them on the 17th.
No, we wouldn't ask you to present...
I know. I'm just wanting to clarify, because we said by 5:00.
Right, so, could we, so what, it's Tuesday, so by, close of business, Friday.
Lionel, don't adjust your TV screen, it is confusing.
So get your requests to the superintendent for Mr. White by Friday, so that they can work on those for, by Friday of this week, so that they could be for next week, for Thursday of next week.
They're not going to be able to be in the bulletin Friday, because he's going to have to work on them. There'll be a next Friday's bulletin, because it's after our Thursday meeting.
And as is our custom, if your suggested changes impacts another district, have those conversations too, or at least notify.
Are we taking a recess?
Yes, I'm sorry. That's my job. We're going to take a five-minute recess.
And she means five, not 36.
Okay, so I'm going to start down here just so we can transition easily, and I know it is getting late. So we're going to start with superintendent's report and comments to share some great things that have been happening across the division. First, I'd like to congratulate our Animaage tournament qualifiers. The national tournament stands as the pinnacle of Animaage competitions, bringing together the top high school teams from across the nation to test their anatomical knowledge. To qualify for this esteemed event, students must excel in regional tournaments or virtual qualifiers, with only the top 5% advancing to the national event. Please join me in celebrating Team Mortal Physique from North Stafford High School, who are in third place, Team Nervous Ninjas from Colonial Forge High School, who took fourth place, Team Boneheads from North Stafford High School, who placed fifth, and Team Biohackers from Stafford High School, who placed sixth. These placements qualify all four teams to advance to Las Vegas next month for the national tournament. To prepare, we're proud to have our community partners engaging and supporting our teams. For example, since Stafford High School does not have an Animaage table technology, the Biohackers have been practicing at the Rappahannock EMS Council, gaining valuable hands-on experience. The team is using their Animaage digital cadaver lessons, quiz apps, and study guides to sharpen their skills for the tournament. We're so proud of each, of each team and their mentors, and we'll be cheering them on as they represent Stafford on the national stage. Next, I'd like to recognize our 2024 alternate student representative to the school board, Jennifer Odugun, who is representing Stafford County as the Granville P. Mead Scholarship finalist. This is an annual scholarship opportunity made available to seniors from around the state that have reached the highest levels of academic achievement, and they are seeking to attend one of Virginia's public or private colleges or universities. Jennifer is just one of five students selected from our region for this prestigious honor. Jennifer's excellence and leadership continue to make us proud. On March 19th, our Parent Teacher Resource Center hosted guest speakers Dr. Seaborn and Tracy Lee from the Virginia Department of Education to speak about critical decision points, a vital topic for families of... On March nineteenth, our Parent Teacher Resource Center hosted guest speakers Dr. Seaborn and Tracy Lee from the Virginia Department of Education to speak about critical decision points, a vital topic for families of students with disabilities. Fifteen families joined us to learn more about important decisions, timelines, and available resources that will help support their children throughout their educational journey. We thank our guests and our staff for helping to empower families with the knowledge to make informed choices. I'm excited to share some highlights from our specialty centers, programs, and pathways enrollment for the 2025-26 school year. These numbers reflect our growing commitment to expanding access and elevating opportunities to all learners across Stafford County. We have one thousand two hundred and fifteen students newly enrolled in a pathway program for the upcoming school year. Notably, twenty-one students who were previously homeschooled or attending private school have chosen to enroll in Stafford schools to specifically take part in one of these programs. In 2526, we plan to offer four specialty centers, including the new Center for Business and Information Technology at Colonial Forge High School. We also continue to support advanced opportunities through our CGS Commonwealth Governor's School and our Regional Governors College Partnership Laboratory School, ATI, UMW. Stafford is also proud to support students pursuing careers in public safety through our two support programs, firefighting and our newly combined paramedic prep program, which includes both firefighting and EMT training. In total, we have forty-six program pathways, including thirty-two two-year and twenty-four-year options, providing flexible and targeted opportunities that align with students' interests and goals. Importantly, enrollment demographics for these programs reflect the overall applicant pool and the student population in grades eight through eleven, including representation by English learners, students with disabilities, and students with 504 plans. These expanding options demonstrate our continued focus on opportunity, access, and excellence for all students. Stafford STEM EIC Club, sponsored by Micron Technologies, is an opportunity for students to learn about semiconductor and microelectronics technology. Our students recently participated in Invention Virginia and Invention DC at Virginia Tech's Innovation Campus. Students created inventions using semiconductor technology that were reviewed by Virginia Tech's patent team and business professionals. All of Stafford students received further review on their designs, and Jaden A. received a provisional patent. Congratulations to Jaden. We're also seeing new momentum in our esports programming, particularly among our Level Two students at Rodney Thompson Middle School and Brookpoint High School. This program has proven to be an impactful way to engage students who might not other participate in a team or a club. Not only are we seeing increased socialization, but students are also showing notable gains in academic achievement, engagement, and performance. This is just one of the many ways we're meeting students where they are and encouraging connection and growth. We've been having, we have been continuing to advocate with our state delegation regarding our funding needs. On March twenty-fourth, Governor Youngkin finalized amendments for bills for the current session, including amendments to the budget. The most impactful to the FY twenty-six budget was an adjustment to the General Assembly's budget proposal for the elimination of the support cap. The governor's proposed amendment included a state ride reduction in the support cap and proposed increases of the General Assembly. The division-level summary document has not been released, but we expect this to reduce Stafford schools' revenue by four point two million. Just last week, the General Assembly reconvened, considered the governor's actions and the budget bill that contained the support cap, and it was passed by the day for the House. As such, the budget now goes back to the governor unchanged. This means the budget is going back to the governor to see if he will fully support the budget that was passed by the House and Senate, meaning a potential for eighteen point eight million increase for Stafford schools. Or if the governor vetoes the bill, it could reduce, it could result in a drastic cut of twelve point seven million. The governor has eight until May second, twenty twenty-five, to accept or veto the bill. On the county side, the Board of Supervisors advertised a tax rate with a potential five cent increase, which aligns with the county administrator's budget. We held a productive meeting with the Board of Supervisors last week, and we're hopeful that the school division will receive more than the five million dollar increase. In a best-case scenario, with state funding, the division would face a potential shortfall of twenty-two point five million, which could increase to thirty-three point one million should the General Assembly and governor not agree on budget revisions. The school board will be facing an extremely challenging budget reconciliation. The significant funding gap would force the school board to make devastating choices, to include minimal to no salary increases, potential of twenty to twenty-five percent increase in health insurance, increased class sizes in grades four through twelve, and cutting additional critical operations. While we do not yet know where the final budget will stand, I do want to be transparent with our community and provide as much information as we have for it now. Thank you for support. This concludes my remarks this evening for the superintendent's report, and I'm pleased to move over into the entry plan. Alright. Give me one second. Alright. Good for you to go ahead and with this one? Chair Sigma? Yes. Okay. Alright. So tonight represents just about four months since I began in Stafford schools, and I'm very excited to share with you my findings during this initial transition period. I know for tonight, I'll try to be brief, and you did, you were provided a handout, a booklet, that summarizes some of those findings that you can read more about if you would like, and we'll make that available to the public on Board Docs and on our website. Included in that is an executive summary, a section that highlights my personal leadership commitments, and the values and principles that have continued to guide my actions and decisions as your superintendent. I also will provide some strengths of the district that I've noticed, opportunities for growth, and then action steps that are aligned with our strategic plan that will not only help us improve, but also achieve our larger goals within our strategic plan. Finally, I'll highlight an area of focus around operational efficiency and funding, and detail the actions and next steps we plan to take as we move forward with the post-entry plan. As I reflect on my first one hundred days serving as your superintendent, I'm honored to share this comprehensive report detailing this journey that we've been on. Through extensive engagement with students, staff, families, and community members, I've gained invaluable insights into our collective strengths, challenges, and opportunities for growth. By listening deeply to those we serve, I've identified several clear patterns and priorities that align with our strategic plan. At the heart of our efforts is a clear, unwavering focus on student achievement. All of our strategic actions must continue to be aimed at ensuring every student reaches their fullest potential. I'm humbled by the trust in place to me and inspired by the dedication I've witnessed throughout our community. My journey began in education, teaching, where I learned many meaningful learning happens when students feel valued, challenged, and supported. This is a foundational belief that continues to guide my approach. I believe in collaborative, data-driven decision-making. And through our connections sessions, I've worked to establish structures that amplify voices from all corners of our community, understanding that it's our collective wisdom that far exceeds what any individual, myself included, can achieve alone. I lead with a student-centered lens, and the intention that every decision must be evaluated based on its impact on the ones that we are here to serve, our students. When we design systems that provide each student with the support they need to succeed, we create schools that better serve all learners. My commitment is to ensure that every student receives the resources, opportunity, and guidance necessary to reach their full potential. Moving forward, our work will focus on building a learning environment where all students feel valued, challenged, and supported in their individual growth. Student achievement is and will remain our primary lens for which we measure our success. In addition, transparent communication builds trust through honest, consistent dialogue, especially in challenging times. I'm committed to sharing both our successes and our struggles, as I believe that authentic dialogue strengthens our community. I envision a school system that personalizes learning for every student, providing educational experiences that are tailored to their strengths, needs, and aspiration. We'll prepare students for success beyond graduation by ensuring they're ready for enrollment in higher education, enlistment in military service, or employment in a meaningful career. By focusing on these three outcomes, we'll empower every student with the skills, knowledge, and opportunities necessary to achieve their goals. To support this vision, we will develop systems that balance high expectations with personalized support, ensuring that every student has a well-defined path to success. We'll empower educators by treating teachers and staff as creative professionals, equipping them with resources, autonomy, and support needed to foster innovation and excellence. We'll embrace forward-thinking instructional strategies that prepare students for a rapidly changing world. We also must foster a culture of belonging, where every student and staff member feels valued and supported. Strong partnerships with families, businesses, and community organizations will create a network of support that enhances student learning and career readiness. Finally, we will advocate for sustainable funding and strategic resource allocation to ensure our schools have the tools necessary to prepare students for lifelong success. The infographic here details some of the work that took place during the connection sessions. During my time here so far, it's been very important for me that I connect personally with stakeholders. As you know, I've met with each of you on multiple occasions, also spent a lot of time analyzing key performance and financial data, reviewed our policies and regulations, collaborated with the acting superintendent and across many of our district leaders. I've also studied community trends and our approach to legislative advocacy. I engage in a district-wide connection sessions, as I mentioned, to prioritize authentic engagement, transparency, and shared decision-making. Throughout the process, I focused on three key questions. Where do we excel as a school system? What needs to improve? And what's most important for us to do well? I held staff and community forums in each magisterial district, fostering open dialogue with stakeholders from all corners of our county. I visited all thirty-four of our schools and specialized programs many, multiple times, along with all of our facilities and departments, to see firsthand how our every team contributes to student success. I also met one-on-one and in small groups with a wide array of voices, students, staff, school and division leaders, parents, community and business leaders, faith partners, elected officials, and state legislators. I carefully analyzed academic, operational, and financial data to ground my understanding in both qualitative and quantitative insights. So here's a little bit about our strengths. We have many. Our greatest strength, though, is our people. From teachers to bus drivers, staff are widely described as dedicated, caring, and willing to do more. This theme consistently emerged over thirty times throughout the connection sessions. We offer strong academic and career pathways to prepare students for life after graduation. Stakeholders value the focus on post-secondary readiness and stress the need for academic rigor and consistent access to programs across schools. Our school system benefits from engaged families and community partners who actively support student success. Advisory committees are seen as vital to decision-making and building trust, and we heard from a few of those this evening. Families appreciated increased communication and transparency, emphasizing the importance of maintaining accessible, inclusive engagement as our county continues to grow. Principals and assistant principals are seen as central to school success, and they were often praised by being responsive and focused on student outcomes. Survey data backed this up, showing strong satisfaction with school climate and school leadership. Programs like Mentor Three Sixty and Admin Three Sixty were really lifted up as tools that helped support staff to feel welcome when they come to work here in Stafford. It's clear that continued investment in the development of staff is essential as we work to get better. Students want more leadership opportunities and involvement in the decisions affecting their education. As our most important stakeholders, we will continue to use those structures to amplify their voices and include their unique perspectives. Finally, stakeholders recognize that Stafford school's efficient use of limited resources and our mission-aligned budgeting was key. Transparency and focus on student needs were praised, creating a solid base for continued advocacy and continued growth. While our district has many strengths, our connections data and the voices there consistently reveal some themes where we must grow and get better. These insights aren't criticism. They reflect how deeply our family, staff, and students care about our schools. These folks came out, volunteered their time to share their insights on how we can get better. And they identified key areas for improvement: staffing, transportation, consistency across schools, student behavior support, facility maintenance, and funding advocacy. Many of these challenges, though, are interconnected, and they do require thoughtful and systemic responses. Staff feedback highlighted inconsistent expectations. Policies and practices across schools continue contributing to disparities in student and staff support. While our special education programs meet our compliance requirements, families and staff shared a need for a more consistent, individualized support for their children. With limited resources, efficiency matters more than ever. We heard about the need to review staffing levels, improve resource allocation, and integrate technology to reduce redundancy and streamline operations. Our framework for student learning, based on the profile of a graduate, it outlines our skills that all students should develop, and it was praised for its initial rollout. However, I learned that it's not yet consistently embedded into daily instruction. Stakeholders also called for stronger funding advocacy at the local, state, and federal levels. Understanding about our unique needs is critical and can be impacted by decisions made outside of our school system. As Stafford schools, we're doing great work, but you didn't hire me to be your superintendent to keep the status quo or just to maintain. I believe strongly in a culture of continuous improvement, and we must continue to get better. Moving forward, I'm committed to a clear action plan that addresses these needs and sets us on a path towards even greater achievements. The following slides outline our next steps in the plan, and specifically the actions that will drive our efforts to provide a comprehensive education experience for every student. You'll see that I've outlined these under the four goals of our strategic plan, because I think it fits very nicely in the work that the school board has already done. In goal one, we continue to expand opportunities that prepare students for success beyond graduation. We've opened three specialty centers already, and additional pathways are already offered under, for, from the ATI and our Commonwealth Governor's School. To continue to build on this foundation, we will launch the Business and Information Technology Specialty Center at Colonial Forge this fall. We'll also continue to plan for future centers at High School Six and North Stafford High School in the fall of 2026. These centers will be designed to reflect local workforce needs and offer students relevant, high-impact experiences in high-demand fields. No matter the path a student chooses, we are committed to supporting their goals through individualized academic and career plans. These plans will outline the courses, experiences, and steps needed for success. Students will have access to such opportunities as dual enrollment, industry credentials, internships, and military preparation programs, all aligned with our three E framework. We're also committed to continuous improvement in special education. We'll partner with our Special Education Advisory Committee to review current IEP and 504 implementation practices and assess service effectiveness through data analysis. While compliance remains essential, we're placing greater focus on improving the quality of specially-designed instruction and effective transition services for our students with disabilities. We're also rethinking how we allocate staff and resources. Instead of relying solely on student numbers, we will prioritize student needs, ensuring that our resources are directed where we have, where they can have the greatest impact. Professional development for instructional staff will emphasize inclusive practices and differentiation to better serve our students with disabilities. To better meet the needs of our English learners, we'll conduct a comprehensive needs assessment about our program. We'll immediately begin implementing enhancements to our translation services and design a framework for newcomer program to support language acquisition. Goal two, as you know, is focused on supporting high expectations for academic performance. In this area, we'll strengthen the implementation of our instructional framework by establishing a committee with school-based and teacher leaders from each school level. We'll conduct a gap analysis to determine where our best practices and our current practices, along with research-based supports, and make sure that we develop a concise and practitioner-friendly look-for's for high-quality instruction. We'll create a comprehensive instructional framework document with clear exemplars and align our observational tools and professional development resources. High-quality Tier One instruction and curriculum resources are essential, but also must be supported through a data-driven approach with multi-tiered systems of support. Bless you. An MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support is a proactive preventative framework that integrates data and instruction to maximize student achievement and student support. Initial implementation on an MTSS model began this year with literacy plans in elementary schools as a part of Virginia Literacy Act. We'll evaluate this initial implementation and develop a comprehensive plan for continued implementation across all levels and align supports and resources to address identified needs. A few other action steps in goal two include establishing sustainable resource model and conducting a review of our current resource allocations across schools, developing an inventory management system for our current instructional materials, building a budget development timeline aligned with strategic priorities, creating a multi-year technology replacement cycle with a funding model, developing a textbook adoption schedule with funding implications, and implementing a needs-based resource allocation fund. funding implications, and implementing a needs-based resource allocation funding model for schools. To ensure that all students experience a safe, engaging, and welcoming school environment, we'll focus on action steps that optimize both the transportation system and our school schedule. Additionally, we will plan for the opening of three new schools next fall, and to guide and support students as they move to a new building, we will establish a division-level support team. This team will work closely with school leaders, families, and the community to ensure that the transition is smooth, well-planned, and focused on supporting each student's individual needs. We will optimize school schedules and transportation by working closely with our Transportation Advisory Committee and utilizing the insights from the recent external transportation review. One of those insights is the introduction of an opt-in transportation model, which we just began. Additionally, we've already announced the transition to a four-tier transportation system, which will be fully implemented for the 25-26 school year. We recognize the need to take a hard look at our academic calendar, including the number of instructional days and hours that our teachers and students have together. We need to emphasize the need for professional development and learning days for all staff, reinforcing our commitment to a culture of continuous improvement. By engaging our community in this process, we'll make informed decisions that best serve our students and staff. And finally, in Goal Three, we want to enhance community engagement by conducting a communication audit of our current channels and their effectiveness. The goal here is to establish clear customer service standards, improve our website's navigation and resources, and create more tailored communication strategies for different stakeholder groups. And now for Goal Four. Here, you know this is about supporting investing in each and all of our staff. We'll establish collaborative decision-making structures that allow for enhanced communication and coherence across our school division. Examples of this include a principal leadership team, senior staff, and teacher council for two-way dialogue, voice, and feedback. Additionally, we'll launch a strategic plan steering committee to guide our work and monitor our progress towards our goals. A critical focus of this work continues to be on staff compensation and benefits. We understand that retention is not solely about compensation, so we'll establish a work group to examine staff workload and explore how we can optimize resources, including artificial intelligence, to create time and efficiency for our teachers and staff. Culture and climate of our organization is absolutely critical to our success, and we want to create a positive and inclusive organizational culture that we can invest and support our staff with, ensuring they feel valued, respected, and empowered in their roles. Based on feedback from our superintendent's advisory groups, we'll enhance their structures to ensure there's even more, a greater in communication and collaboration. We'll strengthen human resources practices by conducting an in-depth review of the current recruitment, hiring, and onboarding practices to ensure they're efficient and they're aligned with our district's values. Our aim is not only to improve these systems, but to innovate here, positioning Stafford Schools as the employer of choice in our region and across the state. To address persistent hiring challenges, we'll implement targeted and creative recruiting strategies for hard-to-fill positions, especially in areas like special education, transportation, and key content areas. This includes cultivating new pipelines, expanding partnerships, and leveraging technology to engage top talent. Our redesigned onboarding experience will offer us personalized and mission-aligned welcome for every new employee, connecting them to our values, and equipping them with the tools they need to succeed from day one. Ultimately, this human-centered approach to talent will help Stafford Schools attract, support, and retain the very best educators and staff. Spanning across all four of our goals, a key area merged around operational efficiency and funding as a key lever for change and enhancement. And I just wanted to share this with you this evening. We'll address this by implementing effective resource management, conducting a comprehensive assessment of our base budget allocation, and establishing an efficiency review to schedule for key operational functions. We'll also develop an enhanced legislative advocacy approach, taking a look at our current approach, best practices, and implementing strategies to lift up the need for support. While some future organizational shifts may be needed to improve efficiency alignment, my goal here is to keep the changes to a minimum and make sure they're purposeful and thoughtful, with a clear rationale for any adjustments. As a part of this process, we'll make the strategic adjustments to key positions to enhance organizational alignment and efficiency that will better support our structure and ensure efficiency across departments. Additionally, we'll improve our communication structures to ensure that any changes are communicated clearly, consistently, and transparently. This will foster a better understanding of the rationale behind decisions and provide opportunities for feedback and engagement with all stakeholders throughout the process. Our strategic plan is our guide and helps to chart our path. As such, we must continue to ensure that progress is being made towards each of the goals and objectives within the plan. This requires an intentional effort to implement and operationalize each aspect of the plan. And to enhance operational coherence and strategic follow-through, we will streamline internal structures and better align departmental functions. As we strengthen local funding partnerships by establishing a regular meeting cadence and structure with the county administrator and key staff, we also want to make sure we conduct a joint analysis of the current funding formula and allocation methods, while developing a shared understanding of the opportunities and drawbacks of a revenue-sharing agreement. Scheduling regular meetings with legislative delegation members and developing key talking points and data narratives for advocacy will not only strengthen our shared understanding, but also help inform legislation that supports student success. We'll create a comprehensive legislative priority document that includes our legislative summit with clear rationale and identify potential coalition partners for targeted funding and legislative initiatives. We'll build community supports for education funding by conducting a scan of current community understanding of school finance. We'll also want to develop resources around school finance and create funding updates for school newsletters and communications. I'm looking forward to enhancing continued collaboration with our CBAC Citizens Budget Advisory Committee and the Capital Improvement Program Advisory Committee, working closely with these groups to ensure that we have community input and expertise, and these are integrated into our funding strategies. We'll build on our work with business partnerships and community advocates to strengthen our efforts in securing these necessary resources for our schools. As we move forward, this report should not be viewed as a static document, but rather as beginning of an ongoing dialogue that will continue to evolve as we implement and refine our approaches. The work we're embarking on will take time and dedication. A critical component of future success will be development of a strong collaborative relationship with our funding partners at both the local and state levels. By building mutual understanding, sharing transparent data about our needs, and developing a clear connection from funding to student outcomes, we'll work to ensure that Stafford Schools receives the resources necessary to fulfill our mission. This work requires patience, persistence, and a commitment to constructive engagement with all stakeholders who influence our resource landscape. I'm deeply grateful for the warm welcome my family and I have received from the Stafford community and for the candid, thoughtful feedback shared during this transition period. I look forward to our continued partnership as we work together through a connected, collaborative leadership approach that provides exceptional educational experiences for every student in Stafford Schools. Together, we will elevate Stafford. Thank you for your support thus far. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I look forward to continuing to share updates with you as we move forward in June. Thank you.
Thank you. I swear. Are there any questions or comments this evening?
I think we'll defer questions to our one-on-ones meetings.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Board member comments as well as committee reports? Ms. Halsted?
So, Dr. Smith, thank you. That was very well put together. I mean, we all said no comments, but we should very much thank you for several things, but I think most importantly, the heart and dedication that you're putting into the county and coming in at such a delicate time that you are with the budget and whatnot. So we thank you, and you know, you'll hear us say more and more options. Please don't go. But anyway, so I just want to thank you. It's, I think it's important for the community to see that there's a full, there is a full investment and that every ounce of the time you spent getting to know us was spent really getting to know us. And now you're going to know us even better. Okay. So I have a prepared thing for tonight, because it has come to my attention that, one, maybe perhaps two members of the Board of Supervisors have suggested that I owe them an apology for defending the children, staff, and families of Stafford County the other night. I have also been warned that if I don't apologize, the supervisor, this supervisor will use their comments from the dais next week to speak against me. That's fine. I would never dictate to someone else how they should express their feelings or conduct themselves. We are grown adults entitled to speak our truths as we choose. What I find deeply troubling, though, is that this same supervisor also stated that in the past, if a member of the school board had spoke up like I did, then the school budget would be negatively impacted. That's not a political strategy. That is, in fact, a small threat. Not a small threat, a large one, but it's not a threat against me. It's a threat against you, the taxpayer, against your children, our teachers, and our support staff and school staff. Let's be honest, this money is yours, and she's threatening to withhold it because I fulfilled my duty as an elected representative and stood up for the children of this county. After three and a half years of playing along, of holding my tongue, staying in line, and being told to play nice or they'll punish us, I've had enough. If she wants to speak her truth during comments next week, then I invite her to do so. That is her right, but in doing so, she will prove my point, that unless we, the school board, comply, without question, we are at risk of being punished financially. That's not just unethical, it's unacceptable. So let me be clear, this isn't about me. It was never about me. They have made it about me. This is about our students, our educators, and the future of our community. I resent the idea that I should represent my district in a way that makes the supervisor comfortable. I also defy anyone to tell me that a single thing I said the other night wasn't true. What do I know in all of this? I know that when God reveals truth, he often does it through someone, and if I was chosen in that moment to speak plainly, to stand up for our children, then I am honored to have done so. I will not apologize for the passion I feel on this issue. That passion comes from a place of almost total despair, from watching year after year a system pushed to its limits continue to be pushed again and again. For three and a half years, I've showed up. I attended every meeting while others didn't. Some placed other obligations ahead of their elected responsibilities, even for events planned months in advance. I've stayed quiet for a very long time, perhaps too long. I've played by all the rules. I sincerely didn't believe that this would ever come up as a conversation. Now, we face what would be considered a threat to our future because I spoke up in a meeting, but I cannot stay, I could not stay silent any longer. I cannot in good conscience sit through another year of this level of abuse of our staff, watching them be spun through cycle after cycle of data and charts, knowing full well and totally the final decision has already been made, and it doesn't make a difference one way or the other, what we say. I cannot walk away at the end of my term knowing I didn't fight for the people who sacrificed everything to support our children over time. So I won't be apologizing tonight, at least not to them. I will, however, offer an apology to my fellow board members, especially those who've been so beaten down by this, they just want peace, even if it means asking me to apologize and move on. I see you. I know how hard you've worked, how tired you are, and how much you're trying to hold it all together. I know some of you are hoping I'll say sorry not because I was wrong, but because you're trying to avoid yet another storm, and I get that. We've all been to those meetings where saying nothing felt like the only way to survive another day, but I'm not going to do it this time because silence here doesn't keep the peace, it keeps the problem moving forward. I want to apologize to our staff for not standing up for you sooner, and to our families for the fact that anyone would ever consider punishing your children to make a point, and to our educators and administrators for how often you're told implicitly or explicitly that you're not worth investing in. These same people who claim they don't believe in standardized testings, testing are happy to weaponize their test scores against us when it's convenient, ignoring the daily realities that we face in our schools every day. If you're lucky, the worst thing in your classroom is a broken HVAC or a cockroach problem, but most of you are being asked to be a teacher, a counselor, a security guard, a nurse, and more every single day, and somehow you're expected to do it, not for pay, but for love, which you do, for heart, which you have, and for charity, which you also still do. Someone recently said, "Kids aren't doing better, and we've given you all this money." This statement reflects both ignorance and arrogance and makes me angry for many reasons. I ask you what you've done to help us make it better over the course of time as we've reached out to you for your assistance. Over the year, I have reached out to many people, people who could have stepped up and helped. What I got, what was the answer I got in return? "I can't help you because my child doesn't want to be labeled." Okay, I feel that, I understand you, but you still have no problem accusing us of wasting money in a system you know almost nothing about. I'm done with the illusion that we can run a growing school system on fumes and still raise children who are fully prepared to function in society. We're fighting every day just to ensure kids are functioning mentally, emotionally, physically, and every year that fight gets harder. Everyone in this room already knows how flawed our education system is, and yet no one has presented me with a scalable alternative that I can get behind. Will you quit your job and homeschool your child? I love that idea. That's your right, but most parents continue to roll their children in public school and then expect staff to meet every individual need as if their child is the only one in the beginning. Now we add in a surge of special needs students, a shrinking teacher pipeline, absurd unfunded mandates, and explosive growth in Stafford, and what we have is a crisis. I need to know what the end game is here. Regardless of where you stand politically, the truth is that public education is the only option for the majority of our families in Stafford right now, and even if you can afford a private school, good luck finding one, there are very few private options past eighth grade in our area currently. So where are we? I fought as hard as I can, but I have to ask, what's it going to take? Do we need a bleacher to collapse during a sporting event, or a pipe to burst during lunch, a student to break their leg on a crumbling tennis court, or something worse? What are we waiting for? What's the line you're willing to cross before you ask? To my fellow board members, I hope you remember one thing: These are children. They don't deserve your political games, they don't deserve your ego, they deserve a future. So for that, I'll keep standing up for them, no matter what the cost to me.
Thank you. Ms. Randall?
Thank you, Ms. Halsted. I just wanted to bring attention, I know it's, it's late and it's sad, but you know, in the last couple weeks, we have lost an educator at Brookpoint, we have lost an educator at Widewater, and we've lost a student at Grafton, and all of these people were doing what you should be doing when tragedy struck them. We want our kids swinging on swings and folks outside gardening, and we want those things, and so when we lose, when we lose them, it's a loss for their families, but it's also a loss for our school families and our community. And I've really, I've seen things come up online about supporting them with meals and money, and I just, again, I'm just so proud of our community for showing up. This is a hard time of year for our schools with high-pressure tests coming up, graduation, all the emotions and attachments to that, proms, it's just a lot going on in our schools, and one loss is hard, and to lose three is just really devastating. But I do want, every morning, I have a habit of saying prayers for five people, and these people have been in my prayers the last few days, so, because by extension of being part of Stafford County Schools, they're a part of our families too. I do want to also, total switch gears, I want to say that I've had a really good time visiting several of our schools: The Phoenix Center, Ferry Farm, Brookpoint, Drew, Mr. Diggs Town Hall, I really appreciate his invitation to that, the Town Hall for Drew, redistricting meetings, all of those things. I just love connecting with community members and listening and learning. And I also would like to congratulate our high schools for participating again in the Culinary Cup. Ms. Sigman was there with me. They really put together amazing vegetarian and meat sources for the menus. That is a benefit to, I mean, it's a culinary class, and they have these strict guidelines, and they come up with menu options that make it to, into our schools' lunches. That's just really, you know, touching to know that our kids are impacting the nutrition that our other students are benefiting from in lunch. So with that, I have others, but I'm just going to stop there. Thank you.
Ms. Healy?
Well, in recognition of the hour, I'm going to keep it very short, but I do want to say, I respect Ms. Halsted, and I admire her advocacy. We're all coming from a different place, but I think everyone on this board is doing their best to represent their constituents and Stafford County Public their best to represent their constituents in Stafford County Public Schools, to have the best there. And, you know, we may, you know, we may not, well, we do not agree on many things, but that's something I think we would agree on, and I would never request any board member to apologize for something that, you know, came from their heart. So, I just, I just want to say I admire Ms. Halsted. Now, the irony is that her remarks came right after mine, where I thanked the supervisors because, you know, and I have a different lens, as Dr. Chase would point out, that I see through, but from my perspective, we have gotten more support and more funding in the past three years from this Board of Supervisors than we have gotten in literally decades from the supervisors. I mean, taxes have gone up substantially, and there, I, you know, I think they're doing what, what they can. I'm speaking generally, but, you know, I do appreciate what they've done, but I certainly see, you know, Ms. Halsted's position, and, and I, you know, she is, she's passionate, and I love her, and I'd give her a hug if her arm weren't so sore. But anyway, I want to say, and tonight, we had a discussion, you know, we have, we take a vote and we move on. So, you know, that's what I like about this board, that we can, we can have our differences, we can air our differences, but we're going to move forward for the best of schools. I think we're going to have some really, really serious challenges coming up with this budget, and we need to be, be prepared for, for next week to be, you know, making some hard decisions. But I do think that everyone here is going to do what they think is, is best for the staff, the students, and the community. And, Dr. Smith, I enjoyed your, your presentation. I'm sorry it was so late that we, that we got to it, and I, I was reading through your, your booklet here, and I, you haven't been here long enough to get my lesson about wills and shalls, so I'll, I'll give that to you in one of, one of our one-on-ones. It's a legal, it's a legal thing, but I see that you will do a lot of things, but I, I think you really mean that you shall do them. But thank you. It was, it was, it was great, and I don't know where you got the energy to do as much as you've done in the past hundred days with everything going on, and, you know, we are, we are really looking forward to working with you and having your insight and your, your dedication and commitment as our leader for Stafford County Schools.
Dr. Chase?
Yep. I just wanted to give a shout-out to the middle school students who participated in the Virginia Piedmont Regional Science Fair, and I'm super proud of all the students from Drew and Dixon Smith who placed at various awards. I also, he's left, but I understand that Jay Cook is retiring at the end of this year, and I just want to thank him. We had just sort of a revolving door of people through the Technology Department when I first got on the board, and Dr. Kisner kind of recognized that we had some homegrown talent who would really be able to do the job, and so I hope we continue to, to find homegrown talent because sometimes they stick around longer than, than people who kind of come in and, and leave very quickly in the tech field. Then, I also want to second Mrs. Healy's comment about the funding coming up. To quote, sort of quote Churchill, "Ladies, we have run out of money, and it's time to think." I'm very concerned about the state coming in about 12 million less than what we thought they were going to come in, and that's going to be really tough, and we, as a board, are going to really have to give a lot of thought to priorities and where, where, what our priorities are with limited funding. And with that, I will pass it on to the next person. Thank you.
Dr. Warner?
First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Smith. I do appreciate your presentation. I'm still awake for it. I want to say that redistricting is a challenge, and we've had some growing pains over the last few years. We've had to move, shuffle students around to decompress schools that were overcrowded, and, and that means that some students are being moved again. But with two new schools, one in the north and one in the south, 2,000 new seats, we, this will affect every, every attendance zone, and we're doing the best we can to accommodate everybody's needs. And we, we do care about how it impacts students. We do care how it impacts families, but we also know that we, we want to do this, optimize the use of those schools we have so we don't have to do this repeatedly, and in a growing community, that's a challenge. So, I appreciate much of what Ms. Halsted said because we do have challenges. We have challenges financially, and we've had challenge, challenges with resources and infrastructure. This is a strange job. We're 100% accountable for the outcome and have zero control over the spending. Who gives us where the money comes from? And the only thing we can do is go hat-in-hand and talk to our legislators, and talk to our delegates, and our senators, and the governor, and talk to the Board of Supervisors and tell them what we need, and that's what we've been doing for the last several years. I want to remind people that this weekend is the Fine Arts Festival, and that's always a very exciting event, and you get to see how talented our students are, and it's one of the things I truly enjoy. I also want to remind everybody that this is going to be a really difficult budget year, and that we're going to have to make some really tough decisions. Our priorities are on taking care of our staff because they take care of our kids, and the reality is 85% of our budget is salaries, and I think if you can find time to give the Governor's Office a call, you might want to ask him to really sign that budget that the General Assembly passed. The last thing I want to say is I want to offer my sympathies to the families that have lost loved ones, and not just the families, but as Ms. Randall pointed out, the school community is very tight-knit, and it was very devastating to, to, to meet with the teachers and the students at Widewater and the loss of the kindergarten teacher there, and I think that it's a testament to how strongly our, our schools are connected to each other. So, I just want to offer my condolences to everybody, the family of Brookpoint, Grafton Village, and Widewater. And that's it for me.
Ms. Guy?
Yes, I also want to offer my condolences to just Stafford County Schools' family, right? Because we're, we are all a team and we're all family. In the interest of time, I will not say much, except this is National Poetry Month, and I did write, I wrote a haiku for my board members, but I am emailing it to Missy, okay? And also, well, because Missy will send it to everyone else. I'm not allowed to email y'all. And just to any people out there who pray, who believe in prayer and the power of prayer, Stafford County Schools needs it now. Y'all need to start fasting or something because this is going to be, I'm, I'm a Christian, okay? I'm saying, we need to fast. I'm going to be fasting for the school. I'm not even kidding. You know, we, our budget is not going to be pretty, and we're going to have many competing interests, and I hate to think of staff listening to our arguments and what we're doing and believing we don't see their value. Like, that's, I'm very worried about that. So, that's it. Just pray for us.
I actually would like to say that they're not competing interests because they're all of our interests. Like, nobody is denying that any of the things that we talk about need to be funded. It's just a matter of figuring out what to spend our money on, the little bit that we do get. I'd like, just before I read my comments, to take a moment, if, Dr. Smith, one of our public comments this evening indicated that there is, I believe the quote was still CRT in our curriculum in 2021, the Board of Supervisors defunded CRT in Stafford County. So, we take that accusation very seriously. So, if somebody could please follow up with Ms. Fisher so that she could point that out in our curriculum so that we can clear that up for her and for the public, since it was on the record. I don't want that hanging out over us or over any of our educators or the rest of our That being said, my comments tonight are brief. Usually, I kind of lay out the things I've done and the things that I will be doing, but I had a conversation today that kind of had me reshape my perspective on what I wanted to say tonight. Earlier this week, I was having a conversation with one of our teachers about ways we can improve what we do for our students and for our staff, and this staff member indicated to me how hard it has been for her and her colleagues just to do their jobs. She confided in me that this has been her most challenging year since COVID, and that the only reason she has decided to stay is because she believes, or she has faith in the recent leadership changes and is willing to give these new local leaders an opportunity to improve. My response naturally was to say, "Thank you for staying," and I followed that with, "Please don't leave. I think our new leaders have a good handle on the direction we need to go." And I kind of say these things in jest with a little bit of desperation thrown in. And what she said next kind of broke my heart a little. She said, "Thank you. You know, I think you're the only person to actually say that to me all year, and I really appreciate it." So, to her and to all of you, thank you. You make a difference. Please don't leave. Future meetings? I did want to talk about Colonial Forge is where the Fine Arts Festival is this year. It's a change of venue. We are going to be dedicating a new wellness room there, which I know Ms. Halsted would have remembered to say had she not been as uncomfortable as she was. Future meetings coming up, April 17th, we have a budget reconciliation work session, which will now also be the discussion of some redistricting priorities. April 22nd, we have a special called School Board Meeting for the final adoption of our FY26 budget, and then our next regular meeting is on May 13th at 5:00 p.m. for our work session and 7:00 p.m. for our business meeting. We are adjourned.